I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco. Hart. Hotchkiss.
Here.
Murillo.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here, and note that Mr. Hart just walked into the room. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so, public comment, you have two minutes up here at the podium. We'll start with Dr. Johns, be followed by Robert Burke. Mr. Johns? Come on up. And then I have your paper here I'll pass out to my colleagues.
Councilpersons, city fathers and city mothers, can you hear me? Yes, okay. I'm here today to declare the city of Santa Barbara Sister City with the city of Salma, Alabama. Now, you know the story of Salma, Alabama. That's where a black man was shot and Martin Luther King marched some 65 years ago for voting rights of African Americans, black people. Now, you know, this is 65 years ago. Black people wanted to vote. Today, some 50 years later, council mothers and council fathers, you see the gender, I'm equalizing the gender, huh? But council mothers and council fathers, this was 50 years ago. Race relations in this town is 50 years behind times. Can you believe that? You see, we have a Hispanic population whose constitutional rights are being violated. And I'm really dazed, amazed, and shocked at this august body that would go to the length of to manipulate, to devastate the Hispanic population. These are wonderful working people, people who hold this city together. And now, you want to deny them the vote? And you want to go back 50 years in human relationships? I cannot see that, I cannot hear that. I'm talking about racism and discrimination. Now, if you've never heard this before, it's time for you to hear it today. Now...
Mr. Johns, your time is up, thank you.
Pardon?
Your time is up, thank you.
I thought it was.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Burke will be followed by Melody Joy Baker.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Recently, a plaintiff and a defendant settled a lawsuit and Santa Barbara went from at-large elections to district elections. A few years ago, the Department of Justice sued the city of Santa Paula for voter discrimination. Gabriela Sandoval, who grew up in Santa Paula, did her PhD thesis in sociology from Cornell University on that event. She found that the basis upon which the Department of Justice filed suit, the exit poll, was flawed. She found that Latino was not a factor upon which people decided how to vote, but that age was. She found that Santa Paula was a single economy town, lemons, and that overt discrimination did occur by the vested owners to maintain their control. Santa Barbara is not a single economy town and does not have overt voter discrimination practices such as intentional dilution, a poll tax, language disqualification, or constitutional testing questions. As gerrymandering to exclude a class of voters is reprehensible and illegal, so is gerrymandering to include a class of voters. While racial considerations may be taken into account while drawing voter district lines, they may not predominate over non-racial considerations such as geographical compactness and keeping communities of interest together. The parties of the suit want to hurry up to apply the new voting plan to the November election. I want this council to place a measure on the November ballot for the people to choose between at-large and district voting. I deeply resent not having a vote in how I vote. Expediency is an inappropriate substitute for democracy. Too much talk never broke a democracy. While some may call the resolution of the lawsuit a settlement, I call it a coup d'etat. Madam Mayor, members.
Melody Joy Baker, be followed by Michael Baker.
Madam Mayor, fellow councilmembers. I come to you today to give you some bad news. Reno was brought up to me last Thursday. Ray, his backup handler, brought him up. He was brought out of the vehicle across the street to me. A homeless street junkie approached and grabbed for him. Reno reacted. He knocked the gentleman down and had his mouth right by the guy's you-know-what. I got on the phone immediately to his trainer. He was taken back down to his trainer for therapy, but you may have succeeded in destroying a service dog. If he does not respond, you will have succeeded, and we will dance in court on this because it is illegal, your practices. Also, you should know, I did last Tuesday go down to LA. Wednesday, I filed against the city college for their little action in concurrence with the city's direction. And it's already been assigned a case number and the two mandatory judges in federal court. So, and the city has been listed as a party of interest, so you'll be recused. You won't be allowed to be consulted or anything. Thank you.
Michael Baker will be followed by Kenneth Locke.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Baker. I'm the CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs, and I want to give you some good news. First and foremost, our numbers keep going up at the West Side Unit Club site there. We're now averaging in the mid-90s, children. It's up significantly from, we were averaging in the high 50s about two and a half months ago when I started here, so our numbers are going up. We're doing tremendous work in outreach and trying to reach as many kids as we possibly can. Saturday numbers are growing steadily, and as I mentioned to you, I think, last time, we've been able to take our program, our Saturday program, our Carpinteria Club site is now open on Saturdays as well, and eventually, hopefully, our Lawn-Poke and Gleta Clubs will be open on Saturdays as well. So, should be the busiest day that we have at the Boys and Girls Clubs. With that said, I did want to give each of you a flyer on our upcoming fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Clubs with Mr. Andrew James Olmos as our featured speaker will be there. We're also working on getting him to speak at one of the middle schools here to the students about the importance of staying in school and being involved in your local Boys and Girls Clubs as he's an alum. So, just wanted to invite each and every one of you to that. The event is on March 26 at Earl Warren Showgrounds, and you can purchase tickets by going to www.unitedbg.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kenneth Locke will be followed by John Webby.
My name is Kenneth Locke. Got a new sign, it says, "Free Mind-Body Examination." And, or we could just cut it short, "Exam." So, it's kind of interesting. I don't think that there's been anybody in this community that's actually received a mind-body exam yet. They actually haven't learned knowledge in relation to how the mind and body are integrated. And now, through the means of tennis, I'm making the claim that I actually can provide people with the understanding of what it means to have an integrated mind and body, and mind-body exercise of tennis, and the idea of where an individual will become intelligent and coordinated and balanced. Right now, that's not happening. And the idea that, right now, we're a little confused, right now, I'd have to say, this community is confused in relation to what a mind-body exercise actually is. Some people say that yoga's a mind-body exercise, or Pilates, or Tai Chi. But it turns out that tennis, it turns out that when you understand tennis as a holistic health practice, because the two have to be understood in relation to mind-body, whole body, and that's what tennisance actually provides. And then the intelligence for the kids, now, they'll probably go before the school board this evening and promote this, it's kind of, I figure it's a no-brainer. And eventually, I could get a dialogue possibly with yourselves or with somebody from the school board or school, and maybe apply this to the community. And I'm willing. Thought I'd share that with you today, thank you.
Is John Webby here? Nope. So, Phil Walker will be followed by Tom Woodrow, and then the final speaker will be Ali Argonbright.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Time change, the extended hours in the evening, daylight, it's great getting there sucks. One other interesting thing, I can't remember exactly what the Santa Barbara city streets were rated at, when it's been brought up a lot in infrastructure improvements or deferred infrastructure costs, but if you saw the Weather Channel item short yesterday, the streets are relatively great here compared to the, I don't call them potholes back east in Boston, I call them sinkholes, you know? You're popping a tire within every 50 feet, rims being bent, and it was incredible. So, things are pretty darn good here. Okay, something that could happen is called a fairly strong seismic event here. Like Councilman Hart said, you know, we've had a lot of years since a major event here, since 1925 essentially, and more and more study is coming out, especially related to the August 24 Napa quake and susceptibility of residences and other structures to sort of what's called an unmapped fault or a historical fault that hasn't been really put on the map yet. And Santa Barbara has sort of fallen off the radar, so to speak, with, since the State Street URM reinforcement projects in the mid to late 80s. It would be good, and I think it would behoove the Building and Safety Department to at least give a heads-up every time a building permit is pulled, that it's good to go above and beyond the basic code level and reinforce for a significant seismic event. Thank you.
Tom Woodrow? Or Woodrow, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Just wanted to comment on something that was in the news press today. Once again, the issue of Poder and the El Bajo Restaurant and the East Side Business Improvement District came up. We just want to express on behalf of City Watch our support for the Chamber of Commerce, and really applaud them for coming out with a definitive statement. And I just wanted to read it to you if you hadn't heard it. "While we have the utmost respect for the opinions and beliefs of others, the Chamber offers our strongest condemnation to those involved in the protest at Taqueria El Bajo. This effort to intimidate a business owner and scare off his customers over a policy difference is completely unacceptable and smacks of actions one might see from criminal gangs in third-world countries. The Chamber stands with every business in the region, and we will always defend your right to conduct your affairs in a manner free from intimidation and thug-like tactics." I talked it over with our group of supporters at City Watch, and they concur with your actions as a council, having an eat-in, congratulations, and not being, that you're willing to wade into that and speak clearly and favorably in support of deliberative public policy whereby, if you want to discuss an East Side Business Improvement District, you would do it in front of you rather than intimidate a restaurateur and his patrons. So, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of City Watch for standing up for folks like Mr. Guzman at that restaurant.
Ali Argonbright? Is this about, I see some signs in the back, is this about the desalination plant?
Yes.
Okay, so then, this is, that's on the agenda, so I'll hold on to your speech from when we get to, your talk when we get to the drought water update.
Okay, great.
Thank you. If you could please take the signs down, thank you. Okay, so that concludes public comment. And on to the consent calendar, there are no items to read, so unless anyone needs to pull anything off, is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, item number five.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, you went so fast. I wanted to pull one just to have it explain why we're spending that much money on children's furniture at the library.
All right, we can have the, which item number?
One.
One? Okay, this, again, it was about library furniture, furniture for the children's library. If you can just perhaps explain that, and if you need to vote separately, we'll have to undo what we did.
Already voted through, so don't worry about it.
Go ahead, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss's question about how much we're spending or what we're spending it on?
I think people might look at this and say, gee, that's a lot of money for some furniture. Can you just talk a little bit about how special it is?
Yes, having been a children's librarian. Margaret Esther, Library Services Manager, there are two sections, actually, that we're buying furniture for. One is the lower level, which is going to be our new children's space, 6,000 square feet. Tables and chairs are a big bulk of it, and I know people say, oh, but I can get a little play table for my kids for very inexpensive. This is a public library, it's public use, we're used and set upon from the time we open till the time we close. This has to be heavy-duty furniture. Think about a parent who's going to sit in that small chair with their children on their knees. This is sturdy, well-constructed, years and years of service for this furniture. So, it's also, for the children's section, child-sized. And then for the upper level, for the main floor, this furniture is for what we will call the tech room, so these are tables that will fold up, move away, they're a lot like at a university, space where you can reconfigure the space, so that it's more modular furniture.
And where do the funds come from?
The funds are coming from the foundation, which has been raising money for the children's library. And the second amount is coming from a gift that we receive each year. It's a trust, it's the Peggy Maximus Trust, so these are funds that are not...
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And hope you don't need to vote again, or you're good with the vote. All right, we just wanted to put that out there, it's information. Okay, so, okay, now, item number five, which is the stage-two drought update. Mr. Hagmark, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager, in here again to give another stage-two drought update with me is Madeline Ward, our Conservation Coordinator, who will also be speaking later in the presentation. So, we will be going over rainfall totals and weather forecasts, community conservation efforts, and water supply outlook, talk a little bit about the state and supplemental water program, what we're doing with drought response capital projects, and our water conservation program. So, basically, to summarize, we did not receive the rainfall that we had hoped for this winter, and as you can see with the numbers there, we're significantly behind on even achieving anywhere close to normal rainfall for this year. We needed to see above-average rainfall to really make a dent in this rain, and so, having not seen that, we haven't seen any significant runoff into any of our reservoirs, which has made our water supply situation worse. The most recent forecasts from NOAA are showing equal chances of above-normal and below-average rainfall for the remainder of March and into April, which means that they have no idea. The National Weather Service is predicting continued drought conditions, particularly in all of California, and I think what's significant here is we're talking Northern California staying in the drought, even though they've had a little better rainfall than we have. You know, we're hoping to buy water from Northern California, and they're still looking for a persisted level of drought. As far as drought intensities go, we are in the highest level, the D4 rating for drought intensity, and this is not anticipated to change, even if we do get some rainfall at the end of March and into April. It's a pretty dismal outlook. On the monthly demands, we did see a drop-off in conservation, and I think I've been talking that this might happen, and actually, I'm surprised that this is the first month that we've seen this, but the community has had immense conservation going on through the winter when, basically, there's not a lot of outdoor water usage, and it finally caught up to us in February. I don't think this is in any way something to be alarmed by. I think that 5% really recognizes probably the indoor conservation that's going on. February is historically our lowest water usage month, and so to be 5% below our normal February, I think it's still a good sign, we're still on the right track. For the state, we report on our water usage as compared to the baseline, which was water year 2013, that's what we all have to report on. And so, when we look at our water use in 2013, we were actually 19% below that for that February, so I think our numbers for the state are going to look great. And where this leaves us, looking at our water conservation since July, we're still achieving 22% on average conservation, which is spectacular, it's perfect. I mean, we're aiming for 20%, we're exceeding that, that's buying us a little bit of extra water for cushion, and certainly, we're on the right track. So, we'll be watching this closely and continuing to monitor and report back. Did want to take a little time to illustrate where some of the other city facilities are. We see the golf course and their water usage, basically 30% below average. We're seeing parks, city facilities and buildings, recreation, overall, a 32% below-normal water usage for our city facilities, just basically trying to put home the message that we're also in concert with our community, trying to pull the line. And ultimately, we've saved 71,100 cubic feet, which is about 165 acre-feet of water, so a pretty significant chunk of water for a small group of this community. So, the current supply strategy, we're currently looking for 20% conservation. We are in year four of this drought cycle, and we are planning out now, looking out to year six and seven. We've been very aggressive on water purchases and are feeling pretty comfortable about water purchases for year five. I'll be talking about that later on in our presentation. Currently, we have sufficient water to meet needs this year, assuming the community continues to meet that 20% conservation. You will notice that dark blue line, and we'll talk about that a little later, bar, that is Lake Kachuma. We will be exhausting our entitlement in Lake Kachuma this year. This has never happened before. There will be no entitlement of water from Lake Kachuma for next year. There's meetings going on weekly now to figure out how that's going to work exactly for next year, because there are a lot of community members and agencies that rely on certain amounts of water coming from Kachuma, so we'll be talking with the Bureau and the county about that in the coming weeks. What this, our current supply strategy is looking at is in year six, we would be looking at a 3,200-acre-foot shortage, and that would be with the addition of DSAL. So, without DSAL, we'd be looking at about a 6,000-acre-foot shortfall, or about 60% of our water supply shortage without the addition of DSAL. The next graph I'm going to show, we'll talk about what it means to maybe change up our target, but we do have ideas for addressing this shortage. So, our plan, as we approach the, looking at stage three, is to, is to look at changing our target, upping it from 20 to 25%. This goal would reduce that year-six shortage by about 1,400 acre-feet, which I feel is a little more manageable at this point, and we actually feel it's a target that's reasonable. I think it's important that we have a target, we have an aggressive target, but also a target that we can meet. This is a target that we're planning our water supply around, so it's critical that we meet these goals, we're planning our financial budgets around, and so, we've been looking closely at this, and we believe 25% is something that the community can achieve with maybe some minor regulations, and again, the rates that we'll be considering. So, of course, water rates are one of those incentives. We will be having this discussion in April, we'll be coming back to talk about regulations for stage three, but just wanted to kind of set the stage that certainly rates are a big incentive. We saw our biggest drop in water usage when the rates went into effect in July. We're currently considering some regulations, and what we're kind of holding out for is the state, because the rest of the state has had such dismal performance with conservation at, what, 9% is what the rest of the state has been able to achieve on average. They are coming out on March 17 with mandatory regulations that it appears that we will have to implement, otherwise, it would preclude us from any loans or grants from the state. So, we kind of thought that we should hold off until April to get that policy direction until we've heard to see what the state's got going on. And then, of course, there will be the financial impacts of whatever regulations and rates go into effect. So, state and supplemental water, we, like I mentioned, had secured the water last year for this year, and assuming we get the 20% conservation, we're looking good for water supplies this year. 2015, right now, the state allocation is at 20%, they just increased it. That's about 600 acre-feet. It's not an enormous amount of water, but it's meaningful, and we're happy to see that. That final number, we're hoping will be solidified in May, and then we can start planning around that. The 2016 water purchase goal, right now, is 4,500 acre-feet. We've set aside $3.5 million, and we are planning on using additional capacity in the state water system to get that here. So, for our purchase goal for next year, we've been very successful, we've secured about 4,200 acre-feet right now from AVEC, and basically, it's a loan. We basically are borrowing this water at $500 an acre-foot, and we need to return it within 10 years. There is also a lot of delivery cost. Ultimately, when we're done, this deal will be about $4 million. We're putting out about $2 million this year to secure the water, and then the additional money is to return the water in future years. Biggs West Gridley, we made a water purchase last year, and because the carriage losses were less, we're going to get a little bit more water out of that deal. It does come with a little price tag because the contract had a clause in there that if the carriage losses were less than 35%, we would pay them an additional $100 an acre-foot. Well worth it. Overall, that ended up being a very good purchase. And then, we are planning to participate in the Dry Year Transfer Program. This is a program where a lot of the Southern California state water contractors approach the Northern California and basically put a number on the table and say, we're interested in buying water, who wants to sell? And various farmers and entities can come forward and sell their water to a pool program, and it's expecting that water will be about $700 an acre-foot. Time it's delivered, we're still talking right around $1,000.
Mr. Hagmark, would you explain carriage?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, carriage losses are the, it is, best way to describe it, it is like a tax put on any water that moves through the delta, and in this case, it tends to, in this case, it was set at 20% of any water moved through the delta would be left in the delta for environmental purposes.
Mr. Hagmark, when you say, the farmers sell their water, is that agricultural allocation? Is that well water? What are they talking about?
Councilmember Rouse, there are many farmers in Northern California that have what are called pre-1914 water rights, which are the predominant master rights of to water, and so they have an entitlement that's superior to all other water rights, and so they can choose whether they wish to farm with that water or, in this case, sell it. So, currently, our purchase, we're looking at about 5,000 acre-feet, so we'll exceed our goal by about 500 acre-feet, a little safety cushion there. As far as the banked water, I've been reporting on this for months, and we recently approached the Dudley Ridge groundwater banking program and said, any chance we're going to get it back now that the state water allocation is 20%? And they said, basically, we don't have the groundwater pumping capacity to return your water. And legally, they're not required until we hit a 50% allocation year. So, at this point, I am planning to use that 1,200 acre-feet to repay AVEC. So at this point, I am planning to use that 1,200 acre feet to repay AVEC in future years. That's the goal for that, and I'm going to stop asking them for the time being whether we'll get that water back. So remaining water in Kachuma, there's a lot of information on this graph. I'm just going to talk to the high level of this, but as I mentioned, there's a lot of discussion going on about just how much water is available in Lake Kachuma. And as dismal as the lake looks, the water available for communities for drinking purposes is actually even smaller than that. So we are, currently, that top block, there's about 9,000 acre feet remaining for all project members, and that includes San Ynez, Galena, the City of Santa Barbara, Carpinteria, and Montecito. Our normal annual entitlement is 25,000 acre feet. So this is less than 45% of our allocation, and we're sitting down to figure out how best to go through that water, but basically, once that's gone, that's all the water remaining in entitlement. As you can see, there are many other blocks in there. We are accounting for evaporation in the lakes, so that water has been kind of set aside. The accounts, BNA, ANA, that is the downstream water rights holders, and so they will be doing some pretty big water releases this summer to recharge their groundwater, where they get most of their water from wells. So that is how they, how they convey their water. There's also accounts for fish. Unfortunately, the fish releases that are currently going on come out of our project water, and that's one of the discussions that's currently going on, and I'll talk about it in just a minute.
If you could go back, the top bar there, the blue bar, it says, as of January 31, 2014. Did that supposed to be 2015, or is it 2014?
That should be 2015, yes.
Fifteen, okay, just to be sure there. Okay, thanks.
This is a county graphic, not a city graphic. So Cal Trout versus the USBR lawsuit, that hearing has been pushed back to April 16th. I think the last time I reported, it was going to be at the end of February, and that had been, the judge had pushed that back. So there's no new information on that. The Hilton Creek Fish Water Releases, as I've been reporting in the past, USBR has finally concurred that we have reached that 30,000 acre feet, and fast, we went past that 30,000 acre foot threshold, and so have agreed to enter into consultation again with NIMCs. Unfortunately, we still haven't seen any action out of that. We are hoping that in that consultation, it will be retroactive, back to when we hit that 30,000 acre foot threshold, which we believe was sometime in late October, early November. And so maybe some of that water that's set aside for fish passage might be reallocated for project water and help improve the situation, at least for the time being. So the summary of our drought capital projects. The recycle water facility is on schedule and will be in operation in July of 2015. The Valverde Well, which is a non-potable well, is in operation, and is currently, because of the low demand, is meeting all the demand, or the majority of the customer demands. So very pleased that we could get that facility up and operating. As far as groundwater well projects, Alameda Well, for those who've been by the park, giant sound wall, it's pretty intimidating. There will be drilling is starting this week. It's a 24/7 operation. It should take about two weeks to drill the actual hole. There's certainly a lot of other work that goes on, but they will be done before Earth Day. That's their goal, is to have the sound wall down. They won't finish the landscaping, but at least there'll be a nicer fence, and it'll be a smaller area being taken up before Earth Day, and it's scheduled to be online in July of 2015. And then just to report, City Hall, Corp. Yard, and Veracruz are currently operational. So DSAL project highlights, we did receive written proposals on March 5th last week, and we will be receiving cost proposals from those vendors this Thursday, March 12th. We will begin negotiations, once we select one of those firms by the end of March, we will begin negotiations in April. We are still tentatively planning for some type of, to be prepared for an award in June. And our conversations with the State Revolving Fund loan folks has been going well. It is looking very likely that we will get the 1.6% loan for 20 years versus what we've noticed customers, which was a 6% loan for 10 years. So we're very optimistic about that, and as soon as we get a little more confirmation about that, we can, we'll start to work that into maybe a rate modification before July 1st. So just a general update on the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We did, they did approve the findings that our facility is existing per the proposed Ocean Plan Amendment. That was a big step. We will be submitting a feasibility work plan to regional board staff for their approval before August 31st. That's a work effort we're pulling together currently, and we need to report back to the regional board with the findings of our feasibility study by June 30th of 2017.
Mr. Hart?
Has the staff from the regional board helped you with how to define feasibility? I mean, anything is feasible, but there is obviously a cost implication. So is that, has there been discussions about what effectively the project would be in that regard?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that's exactly what that work plan is. So we're going to come up with a draft, and we'll sit down, but we have all indications that we've had a very good working relationship with our regional board staff, and we believe we can come up with a good plan to move forward with. But we're currently working on the outline of what that whole plan will be. We'll be coming back to council. Tentatively, we're shooting for the end of April to award that contract. Our consultant will start putting together a draft plan, and we can present that to the regional board for their comments, and that'll go back and forth until we come up with a final work plan. We still are waiting on our NPDS permit renewal. I did put in a phone call to our regional folks and have not heard back, but our permit for the, for the wastewater treatment plant and DSAL plant does expire in May, and we don't anticipate any issues, but renewal is forthcoming on that. And then the coastal development permit, our existing CDP with Coastal Commission is still valid. The Coastal Commission has, in February, approved a permit for maintenance and repair activities associated with our intake facility, and we've confirmed that our local CDP is still valid. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Madeline Ward, our Conservation Coordinator.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I just have a quick conservation update for you guys today. I wanted to highlight our new campaign that's starting this week, which is highlighting the benefits of mulch and adding mulch to all landscapes. Mulch really helps reduce evaporation, especially now while we're still expecting a couple more showers and potentially some June and perhaps July gloom. And this will really help reduce the evaporation from the soil. It also really increases the permeability. So anyone who has an existing landscape, or perhaps has let their lawn go, are really encouraging them to mulch it in the meantime, and it'll really help reduce the water use needed for their plants. It's estimated to reduce, to save about 20 to 30 gallons each time you water per thousand square feet of mulch that's applied. So we have a new campaign for the spring, which is playing off of the theme of March Madness, which is, I think, happening next week in terms of basketball. And we have English and Spanish ads that are playing on TV, in movie theaters, radio, online, print, and social media. And if the audio visual is working, we should be able to watch the commercial.
We've got a great matchup for you today.
The Water Wise teams are warming up now, and they're ready.
Walker is headed for the mulch pile.
Davis looks like she may get there first.
Here comes Johnson to assist. Oh my, look at Anderson, out of nowhere.
Slam dunk.
The team's hard work has paid off. Thanks to Mulch Madness, this landscape is going to be healthy and water-wise. Get your free mulch today.
Learn more at waterwisessb.org.
So where can we get all this wonderful free mulch? There's a couple different options. Free mulch is available for pickup at the County Transfer Station at 4430 Cuyahoga, as well as a couple locations in North County. And free mulch is also available for delivery for city water customers twice a year. Since we started that program in late 2012, we've had 532 customers participate in it, and many of them do it every single year. They're very pleased with that program. Last Friday was the Countywide Science Fair, which is something that we're always pleased to partner with. In conjunction with the County Water Agency and the other water providers, we provide a Water Wise Science Fair special award, and this is two projects that deal with, that address water conservation and water supply issues. So this year's winner was Jennifer Seau from La Colina Junior High, and her project was called The Water Catcher, which is the picture that you see there. She created an apparatus that would capture water vapor from the air and use it as fresh drinking water, and her purpose was to find alternative water supply sources during the drought. It was very clever. In addition, we had three runners-up comparing evaporatranspiration rates of different types of plants, resistance to drought stress and salinity stress in plants, and can chemically altered water be a drought solution? And that was determining if hot tub water could be used to water lawns, which it was very useful in doing. And we're here for any questions you may have.
Great, any questions? Mr. Hart?
How much mulch can somebody order to be delivered? Is there a limit on that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, it's determined in quantity of tons. It's, I think, about, I should look on the website, but they have a large dump truck and a small dump truck, and as much as they can fit in, and you can fit in your driveway or your yard, they'll deliver for you.
So it's a big stack.
And there's different calculations that you can do on the website to determine the area that you may need, but it's quite a lot of mulch, and it goes a long way. We do have some people that will order one delivery of it, and then all their neighbors sort of bring the wheelbarrows over, and they spread it out over a couple different homes, because for an average sort of downtown parcel, it's quite a lot of mulch to get, to just get one delivery.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Ali Argonbright, you can come on up now. We have a couple minutes here up at the podium. And we have some other public comment speakers. Well, I think we'll do this one, and then we'll head to water rates after. Go ahead.
Hello, Santa Barbara community members and city council members. My name is Ali, and I am here to speak on behalf of the youth of Santa Barbara. Myself and other adults in this room, young adults in this room, are a part of a new budding cooperative group that is aimed at youth engagement and education around sustainable landscaping methods in Santa Barbara. And our group incorporates practices of permaculture, which is a regenerative, regenerative design science aimed at working with natural patterns of the land. And through my education as an environmental science and horticulture major at SBCC, and involvement as president as a Santa Barbara SBCC, as the Student Sustainability Club, and these various other local groups, I have been troubled by this hasty move to reactivating the desalination plant without more community involvement and outreach to local groups that are working really hard to mitigate for this drought. So therefore, I just want to say, I feel that we could see a decrease in water usage residentially and more, more in residential and more public spaces in our county if there was more support to these groups, like the one myself and others in this room are working really hard. If there was more support by the county, and yeah, we just have a great vision, I feel, to make our land more sustainable, and I feel there are a lot more options to explore. And I don't believe this is the last resort. That is all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from council on this point? Okay, this is just getting a report, so thank you, and we'll move on to, and you can just stay right there, I imagine, so move on to item number six.
Public hearing regarding proposed water rate increases for fiscal year 2016.
Okay, Mr. Hagmark.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we've been talking about this, I think, ongoing since September, exactly what the rate design should look like and how to approach this, and all the variables that play into these rates. We took our best, our best guess at what these, the rate structure needs to be, and the rates that have been sent out and noticed to customers are our best attempt at this point, given the information. As I mentioned, the cost proposals for DSAL are due late this week, and so we won't know probably till the end of the month where that stands. And so there's still a lot of variables yet to be determined in these rates, but these rates represent the highest possible rates we anticipate for FY16, and certainly, consistent with Prop 218, we will adopt the rates that reflect the actual costs that we anticipate for FY16. So if we need to readopt these rates in June to reflect what we may know more about the DSAL or our water supply situation, then that's, that'll be the plan. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly Dyer, our Water Resources Supervisor.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Kelly Dyer, and I'm going to walk us through the rate study. The goals of the rate study, desalination expenses and the financial plan, proposed water rates, the public process, and then we'll close with the public hearing. The goals of the rate study are to provide sufficient revenue for water operating and capital needs, and it incorporates drought-related projects, including the desalination plant. The rate study distributes the costs consistent with Prop 218 requirements, and we worked with our expert rate consultant, Reftalis Financial Consultants, to update our water rate model to do the cost of service calculations consistent with Prop 218. And one of the goals of the rate study was to incentivize water conservation. What that means is that the rates are designed based on the 20% citywide demand reduction, and we have a tiered rate structure that, where the lower water users have the lowest cost and the higher water users have the highest cost. A key feature of the, the rate study is the cost of desalination, and so the rates are based on a plant capacity of 3,125 acre feet per year. And as Mr. Hagmark mentioned, there's, we had to make some assumptions at this time because we won't know the, the actual cost of DSAL until the contract is negotiated and awarded. So the rates currently assume a $40 million capital cost, which we believe is a conservative assumption, and it also assumes a 10-year payback with a 6% increase interest rate on the loan. So that results in an annual payment of $5.3 million per year. And we are working on a state loan, which would significantly reduce that annual payment. For full production of the DSAL plant, which would, would be in FY17, it's a $5.2 million operating cost, and then when the plant is in a standby mode, producing a minimal amount of water post-drought, it would be a $2.5 million operating cost annually.
Mr. Francisco has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Dyer, if, if we do get the State Revolving Fund loan, what would the annual debt service payment be?
I believe it'd be about half, $2.5 million a year.
Okay, thank you.
This shows our projected financial plan, and the rates that we're talking about today are fiscal year 16 rates. The future years are projections, but it's really for illustrative purposes. I'm going to focus on the FY15 and 16 rates today. So starting with our capital costs, you see an increase from fiscal year 15 to 16, and that's primarily because of capital costs associated with the DSAL plant. In FY17, you see that go down, and the reason is because at that point, it becomes a debt service payment. So our debt service goes from $5.1 million up to $10.4 million between FY16 and 17. The operating costs increase gradually. The significant DSAL costs come in FY17, that was the $5.2 million of operating costs. However, you don't see a substantial increase in the operating expenses, because at that point, we're assuming we would no longer be purchasing imported water for water transfers, so that the net operating cost is not a substantial increase. So in FY15, our total expenditures are projected to be $46.2 million, and our total revenue is projected to be $39 million. Going into fiscal year 15, we had substantial reserves above council policy, which we planned to use, and so there was $7.2 million from reserves that we're planning to use in FY15. In FY16, our reserve balance will be lower, so there's the imbalance that we're having to correct for to make our... to correct for to make our revenues more closely match our expenditures. This shows our reserve balance, and the top rows are projected reserve balance, the second row are the council policy requirements, and then the bottom row is the surplus or the deficit. And so we are planning to maintain the reserve balance at or above council policy, which we believe is important, given the uncertainty that we're facing with the drought. So once we've determined the revenue requirements, we, the next phase of the study was the rate design. And there are some underlying, well, the rate design must meet the requirements of Prop 218 and cost of service, but there are some underlying policies in the rate design that were carried forward and consistent with our general plan and our water supply plan, and that's to aim to sustain agricultural use, to promote parks and public spaces, and provide affordable water for basic health and sanitation needs. Therefore, the Tier 1 rate for corresponding customer classes is representative of our lowest-cost water. So this applies to the Tier 1 rate for residential, for irrigation, for agricultural, and irrigation for parks, rec, and schools. This chart shows our normal water usage. This would have been our, our normal water use by customer class going into the drought. And the colors represent the different tiers. So Tier 1 is blue, Tier 2 is green, and Tier 3 is red. And as you can see, the single-family residential makes up the majority of the water use, followed by multifamily residential, and then commercial and industrial. The irrigation customers make up a very small portion of our overall system demand. Because the rates are designed based on a 20% citywide reduction, we had to make some assumptions on the annual demands by customer class. And so we assumed that the majority of the reductions would come from Tier 2 and Tier 3. And for our irrigation customers, we're assuming everyone stays within their monthly budgets. The proposed rates were, all the details of the proposed rates were included in the council agenda packet, and I'm showing the tables here just to walk through the two major components of the monthly water bill and the range of increases. So the first component of the water bill is the fixed monthly charge, and this is something that affects everyone. It's not tied to the amount of water used, it's a fixed charge every month. And the range of increases is $9.27 up to $75.13, depending on the meter size. The large majority of our customers have a 5/8 inch meter. Our fixed rates are based on California Urban Water Conservation Council best management practices. The city is a signatory to an MOU, where our fixed revenues are no more than 30% of our total revenue. And the reason for that is to incentivize conservation. The second part of the monthly bill is the volumetric rate, and this is based on water The cost of operating the D-SAL plant is not included in any of the Tier 1 rates. It's only in the Tier 2 and Tier 3. So for single-family residential, the Tier 1 rate is, you know, going up by 92 cents. Tier 2 would be $2.12 increase, and Tier 3 would be $5.15 increase. For multifamily residential, they're the same increases for Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. And for commercial and industrial, the Tier 1 rate would go up $1.21, and Tier 2 would go up $3.63. For irrigation customers, for residential and commercial irrigation customers, Tier 1 would go up by $2.12, Tier 2 would go up by $5.15. And those rates are consistent with our regular residential rates for Tier 2 and Tier 3. It's basically, basically an extension of the Tier 2 and Tier 3 rates for residential customers. Irrigation for parks, rec, and schools would go up by 91 cents in Tier 1, and Tier 2 would go up by $5.15. And irrigation for ag would go up by 87 cents for Tier 1, and $5.15 for Tier 2. Recycled water customers would see a 72 cent increase, and all customers outside of the city limits would see increases that are equivalent to 130% of all of the respective customer classes and tiers. This is an example of a single-family residential monthly bill based on a 5/8 inch meter. For a low-water user using four units a month, there would be a $12.95 increase. For a moderate-water user using 12 units a month, it would be a $29.91 increase. And for a high-water user using 32 units, it would be $120.79. This chart compares our current rates, which are the blue bar for fiscal year '15, and the proposed FY '16 increases, which are the yellow bar, compares the city of Santa Barbara with our neighboring water agencies on the South Coast. And so, and on the left, that's Colita Water District. They are currently developing their drought water rates. But as it's looking, even with the rate increases, we would still be the, the same or lower as our neighbors for a single-family residential customer using 12 units a month. So our water rates are based on model predictions, and there is, because of the drought, there is uncertainty that we're facing. We don't know how long the drought's going to last and how that might affect our costs and our demands. As Mr. Hagmark mentioned, the cost of D-SAL is something we'll know more about in the coming months. And we have a model that is based on predictions of water use, and behavior may be different. If it's, the community can serve more than 20%, that's wonderful for water supply, we will have to address the, the financial implications somehow. And so we will be addressing, reassessing our rates this spring, and again, next year, since we're going to be continually monitoring as the drought goes on. The public process for our rate study began in August of 2014, where we initiated the rate study and received preliminary input from Water Commission. Through September and January, we had several meetings with Water Commission and City Council to gain policy input on the rate design. In January, we presented the proposed water rates and sent out the Prop 218 notices. In February, we had two public information meetings, and here we are in March for the public hearing, and next week is the tentative adoption of the proposed FY '16 rates, which would take effect in July. This is just a summary of the number of meetings we've had, is eight public meetings prior to the public hearing. And at the time this presentation was put together, we had 44 letters of protest. We had some returned mail, which we counted as a protest, about 82 letters of returned mail. So altogether, that's 126 written protests.
Any questions first before I open up the public hearing? Mr. Francisco.
Thank you. Ms. Dyer, when I'm looking at the various irrigation rates, and I'm, the, what I'm looking at is Table 1 in the flyer that went out. So for the first group, the residential and commercial, they see a 33% increase in that 100% budget level. In the second group, recreation parks and schools, they also see a 33% increase, but in the agriculture rate, that's up 56%. What is the, what's the rationale for that difference in those irrigation rates?
The irrigation rates by customer, by customer class have to match the cost of service. And so first, once you've determined the amount of revenue that needs to be collected by a, a certain customer class, in order to determine the Tier 1 rate, we were looking at the cost of our lowest-cost water. And so that's where the $2.43 comes from. It's the cost of our lowest-cost water. And then the remainder of the revenues that need to be collected from that customer class is picked up in Tier 2. For all of our irrigation customers, we're assuming that nobody goes outside of their irrigation budgets, therefore, we're not expecting revenue from Tier 2 rates if everyone stays within their budget.
Madam Mayor, councilmember.
Yes, please.
The easy answer is our cheap water is disappearing. We have relied on, for much of our rates, water from Gibraltar and Conchuma to support the Tier 1 users to provide that very affordable water. And basically, as you can see by any, any measure, that water is disappearing quickly. And in order to continue to meet supplies, we're having to bring on more expensive, either state water, or in this case, the consideration of D-SAL. What that's doing is basically decreasing our ability to provide that low-cost water to our Tier 1 users, and, and ultimately bringing the costs up for those users. I mean, we have for years, the council policy has those as, as those, the Tier 1 for irrigation, particularly for parks, agricultural, and school, and, and single-family has been the target of the most affordable water, as we stated in the presentation. And it continues to be the policy. Unfortunately, it must cover the cost of service. And as we see those low-cost sources of water disappear, unfortunately, the, we, we are stuck with higher-cost water to meet those, that same need. And we tried to minimize those, but legally, we cannot, we cannot subsidize these rates any further than what has been displayed here. And obviously, we're hopeful that the costs for D-SAL come in less, and, and that can be adjusted, but this is our best understanding at this point.
So I, I understand the rationale, if, if we don't have cheap water anymore, obviously, we're going to have to raise the rates for the water we do have. And the water that we do have, whether it's purchased, or whether it's D-SAL, or whatever, it's more expensive. I understand that. What I'm, what I'm trying to understand specifically, and what my question is about, is you've got three classes of irrigation customers here, two of whom have a 33% increase in their 100% block, and one of whom has a 56% increase in their 100% block. That's what I'm trying to understand. What's the reason for that difference?
The, councilmember Francisco, the best way to describe it is the, the way that costs are allocated to those, those tiers is we basically take the cost of the water that was being presented there, and as that water disappears, you're basically stuck with more expensive water for that tier, for that, for that group. And so we started with agriculture, which has, they had the highest priority for water in this case, and so they got the first chunk of water. And if you can meet the needs with that water, then it moves over to the next bucket, which would be irrigation for parks and schools and single-family residential. And so what we're doing is we're quickly running out of water to meet the agricultural needs and having to use more expensive water. So that's what's pushing that demand or that cost up.
So are you saying that the agriculture is the last in line or the first in line?
First in line for the lowest-cost water.
So their cost for water is half that of single-family residential users as now? And those sources, those cheap sources of water are disappearing?
I'll keep thinking about it. Thanks.
Mr. Hart?
I guess I want to take a run at this, too. And I think the answer is Prop 218, and that the legal restrictions of how we get to allocate water costs by tiers, and that, maybe that's what you should speak more precisely to, is I don't think folks in the audience are understanding that we are governed by the limitations of Prop 218 and how we can set these rates. You know, I think that there's a feeling that we have the flexibility to cross-subsidize water rates and to have a value judgment that agriculture is really important. Obviously, that was the, one of the slides you showed, it was one of the high pri, it was the highest priority in the general plan language. So if you could talk more about the implications of Prop 218 to this aspect of this, that would, I think, help everybody understand this better.
Madam Mayor, councilmember Hart, the first step is to determine the cost of service to each customer class. So just as an example, I'll say, you know, $100.
That's required by law. That's something that's step one in Prop 218.
Right. So as an arbitrary number, I'm going to use $100 as an example, as the cost of service to a particular, a particular customer class, say irrigation for agriculture. In our rate model, we're not assuming anyone is using water in Tier 2, and that everyone's staying within their monthly budget. So the Tier 1 rate is based on the cost of service to that customer class and the amount of water usage in that customer class.
So the 56% increase that councilmember Francisco is speaking to in Tier 2, the additional HCF, you're saying folks aren't going to pay that. They're going to use, as long as they stay within their monthly budget, they're going to pay the smaller number, which is half what residential, the lowest rate that residential customers pay currently.
Right.
So the subsidy that agriculture gets today, significant 50% subsidy over urban users, is going to continue through this next period, as long as folks stay within their, their monthly allocation.
I want to be careful, because it's not a subsidy, but it's just the cost to that customer.
Yeah, because that's the 218. I can't use that word because it's Prop 218. So the structure, the rate structure that we have will continue on.
Right. The cost of service to that customer class matches the revenues we collect from that customer class.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Hagmark, the variables so far that you mentioned that could affect the water rates in a positive way, in other words, make them go down, would be just the cost of the state loan, or are there other variables as well that could help that? And the second part of the question would be, if there is a savings realized, do all the categories go down proportionally?
Madam Mayor, councilmember Rouse, start with the first question. So there are a few variables, and we kind of touched on some of them, but certainly the cost of the D-SAL plant, aside from just the, how we fund it, that's one method, but the cost. I mean, we've, hopefully, we've used a number that I think is pretty conservative. Obviously, another part of that is the operational costs of the facility. We've, you know, made a guess that it was going to be about $5 million, a very educated guess, based on our, our design team, that it would be about $5 million a year. If that's significantly different, that would also impact the long-term, what we need to do with the rates to be prepared for that. So there are several variables. Now, how that triggers, the people that will benefit most from the drop in cost from D-SAL will be the low-income and single-family residential users, because where it's going to come, where that savings is going to come, is in the, the monthly meter charge, the fixed meter charge. And again, that's not to read the meter. I think there's some misunderstandings about the, what that charge is. That is, that is not related to the cost of reading your meter. That is a cost of operating our system and a lot of our fixed system. And so when we talk about taking on debt for D-SAL, that is an obligation that we have to pay, no matter what the rates look like. And so the costs of that have been moved into the fixed meter charge, because that is a consistent thing we can count on. Now, the operation of the D-SAL plant is actually captured in usage. And so Tier 2 and Tier 3 users, they're paying for the operation of that D-SAL plant. Nobody in Tier 1 is paying for the operation of the D-SAL plant. So if we see, say, for example, a $5, because we get a wonderful state loan, we get a $5, which would lower our debt service to $2.5 million from $5 million, that trickles down to about a $5 decrease per month in the fixed meter charge. And so when we're looking at the single-family residential low user who's at $1,295, it would drop.
Perhaps you can put that slide up for the...
So, that single-family residential at $13, that would drop down to $7 if we were to get that, if, better loan, which I'm feeling, that's a good chance we're going to get that loan. If the, if the costs of D-SAL come in less, that'd be further passed along in that fixed meter charge.
That's not the fixed meter charge, though. Is that what you were talking about, the fixed meter?
Sorry, that is not, but I'm just talking about the total difference. It would drop about $5, just based on our quick... It would drop about $5, just based on our quick calculations on that.
Then another thing besides, you know, energy costs, which can be a variable, and whether or not we are able to use renewables and/or, I mean, because we probably base the operational estimates on what it costs to buy a kilowatt hours off the grid, right?
Correct.
Can you put the fixed meter charge up, just so we're crystal clear here? Because I think the point of the public hearing, too, is to talk about what constraints were under, under Prop 218. So you're saying then, so the D-SAL column there is the cost of the construction of the D-SAL plant?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
And includes the debt service, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we get this, this loan, which basically significantly reduces the debt service, then that $9.18, which is a typical 5/8 pipe, that typical meter, would go down to $5 less per month? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, that is correct. And that would trickle down through the rest of the, you know, whether you're a two-inch meter, it'd probably be instead of being $73, it would be about $35, $36 would be. So that kind of trickles down, it'd be about half of the cost. So there is, you know, again, I wish we had better numbers for us today, but we needed to make this decision and...
And Prop 218 would not allow us, for example, to say, let's say we got the loan, we can't say, let's go down, let's bring the $9.18 down to zero.
That's correct.
And, and not touch anything else. We have to be proportionate with each of the different types of meters, based on the usage of each of those meters. We can't just, we can't favor one over the other.
Likewise, if we do get the favorable rate and things do come in better, we must adopt rates that reflect that. We cannot continue with rates like this if that is not the cost that we anticipate seeing.
Right, right. We can always go down from what we're putting out in the public hearing, but we cannot, we can't go up, nor can we get additional money and keep what we said we were going to do in the, in the public hearing, because that would be counted as excess money.
That's correct.
Right? Okay.
I did want to bring, sorry, Madam Mayor, I did want to bring back the uncertainty we were facing into the discussion, however, because there is an opportunity to reduce the fixed rates, holding everything else constant. But we are going to be reassessing our, our costs, our other costs due to drought, and our demands, and our demand reduction targets, and factoring in those financial implications into the FY '16 rates at a later time.
Madam Mayor, that's a, that's a good point. I did talk on about it in my drought update. The cost of going from a 20% conservation goal to a 25% conservation goal is about $5 million. So that's $5 million in revenue we would have to generate if we move to that higher conservation goal. So that's going to be a discussion we'll be having as we move and discuss more about stage three. So it has an implication that we're going to have to try and figure out. We certainly can't go any higher than the rates that we've published here, but whether we want to push that conservation goal out.
So that, that's kind of like what we're hearing from Montecito Water District, in that they, they've conserved so well that they didn't bring in the money they needed to, so they need to raise rates more to, to use less water. So we don't want to go there.
Right.
Right. Okay. It is complicated. Mr. Hart?
The only thing I just wanted to, to add to that was your point there, that I don't think folks understand that, that there's a price from conservation. People are doing the right thing, we're encouraging it, but we, we just, there is, there's a revenue loss that has to be made up. And as part of Prop 218, we have to maintain that revenue within the system. And, and the same thing applies with the sewer rates, because there are some of the protest letters that are talking about the sewer rate increases, and the frustration that people are saying that, hey, we're not watering outside, this is not water going down the sewer system, but that's not the point. The point is that we have to generate revenues from these systems in order to maintain the fixed cost of them, and thus, the prices have to increase when, then there's less water being used. And that's counterintuitive, it's hard for people to understand, but I think we can't say it enough, probably, to help make the point.
Okay. Mr. Hachges?
Just to reiterate what Mr. Hart was saying, it's completely counterintuitive. The more you, the more you save, the more you owe. That's called what? I thought that was...
But still, we, we want to save, because it'll cost a whole lot more if there's no more water left.
Oh, yeah, we have to. Absolutely.
Do you think D-SAL is expensive with 3,125 acre feet in production? If we needed to go up to 7,500, or even the permitted capacity of 10,000 acre feet, then the cost of that would be much higher than what we're already looking at here today. So that conservation piece actually, in the, in the big picture, is saving us money.
Correct.
But just in terms of these detailed rates, it seems awkward. Yeah.
Yeah, I did remember one more question.
Go ahead, Mr. Hart.
I'm sorry. In your conversations with the operators, you know, I know there's, this is speculative, and, and if you don't want to answer it, that's fine, too. But, but are you getting any kind of read from them about the numbers that they are potentially talking about in terms of construction and operation? Or are they just, they're, they're holding their cards close to the vest because this is a bidding, competitive bidding situation? Okay. That's what I suspect.
All right. With that, we are going to open up the public hearing, so there are two minutes here at the podium. I'll call your name up, and the person who's coming up next will start with Julia Bennett, to be followed by Dorothy Dent.
Well, I just realized that I can use more water and not pay any more money. I use one HCF a month, and I've complained and complained that if you use less water, you should pay less. But it's not working that way. I can use up to four. I reuse all my water, all my water for my sink, I use all my water for my baths to flush my toilet, and I have eight trees and pots and lots of plants, and I hand-water everything. I've had two heart attacks, I have osteoporosis, and I can do that. And I see why, don't see why other people can't understand that water is life, and a bug cannot live without water. And I think you've been reactive and not proactive. It's the fourth year of a drought, and we can't hope it's going to rain, because only God knows when it's going to rain. So I think I can use more water now. That's all I learned, and still pay the same.
I want to be absolutely clear, thank you very much.
Which is exorbitant, I might add.
I, I want to be absolutely clear that the rates per HCF is per HCF. So if you use one HCF today and you use four HCF tomorrow, you're going to be paying four times as much. Correct?
That is correct.
The meter, but, so, it's, it's a per HCF charge. I want people to understand what it is that they're looking at. Okay? So. Okay? So, because I just want to, because it's a public hearing, I just want to make sure that's crystal clear. So if you can talk about, on residential, that's irrigation.
Madam Mayor, the single fam, I'm just looking at single-family residential tier one. So you can use up to four units per month. At the proposed rate would be $4.20. So every unit, it's $4.20 per unit. So if you use four units, that's four times that.
Times $4.20.
Right.
That's right.
$17, almost $17.
Right. Okay. Dorothy Dent will be followed by Steve Little.
Afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Councilman and Woman. For water integrity and environmental protection, I'd like you to please consider regulating the use of po, chemical poisons, possibly taxing as well, and offering incentives for residents to use environmentally conscious alternatives to commercial pesticides, harsh detergents, and petrochemicals that pollute our water, ocean, and land, and are often applied far too liberally and with ignorance to potential harm. And please consider offering gray water system and catchment incentives for residents and apartment complexes. Discontinue chlorine use, especially for your new pristine Alameda Park well water, and establish a fund for promoting solar hot water system use in apartment buildings. Most importantly, kill the density bonus building programs, because if you raise the water rates after everyone has reduced their use by 20%, you are in effect taxing people for conservation, and also affecting people who are using their water for fruit tree and organic garden use, which promotes environmental and water-saving and local food production. Also, the best thing to do would be, why would you be approving multiple-unit water use in condos for new people to come into our area without even a plan for environmental responsibility? Also, on the table should be complex discussions about possibly a fracking ban in city and county, as well as even discussing moratorium on multifamily development. So there's a lot of different alternatives to raising these water rates, and there's a lot of money in the pool going to promoting people to come into our area and possibly lessening the water use for the current people as well. Thanks.
Steve Little will be followed by Tom Widrow.
Madam Mayor and members of the councils, a pleasure to appear before you again. Been a couple of years. A tip of a hat to Paul there, got himself a very good job. And I just met Ariel. Ariel brought something to mind with, with respect to the money that would be derived by the increase. He says if it's waived, which I'm asking you folks to do, waive the agricultural rate increases, he says the city gender, city has to make up the difference. Well, that's small potatoes compared to the loss of one house on the edge of this city. The T-fire, the gap fire, the standard fire, I think they, the county and the city lost over a billion dollars in, in taxable property, and you folks get about 1% of that. So we're in dire straits for money, and please keep the agricultural people in business for the benefit that's derived. I don't have to tell you about all these things, you know them from past experience with me. Thank you again for the opportunity to re, and also to Josh here. I miss Rebecca. Thank you.
Tom Widrow will be followed by Randy Wade.
Thank you very much. I wanted to let you know that City Watch stands in favor of waiving an increase in water rates for urban agriculture. I want to remind the council that the same body here, three years ago, I believe Grant House was one of the council members who stood in support of waiving an increase and opposed to increase in fees, and this is primarily for avocado growers, urban farmers here in our city. I think it's important to have that historical context. I'm not sure if Councilmember Murillo, who also, I think, voted to support the wave at the time, my understanding is that you might have supported that on similar grounds, that this is less than 1% of total sales. It's pretty small. And I think what the previous speaker said about the value of a fuel break is significant. I got to go up to Bob Mangus' property recently and look, and, and was reminded of, of the four homes that were saved when 200 avocado trees were burnt. So that's a significant amount of revenue for the city. I also think there's a statutory obligation to give a priority to agriculture. And I don't have the document in front of me, but I worked for a congressman before, and that had to do with the authorization of Bradbury Dam and Lake Kachuma, and where the original authorization had a lot to do with a priority given to agriculture as opposed to urbanites. So I do think there's a, and we can look into this, and I encourage you and I encourage staff to look at the original intent of, of that water. So I just want to say that City Watch really sees the value in urban agriculture and the 60 or so avocado farmers we have there, have here. If you vote to not waive an increase, I think we run the risk of losing avocado, avocado growers and urban farming, and that's less than 1% really of your total sales. Thank you.
Randy Wade will be followed by Brad Smith.
Good afternoon, Randy Wade. I'm a full-time farmer. The fire department can attest that many, many homes and lives were saved by the avo orchards in the foothills during the last three major fires. This rate increases a killer to these orchards, as irrigation is the highest expense in an avo operation. The city clerk should have in possession letters of protest from over 50% of your ag users. According to Proposition 218, local governments must reject proposed rate increases if a majority of their users protest. We had hoped you would honor this California law or consider a much more modest rate hike that your ag meter customers can survive with. The citizens of Santa Barbara and the firefighters want these avo orchards above the, above town to help protect their homes and lives. The ag meter users provide less than 1% of your city water budget. It looks to be a long, hot, dry summer. Do you really want your legacy to be, I helped put an extra $15,000 in the city coffers, but the avo growers were priced out and had to stop watering their orchards? Thank you.
Brad Smith will be followed by Bob Mangus.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, D-SAL is unnecessary. I know you think it is, and we don't have time here to get into the details of that, but it's a choice between our children's future and the climate crisis and landscapes. Fossil fuel burning is what the science recognizes is making this drought so bad compared to past droughts. D-SAL has a huge fossil fuel footprint, we all know that. I just want to highlight what the climate crisis means, so that, you know, it's, it's ugly. Worst droughts, mega droughts, monster storms and floods around the world, sea level rise, we're in a coastal community, famine around the world in our children's lifetimes, perhaps our lifetime, and most seriously, the economists are saying social and economic chaos. Climate crisis is serious. And I just want to highlight that the choice to go to D-SAL now, and there's other alternatives we don't have time for, is a choice between landscapes and our children's future. And I'd like that to be more on the agenda than it has been so far. Thank you very much.
Bob Mangus will be followed by Ken Melbourne.
Madam Mayor, you're minded by trade with the...
You want Mr. Melbourne be first?
Is that all right?
Go ahead. Mr. Melbourne, and then Bob Mangus. Okay.
Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, actually, my name is Tom Bellamore, and Bob Mangus did intend to...
Tom Bellamore? Hold on, let me just, did you put in a...
Yes, with your permission.
There you are. Tom Bellamore, then Ken Melbourne, then Bob Mangus.
Thank you.
Okay, there we go.
Sorry to do that to you. I am the president of the California Avocado Commission, Irvine-based commission. The commission represents 5,000 avocado growers across the state, growing on about 60,000 acres and about a $400 million crop value, farm gate value to the producer. And as you know, about 60 of those growers are located within your service area and your jurisdiction. And, you know, I had some prepared comments, but it was a very interesting discussion you had about Prop 218. And so I thought what I would do is, is let you know that the commission has worked very closely with water districts up and down the growing region to identify creative solutions to help mitigate rate increases of this nature, upwards of, of 60%. And we've also spent a good deal of time and money looking into Prop 218, dissecting it, having our outside council look at it, and we, and there's precious little case law on it, as you probably know. But it's our contention that there's a fair amount of latitude, a fair amount of latitude when it comes to the application of Prop 218, and some things that you could think about. If you have ag, irrigated ag as a class of services, differentiated service, maybe it has to do with interruptibility, maybe it has to do with what kinds of cuts ag sustains if, if cuts are, are implemented across your user base. But things like that are possible, and at the end of the day, maybe even public policy arguments are possible because of the benefits that, that agriculture brings with respect to fire breaks and so forth. And so, you know, in our assessment, it really has to do with your resolve, and the resolve of any water district up and down the growing region, on just what you, you know, how, how strongly you feel the need to honor what's in your general plan that says you will sustain agriculture. If you have that resolve, you can sit down and find creative ways to meet the requirements of Prop 218. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have any specific, you don't have to answer it right now, but that you could send to us, I'd appreciate seeing that.
We do have a letter, which we'll leave.
Great, thank you. Ken Melbourne will be followed by Bob Mangus. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Ken Melbourne, Director of Issues Management with the California Avocado Commission. I also work for the 5,000-plus growers of avocados in the state of California. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you, Mayor and Councilmembers. And I also want to commend you for the courageous action you took in the last few years by establishing a differential rate for ag payers. And I think you already set a precedence where you recognize that there's values there. There are intrinsic values that are associated directly with, with agriculture, and specifically in this area avocado production. The fire break we've been talking about, but there's also environmental benefits, the carbon sequestration that occurs, the preservation of open space, the reduction in urban sprawl. It could go on and on and on. I think I look at Santa Barbara as a great illustration of preserving your community identity, of which avocado growers are a prime part of that. I think when you look at the economic benefits, it goes beyond just... I think when you look at the economic benefits, it goes beyond just the employees that they have, but also that the businesses that they conduct businesses with here in the community, there's a ripple effect. And we would be more than willing to help you identify that kind of economic value, the second and third spinoff of the dollars that are spent here on avocado production. And I think it's worth noting that we've had a public policy survey conducted in Southern California, and more than three-quarters of those voters that responded were supportive of a rate differential for agriculture based on all the factors that we've just talked about. And when you talk about the less than 1% of your total volume that ag represents, I think it's very negligible, but it sends a strong message to your community, to your voters, and to your ag interests that you do value agriculture and you're willing to take the right step. And finally, I want to let you know that I think we would all agree in light of the dire drought conditions that we are facing in this state, and, you know, only God knows what the future holds, it's without any question that in a health and safety emergency, agriculture users will be cut off. And I think there and there alone, you can establish that there is a differential rate associated with it. Ag will be cut off if it comes to that.
Thank you.
So I have a letter here for the council members.
Thanks, you can send it to the clerk. Thank you very much. Bob Mangus will be followed by Phil Walker.
Let me express a certain level of anxiety looking at the future of my 500 trees, which has prompted me to probably get off my duff and do more proaction than I have in a long time. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Francisco for taking the time and coming out, taking that bird's eye view, look at Sycamore Canyon and seeing it as in a state where my neighbor has just added trees. So we have, he has 3,000 trees and I have 500. And in the T fire, I lost 200 of my trees and he probably lost 700 or 800. But we saved all of our buildings, which you continue to get property taxed from us. Where the people on the bridge have lost their home, you lost money on. So that's a penny wise, pound foolish. Did I say that right? Yeah, I got it right. But as a result of this, one frustration I had, I got to pass on is with your department trying to get some information on who to contact. I was stalled for about a month on trying to get information and communication back. Finally, I got a letter from, that said the attorney says we can't share that information. So we had to scrounge around and phone and I talked to over 30, between 30 and 40 growers. And you've got a disgruntled, unhappy, pessimistic group out there right now. And you've lost about 10% that have turned their ag meters because of water rates. It's all about that margin, that small margin. We're caught between a rock and a hard place. The NAFTA treaty is, and the imports have put us on an income, a static income, and the water rates are going up, so we get caught between that rock and the hard place.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Phil Walker will be followed by Barry Semler, then Ally Argonbright, and the final speaker will be Kira Redman. Is Phil here?
I don't see him.
Nope, Phil left. Okay. Barry Semler?
Good afternoon, and thank you very much, Madam Mayor, esteemed council members. I'm here representing both myself as well as the avocado growers. And with reference to the proposed agricultural increase in water rates. At one point in time, agriculture was the largest industry in this country, which I'm confident you are all aware of. I've been farming for over 30 years in Santa Barbara. I was actively participated with legalizing agriculture in the city of Santa Barbara as illegal land use. And agriculture is a tough business, to say the least. There's always numerous obstacles. If it's too hot, it's too cold, too wet, too dry, too anything, we get hurt. When it's perfect for every, all of our conditions are just fine, it's fine for everybody else and the price is usually in the tank. So it's something that, and our most valuable resource is water. And these other gentlemen have discussed briefly about how it saved homes in the fire. And what saved those homes and what created that fire break was the water in those avocado trees. And it's a necessity. It's tropical fruit and it needs an abundance of water, probably more so than most. But as noted by the Water Resources Development Supervisor here, it's a very, very small percentage of usage, less than 1%. And it's, for us, it's a necessity. Because if, with these increases and the, based upon these increases, of which I appreciate Councilman Hart and Councilman Francisco's awareness of the actual percentage being a 55% in water rates increase in Tier One and a 76% rate increase in water meter rates for a two-inch water meter. I lost over 4,000 trees and lost my home in the T fire. So it's, these kinds of rates are just basically going to, they're cost prohibitive and they're going to ultimately put the avocado grower out of business.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ally Argonbright?
Thank you very much for your consideration, and I appreciate it.
Hello again. I just wanted to point out that I didn't hear any research from the desalination experts about the energy usage or the environmental impacts of that energy usage. And I did some research, and I found from studies in Oakland, California, around their desalinization proposal that on average, these plants use about 15,000 kilowatts per million gallons of water produced.
Are you pertaining to the water rates here?
This is for an example from Oakland.
I know. But the item here is about the water rates. So if you could make your comments pertain to the item, that would be helpful.
I thought this was a discussion overall of the desalination plant, which results...
This is an item, I'm stopping the clock. This is an item on the water rates. We already had the drought update that included the desalination plant, which you spoke at before. So if you want to speak to the water rates, you're welcome to, of course.
No, I don't have specifics to talk about that, but I just wanted to point out that that wasn't really discussed.
Thank you.
And so, I guess that's all I can say.
Kira Redman? And then Lindsey? And then I have Omar Yurube, but it was item number four and it says D-SAL plant. So if it's for the water rates, please come up, because that's what the item we're in. Ms. Redman, hello.
Good afternoon, council members, Mayor. I'm Kira Redman from Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. Thank you for holding this public hearing on the rate increase needed to reactivate the city's desalination plant. I'm glad to hear that the prospects of a lower interest loan, the talks for that are looking good, and that will certainly make the cost less, at least in economic terms. And I'm sure we're all happy about that. A number of things have happened in the last couple of months pertaining to the permits, and those were the hearings before the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the California Coastal Commission. And I understand that the City Council received a letter from the Coastal Commission, and I trust that the mayor and staff have reported back to the rest of the council on what transpired there. The concerns voiced by the regional board members and the commissioners echoed those that Channel Keeper has been voicing, namely about the adverse effects on the marine environment that will result.
Ms. Redman, I'm going to say the same thing I said to the other speaker. If you want to speak to the water rates, you're welcome to. We already had the item on the drought update.
Okay.
So...
I look forward to working with the city on implementing the findings of the feasibility study, and I appreciate the city moving forward with that study in response to the concerns that we and the commissioners and regional board have stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsey? Okay, again, this is about the water rates. And then Omar Yurube would be the final speaker.
Hello, City Council members. I would like to say that I don't think there should be an increase in agricultural water use. If there's an increase in the water for ag, then that also means that there is an increase in cost for food, and that affects mostly people of lower socioeconomic status. Not only that, but most likely the location of the D-SAL plant itself will be affecting people of lower socioeconomic status. The flora and fauna, which is not an item that we're speaking about right now, but it's, the money increase in agricultural usage is something that I don't think is a benefit from the desalination plant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Omar Yurube?
My comments were about the D-SAL plant.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'm going to close the public comment, the public hearing about the water rates, and it's to the council for any other final comments. I want to start with, I guess, just a request as we move forward because of this, we received a lot of testimony about creative ways to deal with rates and the ag, you know, in that particular category. I heard information about policy issues related to public safety. It'd be good to know from our city attorney or staff at some point how much 218 can allow us to have that kind of conversation or not, what those options would be. You don't need to answer that now unless you have a quick answer. But I don't think, just because we, and I agree, that there is a green belt there, that that in and of itself would give us the authority under Prop 218 to waive increases because of that kind of public policy direction. So I'd appreciate if that or other kinds of things, and I see we have the letter here from the association, but if we could look into that and see what leverage we do have, if any, because it seems to me that we are very tied in terms of what we can do based under Prop 218. So I don't know, Mr. Kalan or Ms. Bjork, if you want to comment a little bit about that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, let me begin, and then the policy contours can be filled in by your policy staff. Proposition 218 is a constitutional amendment. So 20 years ago, we constitutionalized utility rate making, including water rate making. The Constitution, though, as you know, consists of very few words. So the courts have had to do quite a bit of filling in the blanks with Prop 218. And one of the blanks that's being filled in currently is the extent to which policy considerations relating to conservation and drought-related rates can be taken into account when setting water rates. There's a case out of the city of, actually not the city, but out of San Juan Capistrano that is pending in the Court of Appeal right now, that involved tiered water rate structures, so increasing blocks designed to encourage conservation. In San Juan Capistrano, though, unlike here in Santa Barbara, those rates were not based on the cost of service. The words that appear in the Constitution are cost of service, and the rates need to be based on cost of service. So that's what keeps you from picking subsidies, say, for example, for low-income seniors. We'd all agree it'd be a great thing if we could reduce the cost of water for low-income seniors. The Constitution doesn't allow that. It doesn't speak to that. The other problem that you are confronted with when you're doing rate making is what are the customer classes going to be? How fine do they have to be? Must each customer have their own rate? Or is a single rate for the whole city good enough? Your staff have chosen an accepted utility practice, which is to create customer classes. And you're familiar with those, residential, commercial, ag park and rec, ag irrigation, agriculture rates. So those customer classes are where we have focused on making sure that the costs of service are respected. So there can be differences in prices, we think, so long as the costs associated with those prices for different customer classes are based on the cost of service and recover no more money than is necessary to provide the revenue needed for that customer class. Long story short, you're heavily constrained in your policy judgments by the Constitution. The purpose of Prop 218 was to explicitly to restrict the flow of revenue to local government. And it does that in some draconian ways that limit your authority. I'd turn it over to the policy staff to address policy alternatives.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director. And I've joined the water staff because we actually addressed this policy issue before either Kelly or Joshua was on the staff, so I thought I'd laddened my two cents. We did the water rate policy implementation that is still being played out in our current water rates in the 2012, 2013 time period. And at that time, the agriculture interests, as they have every year, came forward and said, "It's very hard to do business here." So with council direction, we did look as creatively as we were able to at the time, or as we thought we could at the time, at what the variables were with regard to the assignment of costs on a policy basis to our different user classes. So we looked at things like reliability, interruptibility, capacity, and then cost of water. And we assigned the lowest cost of water to the agricultural community, as well as looking at the issues such as how much can we ask them to conserve when we cut back. Just by way of illustration, if you look at the commercial industrial base allocation allotment Tier One, you'll see it's higher than our commercial and multifamily. The reason for that is similarly, we recognize that one of the ways that we can protect ourselves from escalating costs during times of drought is by reducing temporarily our water demand. We also recognize commercial has much less ability to do that because they're, if they could reduce water demand, they'd already be doing so. So as a result, their reliability had to be higher, their costs were higher. Conversely, where we have opportunities to look for less reliability, such as extreme conservation from our residential and irrigation users, we did build that in into our water factors by trying to keep the costs lower. Certainly, if there are other ideas, we, to the extent we have the time to look into them and the budget with our rate consultant to look into them, we'd be interested in exploring them because it has been council's policy direction to us to promote urban agriculture.
Thank you. Ms. Murio?
I wanted to pursue that. I mean, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Bjork. So I, did, can you explain why we were able to give ag a break before and not now? And if I missed it, I apologize.
To the extent that we are not giving ag a break, we are following policy direction in the prioritization of our water supplies and how council wants them to be applied. So we've said we have this pool of water, we want this cheapest bit to be allocated to ag. We're still saying that. The differences are there's not as much water in that cheapest bit, and the cost of that cheapest water has increased.
And that's Tier One? Ag is Tier One?
Correct.
Okay. Then can I just press Mr. Kalan a little bit more? So just to be clear to the avocado growers who are here, there is nothing in 218 that gives them relief for a rate increase.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Murio, 218 does not, Proposition 218 does not describe a mechanism for offering discounts in water costs. It does allow you to create different customer classes, as you've done here. And we believe, we're not certain, but we believe it allows you to allocate the lowest cost water to those customers as you have with agriculture already.
Okay. And I think Mr. Widrow referred to some statutory requirement related to Kachuma water, that when the dam was built way back when, there was some, I'm not sure if it's a legal, something that was written into the system, that agriculture gets some consideration, some accommodation?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Murio, the water, there are water allocations in Kachuma for municipal, industrial, and agricultural. All of the cities are municipal, industrial. We do not have an agricultural component in the Kachuma water supply.
Okay. That's all my questions for now, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco.
So I understand what you were saying now. So I believe that staff has tried to implement council's direction. We place a value on urban agriculture. And of all of the groups of water, you have assigned, continued to assign to agriculture the lowest cost group of water, whatever you want to call it. It does have a higher rate increase than the other ones have, but it's still starting from the lowest point. And anything that's possible to do in terms of if there's some suggestion that you might get from the avocado growers association that would allow us to make this less painful, anyone in business... Anyone in business seeing a 56% increase in a basic supply is going to have a hard time. We may not be able to do anything about that, I don't know. But I would appreciate any effort you could make to see if there's, if there's something there. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, just to add to that, does staff have any idea how much money we're talking about with these customers in terms of what this represents in revenue, the increased cost? Just to order of magnitude, ballpark number?
That would be something we'd have to get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, I can tell you that the cost was not the driving consideration in the adjustment. It really comes back to the cost of service, because that question came up before. And as Mr. Hagmark said, we'd have to get back to you with the specifics, but it's not a lot of money. So the consideration is really being sure that we're compliant with the cost of service.
I understand that, and I understand the vulnerability of a potential suit that would jeopardize all of the rates across, we'd have a lawsuit that would allege that we had done something inappropriate with Prop 218. It put the entire rate structure in jeopardy. We've had a lot of experience with lawsuits in the last six months, bad experience with lawsuits in the last six months. So I'm very sensitive to that, but I just wanted to kind of, if you could at least come up with a number as a ballpark, so I'd have a sense of the order of magnitude we're talking about, that'd be helpful. Thanks.
When you're saying it's not a lot of money, you mean it's not a lot of money in the, in the water budget?
That's correct. I mean, it wasn't, adjustments to the agricultural rate were not being driven by the need to balance the budget. They were, they are being driven by the need to be compliant.
Yeah, just to be clear, because it sounds like some avocado farmer feels like it's a lot of money.
Yes, right.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Rouse?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Correct my memory if I'm wrong, but we've had this conversation before, and it was very clear, and it's always been clear, the council preferred to maintain and have a green belt, certainly with the major fires we had, as well as the culture of having, of urban agriculture. I mean, there's, I think that's always been pretty clear for us. But at one time, did we not move, not move the ag rates, but move the other rates, and did we do that incorrectly then?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, I, to my recollection, there was a time we actually reduced the ag rates. Subsequently, we have updated our entire cost-of-service study. As was indicated by Mr. Kalan, Prop 218 understanding continues to grow, and we're building on that understanding and make, trying to make sure the city is interpreting that as properly as possible.
Thank you.
So we're doing what we can with the information we have that sounds like it keeps changing. So I just want to, I just want to appreciate members of the commission who are here and in your letter, and I think it's, I think some, what you're hearing from us in terms of some direction is to see if there's any stone unturned that we could look at, that would be helpful. It sounds like it's very limited, if anything, but I think it's worth at least a look, and it looks like you have some professionals who are probably grappling with the same issue all over the state. So it's good to have that perspective as well. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, we're hearing a lot about Proposition 218 today, and how it's, we're not even talking about some of our own specific needs, but we're talking about this externally imposed system. And it's, it's been frustrating to me as I've watched us participated in the, in these rate conversations the last couple of years and in our constant battle to try and provide water. And Proposition 218 is getting in our way in one really critical area, which is to use pricing as a conservation tool. And I've taken the opportunity to, to speak to at least the representatives of our state legislators. This is an area where we, we need to hook rates back up with, with conservation goals as a tool, at least in our, in our times of shortage. And so we're hearing, and then also in terms of, I think it, then it feeds back to our ag resources here, where they perform a function, not just of providing food and being a part of our economy, but of improving the safety of our community. So this is an unintended consequence, perhaps it's an unintended consequence, it certainly is a consequence that, that is harmful to local control being, and being able to conserve water appropriately. And we're back, again, having participated in the rate making of 25 years ago when we had the last drought, we, we used rates as the sledgehammer for conservation. There was, you get a little bit of water cheap, you get a middling amount of water kind of expensive, and then if you're using anything beyond that, you're really, basically you're, you're sticking your finger in a lightbulb socket and the, and the, and the switch is on. So we're missing that tool, and I, I hope that our legislators will, will hear it from up and down the coast and up and down California. We need that emergency tool, at least, to encourage conservation and to conceivably move it over to protecting some of our critical resources, such as the, the ag.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Just a quick question. Is the greater percentage increase for ag due to the fact that they sort of got to play catch-up to the rest of our system?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, no, they're not playing catch-up. It's the fact that our cheap water is disappearing, and that's really what's driving it. What we're left is obviously more expensive water to distribute over the customer classes remaining, and so it's unfortunate, and, and I think that's something that, you know, we're going to deal, be dealing with until the drought is over.
Thank you.
Ms. Murio?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Can I ask one more time, on behalf of the avocado growers, Mr. Kalan, did we receive 50% or more protest from the ag users? And does that matter, or is it 50% of all the rate payers?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Murio, I don't know whether we received more than 50% protest from the ag users, but it doesn't matter. The California Court of Appeal last year, again, in this incremental approach to Prop 218, ruled that the relevant protest was the entire rate base, not an individual customer class. Again, it goes to that question, if you can visualize it, of whether you have to be so extreme as to have a class of one, or whether you can have a citywide class. The court said that there was not an obligation to have class-by-class protests. So the citywide protest is what counts, and I don't believe we're anywhere near a majority protest.
Understood. Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm prepared to, to make...
I don't know, do we need a motion? I think you just need direction here.
Then may I make a comment?
Sure.
Please. That I'm understanding what Brad Smith was saying, Kira Redman, and the two young people who were concerned about D cell, it does relate to our, our water rates, right? Because the plant is driving up the costs. And the drought. So I just wanted to acknowledge that your concern about the use of power, the D cell plant will use huge amounts of electricity, and we know that. And on the flip side of that is the carbon footprint. So I do appreciate what you were saying. And to the people who have protested, I read all your letters, and I saw your names, I looked at your addresses, and I wasn't able to call people today just to acknowledge that you, that you protested. But we, we need to go forward with this, and, and I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, that there wasn't, that D cell is this thing before us, and I, and I hope it really is our savior and not something that is going to destroy us, as some people, you know, fear. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I think you had all the direction you need at this point. Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute council break, and we'll be back for the appeal. We'll have a staff presentation. We'll have opportunities for council to ask questions of staff. Then the appellant has up to 30 minutes for their presentation, and then, then the applicant has up to 30 minutes. Then it goes to the public, and then if there's any time left over from either the applicant or the appellant, they may use the balance of that time after public comment. And then when it comes to council, the public area is done, and I know sometimes we have people say, "But wait, but wait." So if you want to say what you need to say, say it during the public hearing process. And at first, I want to make sure and just go around if anyone had any ex parte communications outside the site visit, but in your office or on the phone, if we could disclose that now, that would be helpful, if anyone along the room here. No? Mr., no? Okay. So with that, we'll move it to Mr. Limon.
Madam Mayor, council members, the subject appeal involves a property located at 1912 Mission Ridge Road. It is located in the Riviera neighborhood. The property is zoned A1, single-family residential. As you can see from the aerial, it's located on a flag parcel within this neighborhood. The property is accessed from the road up a sharp-inclined private driveway. This is photos of the existing home. There is a proposal to enhance the project with a new architectural style and an addition over the garage. You see the garage structure set to the west of the property. Here is the outline of the proposed additions. The proposal is to add 530 square foot second story. That's still noted by, in red there. They also are proposing a 158-square-foot second-story deck off the front of the property. Additional improvements include what's outlined in blue here as a front-entry covered patio and a proposed raising of the pool to have better access to their pool area. These are the elevations that the architect is showing where the actual garage second-story addition is being proposed. I apologize for the clarity of these drawings, but this is the best we could do based on the scanned images. Hopefully, you'll understand from the model more clarity as far as where the additions are being proposed, as well as the applicant's presentation. Here we have, show the actual addition, and I focused here on the actual condition that was placed on the project approval by the Single Family Design Board to remove a balcony element on this elevation, again, to try to increase the privacy between the property owners. That was a condition of approval. Here's a typical section of the property building in question. There is a new architectural style, Spanish style, which involves also an increase to the slope and pitch of the ridge. I believe it's about 23 inches in height increase to the main ridge of the home. Here's the floor plan. To the left is, you could see the master bedroom addition and bath being proposed over the garage. So I'd like to outline some of the issues that have been raised by the appellant and try to explain some of the basis for why we believe the Single Family Design Board made an appropriate action. The appellant's position is really based on concerns about neighborhood compatibility, impacts to privacy and private views. Staff agrees that that, in fact, is the issue, that those are the issues that were discussed by the Single Family Design Board, and I'm going to try to walk you through some of the consideration that the board had with respect to this project review. There are also concerns by the appellant's that are appealing this decision, which abut this, this property, that a substantial portion of their existing city and ocean views from the first floor and yard areas will be lost, and they are requesting an alternative design or designs to be considered. And I'll walk you through some of the guideline language that speaks to how the city considers when there are projects that might impact privacy and private views. These are the main criteria that the Single Family Design Board focuses on. Again, consistency with their guidelines. As you recall, the Single Family Residents' Design Guidelines were adopted in 2007 with this Neighborhood Preservation Update. There was a lot of work effort to deal with second-story developments and two-story designs. We actually have a lot of design techniques outlined in our guidelines about how to cite second-story development to try to limit those impacts. There's also, was a focus on trying to strengthen the Good Neighbor policies and guidelines, and that debate occurred with respect to how the city would consider privacy impacts, and there was actually guidelines created, and I'll walk you through those. Then we focused in also on trying to develop tips for private views, because there was this concern about balancing private property rights with the government purpose of involving themselves into protecting private property rights with private views. The city also adopted floor area ratio requirements and guidelines based on the size of additions and size of lots. And this happens to be a property that it only has to comply with a guideline requirement, not an ordinance requirement, because of the size of the lot being over 15,000 square feet. And then what's unique about the tools that were used here is that they actually asked for story polls. That does not happen in all instances, and I think they took the extra effort to listen to the neighbors concerned and ask the applicant to place story polls at the site, which helped them when they did conduct a site visit, organize a site visit, to go out and look at, exactly examine what this addition might, in fact, impact neighbors. Again, there are specific design techniques that are outlined in our guidelines. Our board members are fairly experts now on this issue. I mean, there are several projects that they see on agendas every week dealing with this issue of second-story development, and they try to balance consistency with these guidelines as well as trying to improve a project design to the maximum extent feasible. There are two-story design concepts and techniques that are illustrated in our guidelines. I think I've included some excerpts of those guidelines that show you that there's quite a bit of direction given on how to cite a second story, and trying to keep the location stepped back in design, away from setbacks and small in comparison to the first floor. The Single Family Design Review Board did look at this project twice in mid-December of last year. The original concept was found acceptable, but they did request for story polls. I think there was some concern about exactly how that would impact neighboring properties and whether it would fit in with the neighborhood. So the applicant did, in fact, place story polls on the site and requested a second review, which occurred again in January of this year. The site visit did occur, and the primary review concern at the second hearing was trying to focus on improving privacy, and they did condition the project, again, with the elimination of that balcony on the west elevation, as well as asking for some of the glass window to be frosted for some of the windows outside of the second-story bathroom. This application was subsequently appealed by, again, several neighbors in February. The guidelines speak to Good Neighbor guidelines. Again, guidelines speak to distance between buildings, location of upper-story decks and balconies, upper-story windows, and the use of landscaping and trees. And I believe the, the board looked at a very careful analysis of different photographs that were presented, views from the actual property, looking towards the neighbors, and to help them, assist them in determining exactly what type of view of privacy issues might exist. There is a distinction between, again, Good Neighbor guidelines with respect to privacy with, as opposed to view impacts. As you know, when you look at the site, there are other second stories in the neighborhood, as well as beautiful vistas, views of the ocean, and that always is a conflict sometimes with the respect to trying to tame the right balance of privacy without blocking views. And I think the focus was not to add additional landscaping, I believe. Mr. Sweeney will speak on that issue, but they felt that there was sufficient landscaping, buffering the properties. Here you have some landscaping, again, to some neighbors that do have that buffering, that it does exist. Now, again, the distinction between Good Neighbor tips are that there are things that we request neighbors to consider, which is how the houses are, the neighbors' views are being impacted, and how you may accommodate their concerns by locating additions. I'm going to have the, the architect focus on how that location of the second story was designed with that in mind, that there was some concern about where the placement of the second story would be placed. Identifying the neighbor's lines of sight and current views, and making sure that you can at least preserve a majority of views, so you don't completely obliterate some, someone's views. Staff's position is that the Single Family Design Board adequately considered the project for compatibility, quality architecture, these privacy impacts, and we believe there was general consistency with the Good Neighbor policies. The project is also consistent with the zoning ordinance, and those zoning modifications to be proposed, and the FAR guidelines are being met. There's only a 69% FAR being proposed here, and the guidelines allow up to 85%. So we have included our Single Family Design Board NPO findings in, as part of the recommendation to, for consideration. So we'd like to hear a little bit about whether you believe those NPO findings can be made. Staff is recommending a project design approval be upheld, and that you deny this appeal, and staff is available for questions. Mr. Sweeney's also here, the Chair of the Single Family Design Board, if you have any additional questions.
Great. Any questions at this point from council? Mr. Francisco?
Mr. Limon, what's the maximum building height in this zone for residential dwelling?
Mr. Francisco, Madam Mayor, it's 30 feet. So they're at, at 23 feet, I believe. That was... That was what was shown on the plans.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
This, I think, is for Mr. Sweeney. I think you said in one of your hearings that there's no prescription preventing building a second floor in the guidelines that you've got, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. As we understand it, based on current zoning for the City of Santa Barbara, there is no residential zoning area that we know of that limits or prohibits second floors. So our review of the project was based on the fact that the applicant wanted a second floor.
But you do have influence over size, bulk, and scale and positioning of that second floor?
Yes, correct.
And you also, I think, said that views are not protected by any guidelines that we have?
As I understand it, from city attorney, having gone through this a few times before, we're not obligated to guarantee anyone's private view out of a window.
Right.
We're to look at the overall
General view.
General view corridor of the neighborhood and of the streetscape and of the fabric of how the particular project is settled in or nestled into the area.
And when you viewed the story polls, you didn't feel that the general view was grossly impacted?
No. You know, I've come to you before on other appeals, on the second floors, we've been down this ways. A lot of what we do, as I've suggested in the past, a lot of what we deal with is fairly subjective. It's architecture.
It is.
But in this case, I think it's, this case, I think the board felt a little bit more objective because it was fairly clear, being able to get onto the other properties and look at the site. You know, you could pinpoint, and I went back and reviewed the tape today, and I think we pinpointed exactly where you can see this and where you can't see it from the adjoining neighborhoods. And in our view, that was fairly limited, and given the fact that the properties surrounding this site are fairly generous, there's lots of opportunity to get grand views of the ocean and the mountains and the cities and so forth. So that was our
And your vote was unanimous?
Yes. You might note, there was two votes on the last meeting, and it really just centered around, there was a group that thought we ought to give the architect the opportunity to study further keeping the balcony over the garage.
Right.
And then there was a group that said, no, let's just get rid of the balcony. So we had to go through two votes to get to that, and the final vote, I believe, was take the balcony off.
Final question, I think, is for you. There's no deed restriction regarding building a second story with attached to this property?
As far as I know, no. There was some indication by the appellant's legal counsel that there might be, but I haven't heard anything since then.
Staff comment on that deed restriction?
Mr. Hotchkiss, we're not aware of any deed restriction in existence.
All right, thank you.
At the site visit yesterday, I asked about the new hedge ordinance, particularly looking at the side interior hedges and how tall they're allowed to go, and if we can, can you give me that? Can you remind me, please, what we've done?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I did include an extra slide for you in your PowerPoint presentation that basically outlines our new provision in our ordinance, which allows the normal maximum eight-foot height limit to be exceeded up to six feet high, higher to up to 14 feet. But there are some specific requirements in order to have an administrative exception to be granted. One is that the directing of buddy neighbors agree to that height increase, and as long as the height does not also interfere with visibility for safety purposes for the driveway. And finally, that the hedge is found to be compatible with the character of the neighborhood, so that there is a possibility
Was this issue ever brought up during Single Family Design Report? I don't know, Mr. Sweeney, or just as a way to try to deal with the neighbor privacy concern?
Yes, we did look at that. It was rather interesting. On the west property, on the day we took our first site visit, the hedge is quite high coming up the driveway from Mission Ridge, and then, right at the corner, the hedge was lower. So there was kind of like this chip out of that part of the hedge. And when we got to the west property owner and stood at the pool, you could look through that little opening, and of course, you could see this project. When we got to the upper property, it appeared that the hedges had been recently cut, so I don't know historically how high they were. So we had to kind of take into account, if those hedges go up to the eight or 12 feet based on the current ordinance, what would you see? And I believe many of us felt that if they did grow back up to about 12 feet on the upper properties side, that it would probably just come up to the top of the proposed ridge of the second floor.
Okay. Thank you.
Proposal.
Great, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, we'll bring it to the appellant. You have up to 30 minutes. You don't have to use all of it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Susan Basham. I'm an attorney with Price, Post, and Parma, and with me today is my colleague, Chris Price, who's our land use planner and our laptop operator today. We are here on behalf of the appellants, who are Roger and Stephanie Bacon, and Ronaldo and Lala Brudico. They own properties adjacent to the subject property at 1912 Mission Ridge Road, which is the Morrison property. And they came to us and asked us to help them put this appeal together, but they are their own best voices of their concerns. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time summarizing for you what they're going to say. I'm going to simply give them the opportunity to tell you, and then if there's time at the end, or if there's a need for rebuttal at the end, I will address some of the legal points. The basic concern here is that this is about context, and as you know, in every land use situation, every proposed development, whether it's a small remodel or a large new structure, is about the context in which it's being proposed. Here, we have a fully developed neighborhood with residences that have been in place and fully occupied for a long time. And as you could see on your site visit yesterday, from the surrounding properties, this is not insignificant. It may seem insignificant in terms of size. It's a modest amount of square footage, but for the people who are living near it and who, whose views and privacy are impacted by it, it's a significant change. Our client's concern isn't that the Single Family Design Board did a bad job. They did a thorough job. In fact, they went through all the proper steps. It's just that when they got to the end, they really didn't finish the job. They didn't get to the end of really thinking about what the privacy issues are here. And I just want to correct one point. I believe it was said that their vote was unanimous, but their notes say that there was a 5-1 vote, so one member of the Single Family Design Board was opposed to the motion in the end. In the end, there was a discussion about a balcony, and a removal of the balcony seemed to be the thing that satisfied several members of the design board. But as Mr. Brudico will tell you, that balcony was not significant to correcting the problem, which is really a privacy question for him and for his residents. I'm going to turn it over now to our clients, and I will look forward to addressing you later on. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, honorable council members, thank you for the opportunity to have this appeal with you. The famous educator and philosopher John Dewey observed, "We cannot seek or attain health, wealth, learning, justice, or kindness in general. Action is always specific, concrete, individualized, and unique." As you'll come to here, we've come here today for justice. We are here today to seek justice for the Brudicos, the Bacon's, and the Riviera neighbors, who have become fully engaged in resisting the actions of the Design Review Board in this pending matter. Within days of the story polls going up, and I'm glad they did, because within days of that, the entire neighborhood became activated to try and stop what is being perceived as a, quote, "matter of great urgency." I'm quoting from the lead line of the petition, which you've now seen. Following a recent meeting held in my living room, 58 individuals signed that petition, a copy which will be supplied to you if it hasn't already been, and which specifically asks the council to intervene favorably on behalf of this appeal. As I stand here before, not one single neighbor in the Riviera, not one, supports this project. That should tell you something right off the bat. Everyone we have spoken to has expressed their grave concern for, A, the Design Review Board process in this case, which council was a little bit generous. I do believe that the process was flawed, and I will explain why in a moment. And how to preserve neighborhood values, which was not even discussed. So the guidelines, which were offered up as something to be talked about, were not discussed at the Design Review Board meeting. It was rushed through, and the people who came to testify were given extraordinarily short shrift, and in one case, I think, were sincerely disrespected. Now, everyone we have spoken to has expressed this grave concern. What I will be presenting today is a case study in why the city council sits as the final arbiter of Design Review Board decisions. It is only by fulfilling its duty to us, the citizens of Santa Barbara, that the council can demonstrate its commitment to neighborhood values by taking a stand, A, for the good neighbor guidelines, and B, for the requirement that due process in all city actions is a hallmark of the privilege we claim by being fortunate enough to live in Santa Barbara. The privacy of the Brudicos, the Bacon's, and the McKenna-Wolfs has been badly compromised by the Design Review Board's decision, despite the requirement under the good neighbor guidelines, that privacy will be protected when construction occurs, if possible. Of equal concern is a series of DRB statements and actions that reveal a serious abuse of discretion that was involved in the review that occurred. In addition, and despite the admonition and preservation of views of existing homeowners being given serious consideration in approvals for building permits, the DRB took the position that it wasn't their privilege to even consider view plane issues. It's not a question of whether they're obligated to, as it was just asked of Mr. Sweeney. It's not a question whether they're obligated to do design review for view planes, but they are obligated, I think, to discuss it and to give it some consideration. Otherwise, due process fails. So, well, how can this be that this happens? I submit to you that the council must assert its responsibility to provide guidance to all city departments and boards to take the good neighbor guidelines seriously and give them a full and fair hearing on all pertinent matters. That is why this is an appeal for justice, not just an appeal for a different result. Let's start by looking at the proposed addition of a second story by a Colorado contractor and his architect spouse. This is slide one. Use this as it will help, I think. As you can see, the proposed development is set. This is our home right here, and that would be the Bacon's home right behind. The proposed development is set literally on the westernly boundary, so this is where the driveway is literally, and this large addition, which is here, is what's going to be looking over, looming over our property. Here is the way it directly impacts on the three specific residences, one of them owned by the Bacon's, as I said, which is one of the oldest homes in the Riviera, about approximately 100 years old, and one, ours, which is actually a home of historical significance. Please note that a third belonging to the McKenna-Wolfs here is also going to be impacted by a very large structure here that will look down into their yards. Please note how the pool and yard of the St. McKenna-Wolfe home loses its privacy. Here is another slide, slide two, which will show you with a little bit better perspective what's going on here. By the way, these hedges, as someone just alluded, were recently, were not, and they're already in excess of 12 feet. I guess I'm guilty of violating something. Just want you to know. I was told that I could grow them higher, and Mr. Morrison's estimate was that a 25-foot hedge would solve the problem. I doubt that you want to encourage that as the solution here. Growing the hedges higher was also one of the board members' suggestions, which I think is not what you want to encourage. So the proposed slide shows in the location of the proposed addition, creates a master bedroom window right here on the property, which looks directly here into our property. As you will see in a moment, it not only comes across the entire pool area, but it also takes into consideration that my master bathroom is right located in this area. Such a location creates a window that looks directly into the master bedroom and master bathroom of the Bacon home there. So when you get this up higher, it looks directly into their master bedroom and bath, right straight into it. This extreme westernly location also leaves the addition looking straight into the commode and bathtub of our home, which is, if you're trying to create a privacy benefit, why would you put something which looks directly into the master bedrooms and bathrooms of two adjacent homes, both of which are approximately 100 years old? Doesn't seem to me that that makes sense. The same location leaves the new addition literally looming over this pool area, which you'll see in a photograph in a moment. As some of you may know, my work as president of the World Business Academy and president of the Deepak Chopra Foundation leaves me in the position of offering our guest house to famous people who are appropriately concerned with their privacy. If the proposed addition goes through on the most westerly side of this lot, I will no longer be able to afford a private retreat to the many guests we would like to continue to attract to our fair city, as they will correctly see that it would be impossible for me to afford them any privacy should they come to visit us in our pool area and in our guest house. This is the view, slide three. Nope, slide three, there we go. This is the view of the master bedroom window on the addition, superimposed using the heights of the story polls for precision, that's looking directly over, as you can see, this entire pool area. Could you go to the next one, too? This is that same loss of privacy in the pool area, you can see, just shot from a different angle, so you can see. And notice the size of this thing looking over our casita. And again, those hedges, as you can plainly see, are quite a bit higher than eight feet right now, and were not recently cut, or they would have a flat top on them. The implication they were, I find personally somewhat offensive, candidly, because it would say that I'm trying to rig this discussion, which I am not. Okay, this next slide I want to show you. This shows, okay, this is their balcony, which they could have screened if they chose to, so they couldn't be looking this direction. These windows, the faux balcony was here that was removed, but the windows are still there. This is a picture sitting on my toilet. Okay? And the same picture occurs when you stand in my bathtub. It is a direct line of sight exactly into my bathroom and bathtub. Now, I don't think that that's taking privacy into consideration to say that you remove one faux balcony, leave all these windows, and leave this balcony completely without screening, which could be done and is often done in multiple-unit dwellings. Here's another view, slide six, of the Morrison's home. These are the windows up in the master bedroom, and we're looking at them now from the master bedroom and bath of the Bacon home. So there's the direct line of sight into the bathroom and bedroom of the Bacon's. You just saw the direct line of sight into my bathroom, and I'm asking, how was privacy dealt with in this case? And I would submit to you, it was not adequately dealt with at all. Any reasonable person would conclude that our privacy in the pool area and of the most private part of our residence, our master bath, has been severely compromised. In fact, one addition of an abuse of discretion in this case is the DRB specifically noted that privacy invasions, but only chosen an offhanded way to eliminate one faux balcony, leaving all the windows in the western portion of the balcony in place. That's not a serious solution to a very serious privacy problem. That is simply unacceptable. These are the very issues the DRB is required to address in a meaningful way, precisely so that good neighbors like us are not forced to take this issue on appeal to the council. We would prefer to have done it at the DRB. Why didn't the Design Review Board take these issues seriously and engage the Brudicos and the Morrison's in a conversation about how these multiple invasions of privacy could be dealt with? Why not discuss the elimination of windows on the west side of the addition? Why not ask the Morrison's to say why they can't remain a one-story project when they already have spectacular views, which they do have from their first story? Why not ask the Morrison's to put a permanent screen on the west side of their large new balcony so the Brudicos could continue to enjoy the privacy of their bathroom? And what's the real height of the structure? We still don't know if it's eight, nine, or seven feet. We've been given three different numbers. And by the way, it's not clear from this model either what the answer to that is. And why does that roof have to be as peaked as it is to block the Bacon's? These were not the issues that the board worked on, but that the board should have worked on. At last, they did not. Another example came from a meeting with the Morrison's on March 4th in my conference room. The Brudicos, Bacon's, and Morrison's met to discuss, at our request, potential solutions to the various issues, so that this appeal could be avoided and precious time saved for all, including the council. I specifically asked the Morrison's why they needed to have a window which faced directly into the Bacon's master bath and bedroom. And Mrs. Morrison, a professional architect, said, and I'm quoting her, "We don't want to look into the Bacon's window. The only reason we need a window there is to allow light into the room," close quote. I offered that the same thing could be achieved without a window by using inexpensive solar light tubes which would flood the room with light. I've used them in my home. The response I received was a very pregnant silence. No response. The point here is that none of these issues were discussed by the DRB, and we believe it was their duty to look at them thoroughly, particularly in light of the good neighbor guidelines. Like city staff and their formal conclusions, the DRB only really focused on the number of square feet being added, the floor area ratio, and how attractive the architects' drawings were, and not where those square feet were being placed, or how those particular attractive drawings affected the neighbors. Neither pretty drawings nor the FAR are remotely the key issues in this case, and yet is the basis, given by the staff, if you look at their recommendations and conclusions, to proceed, while assuming the deletion of a faux balcony could somehow restore the privacy that was very badly compromised. In a similar vein, the comment by one DRB member that the Brudicos could alleviate the problem by growing their hedges even higher is not a way to provide due process to a citizen with a legitimate request for privacy protection. Please note that when the DRB appropriately required story polls be put up, that the Riviera neighborhood began to realize the enormity of what was about to happen to our previously delightful neighborhood. That's why they are so agitated today and why they, our neighbors, have joined with us. This is a quality-of-life issue for all Riviera residents. The good neighbor guidelines must be protected, and the DRB must maintain an appropriate process with regard to them going forward, or this council will see a flood of appeals. process with regard to them going forward, or this Council will see a flood of appeals. I heard the reference to litigation earlier. I think there’s a lot of that coming as well. Let me read a couple of paragraphs of the petition which is headlined, quote, “A Matter of Great Urgency.” Quote, “The Good Neighbor Policies contain a very strong preference that new construction be undertaken so that it does not infringe on the reasonable privacy expectations of existing residents, and that view planes be protected whenever possible by minimizing interference with existing view planes. It is particularly important that these principles be upheld where, as in the unique Riviera area, privacy is required and views are such a major attraction for present and future homeowners. I can assure you that if the city council were to order the story poles be re-erected, we would have no problem seeing those 58 current signatories be matched or doubled very quickly by a great number of new signatories.” Two letters of, quote, “support” were theoretically offered for the project, and they are incorrectly in the record. One was signed by the Fulmers, who have retracted their approval and will speak here today in opposition. The other one, signed by the Bradford’s, was not in fact a support letter at all. John Bedford told me personally that the Council conceived for itself that his letter said that he thought the elevations were attractive, but nowhere in that letter offered support for or endorsement of this project, and yet they were introduced as letters of support. In fact, John Bedford, as a director of the Riviera Association, forwarded a letter to the president of the board, Shirley Bookspan, requesting that the Riviera Association Board place the matter of the Good Neighbor Guidelines regarding privacy and view planes immediately on the association’s next agenda. The letter quotes the same paragraph I just quoted you above, but went on to add the following, quote, “Preservation of our unique neighborhood characteristic therefore requires that no one be allowed to build in such a way as to create a dramatic decrease in privacy. There is no reason to build in such a way as to compromise the intimacy of one’s bedroom or bathroom simply to improve the economic value of a home which has previously lived in harmony with its neighbors. While people may have a right to request a second story be added to their home, there has to be some way for that to occur without severely disrupting existing owners when someone chooses to disregard the Good Neighbor Guidelines, creating a diminution of privacy expectations or compromising view plans. Mr. Bedford shared with me that he’d, quote, “Like the association to be on record encouraging the city to be vigilant in this area.” Close quote. We are grateful for Mr. Bedford’s intervention and his willingness to see that we all take a good, long look at what we should try to avoid. In conclusion, the neighborhood is very concerned that there is no place in the decision-making process where residents could take their complaints and have them dealt with in a judicial, fair, and open manner. That is what we expected, but that is not what we got. That’s why this proposed addition should either be rejected by the Council outright or at the very least sent back for further review to analyze the privacy and view plane issues and ask that they generally be dealt with and ameliorated with where possible in keeping with the Good Neighbor Guidelines. And by introducing my neighbor, Roger Bacon, who as a layman went to the trouble of really reading those detailed guidelines and preparing an excellent summation with page and paragraph references to specific guidelines to assist the DRB with its deliberations, given the false claims he had heard had been made about compliance. He wrote a sophisticated seven-page letter, provided at the DRB, who summarily tossed it on the table and refused to respond to even one word in that letter or one citation. How would you feel if you were a citizen and your city did that to you? To Roger’s credit, this quiet man kept calm as all his hard work was totally dismissed. Frankly, his courage and dignity at that meeting inspired us all to become more involved because we could see that not only were individual residences being affected, the neighborhood required vigorous advocacy in order for it to remain the desirable place it is today. That’s why we are here on appeal, seeking justice. We believe this Council can and we believe will provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude the appellant’s?
No.
Okay, Roger, come on up. You’re at 11 minutes 16 seconds left.
Okay, thanks. I shouldn’t need that. I first just want to thank you all for actually coming out to view the properties. We really appreciate you taking the time to evaluate personally how the project would affect the homes around it, especially as the photos and the aerial views don’t and can’t adequately convey the experience of how close in proximity the second-story addition would be to privacy-sensitive areas at the neighboring properties. And I’d like to echo Ronaldo in his presentation of all the concerns of the neighborhood and add some of our perspectives on the issues, specifically the questions of compatibility, impacts on privacy and views, and the failure in this project and the process, the design review process, to actually maximize the attempts to minimize those impacts, as is described in the city’s Good Neighbor Guidelines. We moved from Laguna Beach about 21 years ago specifically to get away from the overdevelopment and the rush that was happening there to fill the Laguna Hills with ever-larger attempts to capture views and the ensuing destruction of the pristine and peaceful quality of that entire area. We lived on the mesa. I need that extra 30 seconds back, though. No, I don’t. We lived on the mesa, and then we lived in Mission Canyon, and after the haste to see the fire. We spent several years in search of a property that could replace the privacy and the views that we had enjoyed there. And that was really challenging, but we eventually were blessed and lucky enough to be able to purchase the home at Las Tunas, right there, as an investment in our family’s life and well-being, just like everyone else, and of course, as a financial investment as well. And to quote from a letter to us that came during this process of looking at what are our options, what’s really possible, what can be done in front and not, et cetera, we received a letter, and I’ll quote from it, from the previous owner of the property in front of us and a longtime Riviera resident who said, “We all know how important aesthetically, financially, and spiritually it is to maintain the views and privacy we purchased and how fortunate we are to have such beauty.” And in Santa Barbara, obviously, we all have an appreciation for that. The problem came in the process, I believe. So, when this project was proposed, we were, of course, concerned, but in researching the city ordinances and reading the published Good Neighbor Guidelines, we assumed we had some degree of protection and recourse against development that would completely ignore our privacy as well as the financial value of the views as they were when we purchased that home. And you can imagine my surprise, and it was really utter dismay at the first Design Board meeting to find that all of the concerns that I presented and those presented by seven other people, including neighbors, community members who are familiar with the unique quality and characteristic of the real estate in the Riviera, and even a former member of the Design Board, all of those concerns were either trivialized or dismissed or disregarded. So, even more upsetting to us than the board’s decision was the dismay we all felt at how our valid concerns were not given the time and consideration that they obviously deserved. These aren’t small issues. In the second Design Board meeting, Chris Price representing us and Lala Brudico presented these concerns again, and they were again, with the exception of removing a faux balcony, they were dismissed without due consideration and instead handed off to you. In their recommendation to deny our appeal, staff states that, quote, “The SFDB successfully worked with the applicant to adequately minimize the possible impacts to privacy from the proposed second-floor addition, and that staff believes that the project does not pose significant impacts to private views or privacy of the neighbors.” End quote. And that primarily, as Jaime mentioned, based on the FAR, it is compatible with the neighborhood. But my question is, how can it possibly be said to be compatible, given its immediate and intrusive impact on the privacy of the established community of homes around it, homes which have been part of the development of this historic Santa Barbara neighborhood for decades, as Ronaldo mentioned, ours is almost 100 years old, and several of which are historic import to the city? So, completely losing privacy via the direct line of sight from the proposed addition and the windows there to our master bedroom and bathroom, as you saw, and as well as to the living room, the pool area, and the yard, that is a, quote, “significant impact.” End quote. I don’t see how it could possibly be not considered that. And it certainly does not bear out the claim that this project review process was successful at, quote, “adequately minimizing those impacts.” Mr. Morrison himself told me he would hate to have to have the curtains closed in his master bedroom at night, and yet the design review process as it stands is suggesting approval for a project that is granting the project developers an upgrade in views for their master bedroom at the expense of privacy to several neighboring properties. It is also approving the same trade with regard to views, upgrading views for the proposed project at the expense of views at our property. And I understand that view issues is not considered or held as of equal importance to the privacy issues, but it’s really still important to note in areas such as the Riviera and other areas in Santa Barbara like that, the extra sensitive and direct correlation of our property values to the views that we purchased when we, you know, made the investment. So, in conclusion, I really believe that the insufficient exploration of all the concerns over allowing this project to be built as planned, or really any project for that matter, that attempts to increase their own views at the expense of the privacy of established homes in a neighborhood, that is not in the best interest of the city or its residents. You know, I had no idea that this was going to be such an enormous issue as it rolled forward. At first, of course, it was just our oh-no kind of response, but it has grown in the neighborhood, and now, of course, I can see that this is so important for Santa Barbara, the city, right now. I mean, the question really, I think, comes to what’s going to be protected? Maximum approval possible for new development or the properties and the values that are already existing? I know it has to be a balance, that it’s a difficult thing for you to strike, but I don’t feel that we had proper consideration to make that balance. Thank you. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is that it for the appellant? Okay, there’s four minutes and six seconds left. Any questions? Okay, it’s on to the applicant.
Madam Mayor, Council members, I’m here to, my name’s Jeff Shelton, I’m the architect, and I’m also with Craig and Jane Morrison, the owners. We’re here today, of course, to request that you deny the appeal. Both Craig and Jane will be speaking after I’ve explained this project. I’ll walk you through it. You know, we’re going to walk you through how we got through this process, which I’ve done for 20 years in this town, and we seem to have a democratic, decent way of doing things, and the board, and your review board and your planning staff supports this project, and they carefully looked at it, and that’s what I’m going to show you today. On the screen, we’re going to be showing you photos and some diagrams and some plans. We also handed out some items to you. One was a copy of the text that’s on that screen. In case you can’t read it, please stop me or take a look at that. Also hand you a little booklet that shows, it’s a copy of the plans that the review board approved. So, you have two things from us. We also have this model down in front, which we had at the site meeting, and that’s at a quarter, one-quarter inch equals a foot contour model. Before I go on to my organized presentation, just want to say something about what I saw on the screen there, and a few of the words which sort of said our plans were deceptive, they weren’t quite clear what they said. The plans we show on this screen and that you have seen are the plans that the review board has approved. We haven’t changed anything. We might have added, increased the font size on a couple dimensions on the elevations because they didn’t read here when we tested. That’s it. I’ll show you where that is. And they also are making our project sound like we’re putting a Walmart and ruining the Riviera. And I must say, those mockups they did on the screen, I’m not sure who did them, but they were quite deceptive. You need, deceptive, that’s not exactly, that’s not what it looks like, and I know the slopes were wrong on those buildings that they were showing, the rakes of the roof. So, let’s go to the next slide. I’ve worked on many projects on the Riviera. I’m just going to go through a few. I have not ruined the Riviera yet. In fact, these are three nearby projects, award-winning projects that enhance the charm, enhance the neighborhood, and increase the land values, which was always something we keep hearing. These are, I believe, and a lot of people believe, very nice additions to the Riviera. But most importantly, the houses fit in with the surrounding architecture of Riviera and what I’ve understood Riviera to be. Let’s go to this next one. The Morrison’s came to me early on with a very modest presentation, which, a program which isn’t always the case for me, and that’s quite enjoyable. They only wanted to add 500 or so square feet to this house where they’re going to come and retire. That really helped things out for me. These are the two properties, this one here and this one here, who are appealing our They both are two-story projects, by the way. This is a two-story project here. These are one and a half over here. There was a notice meeting, a design meeting for us to show up at, and only two people showed up at that meeting. It was these, a person from this, this place, and this place showed up to that meeting. I’d like to note that these two houses are also bigger than ours, and the biggest houses of all these are these two houses. Our house is under the average size of all these houses in question here. So, I think this is a modest addition that my clients are looking for. Let’s go to the next. Here’s the aerial photo that you saw, another version of theirs that they showed. But this shows an appellant’s house here, and here’s our house, right here. This is, this is a, what we’d call a kind of a direct parallel view from the front of the house, the Bacon house, coming right over our house. We’re going to show you, we’re adding our addition right here, off to the side. Here we go, right here. Also, we’d like, can you go back to the other one, please? Also, we have, I’d like to note that we’re 50 feet from our property line here. If you look at the Good Neighbor Guidelines, it’s really talking about when we’re getting up close to the property lines, like this guest house or cabana or whatever it is, is quite close to the property line, and this is quite close to the property line. So, we are actually really floating our addition right, right in the right spot, not too close, not too far, and out of this view corridor. Okay, yeah, site plan here. Yeah, thank you. Once again, here’s where we’re adding on our 500-plus square feet. Here’s the ridge line of the first floor that you’re going to see later on. This area is already three feet below the level here. That’s why we’re putting it here, to make it all lower. And I’d also like to make a point that our elevations on our site plan are all relative to each other. We’re at a 400, we’re using a 400 elevation benchmark, and all the elevations are in relation to that, as architects do all the time. So, we can, when we do our plans, we can, we cannot use negative numbers. If we started with zero, we’d have to have negative numbers. I’m saying this because I’ve heard some complaints about we’re using 400 as our base point elevation. Go to our existing floor. This is the existing floor plan of their house. We’re going to build right on top of these walls here, use the same foundation. Go to the next one. This is the existing roof line. This is where our story poles were put. Next. This is the proposed floor plan. Once again, once again, we have our addition right here. We’re going over the same footprint. This addition starts at a three feet lower than the rest of the house, and there is no room, there is also, we’ve heard someone wants us to put the garage. Can you go back a couple? One more. Go back one more, please. Right here, to put the garage here. We can’t do it. Transportation has looked at it. We can’t have a backup. There’s no room for backup and turnaround, and as you were up there yesterday, it starts sloping off very quickly right there. Let’s go on to the proposed roof plan. Here’s where, on this building, this is where the story poles are. That’s what the red is indicating. Here you can see a cross-section of this house right here, what we’re proposing using the existing foundations, right here. Next. This is the master bedroom addition, which there are some complaints about. there are some complaints about. This is the, this is, this is the ridge line that is 23 inches higher than the existing roof, right here. And this says 23 feet, 3 inches. This is exactly what the, where the story poles were when the review board came out to see them, and that is the height of our building. There was some talk yesterday at the site about how much higher is this than the existing roof. We were using eight feet, it's actually 10 feet, but there has been no change. That's exactly what it was on the plans that the review board saw. Let's see. Please note that, go back to the other one, please, that this is being pushed past that view corridor that we showed on the site plan, which is right here. We will get back to this, these windows and this elevation a little later on. Thanks. Next. So, side elevations, you can see, this is the height limit where we technically could build to, where my, my marker's there, and right here. So there's the 30-foot line. Now, of course, immediately when the Morrisons came in, we weren't going to even think about doing that. The, so on this east elevation, here's this existing rubber tree that was cut down by somebody else that used to go up to here. If it was there, you wouldn't see much of this elevation, much of this building at all. So if this gets to be grown back out, that, that'll help their situation also. There's also a hedge we're going to be talking about, that is this right here, I think it's a 12-foot hedge, 10-foot hedge. We'll get to that in a second. Down this elevation, here's the balcony in question, the west elevation, and we're going to talk about that balcony a little later on, and I'm going to see if we can, see if you'll let us put that back, because I think it's going to help the view, the view corridor for the people on the west. Let's go to the next. This is showing height limits if you wanted to build, move the structure over and build over the main part of the house, where you could, could technically build, and I know it's not that simple with review boards, but that, that gets you, gets us, that's more like the size of the bacon house behind us. Next one.
Was that the 30-foot limit?
That was the 30-foot limit, yeah. So, story poles, we can go through some story poles. You can see right here, there, from the street, looking up, there's the story poles right there, there's the bacon house, here's the other house, the hedge on the other, other, other property line. As we go up the driveway, right there, story poles, keep going. Story poles from standing up where that hot tub was, standing down in front of their house, then, then, keep it there for a second, there's the ridge line right there, and then there's the 23, 23-inch higher mark right there. Keep going. This is from the backside of our property line, the east side. Okay, now, this is, this is one of the appellant's house here, and this is standing on the roof at the, where you'd be standing in the master bedroom at eye level. So we took that picture. We were all standing back down on, behind there yesterday, and there's that slide. So we can see that slide from the master bedroom where that balcony window is. And then, this tree was there, and it's been cut, cut down since then, but that blocks the, some window over there. So, that's curious, it's not in a new, new slide. I think Craig has a new slide from up there. So, that tree has been cut down. This hedge I'm going to get into, of, this could really help our situation. Quite simply, we can, no one would see anything. Leave it there for a second. Okay, go to the next one. Okay, this is looking back up at this other residence here. At one point, this gentleman showed up concerned, and we, we offered, we'd plant a tree, an avocado tree there, if that's what is required. They would take care of that. Now, this house does loom over that, as you saw last night, yesterday. Next, please. So this is the west elevation. Here, here is that balcony. Inch, leave it here for a second. You know, entries are always difficult with a garage, and so, all architects have this problem. How do you make it not look like you're walking into the garage and coming to the front of the house? So, this balcony, I want to put this balcony back here, and no one really walks out on balconies. I don't think everyone's walked on a balcony I've done. There really is architectural features. So, they don't want to stand up here and look at the neighbors. So this is actually just adding architectural interest. It'll be shadows here, breaks up this two-story space. So we're asking you to reconsider this balcony, at least send it back to review board so they can reconsider it with what I'm going to show you right now. Now, the review board has not seen this, but we would close this balcony off and not make it unwalkable, and just so plants could cover that, which would actually raise the eye level, raise the view more towards the sunset. We'll, we'll make it so you cannot walk through that, walk, walk over that thing, and make it, we'll even put a floor on it if you don't want. But it's more of an architectural feature that helps the architecture. When we start designing things by committee, buildings by committee, the architecture was going to fall apart at some point, so I'm going to have to fight for that one. It became the sacrificial lamb at that meeting, and the, and the one person who voted against our project wanted the balcony, by the way. They liked the project and the balcony. Go to the next one. The cross-section, so this would show, if you planted a 14-foot hedge tree on our property, that would take care of all the situations that they're talking about on the west side of our property line. And our clients are willing to sign any document and go through the administrative approval to do that, and then we're done. We've, we're already 50 feet from the property line. We can't get any farther. It's, this is the best place for this, this room, and this, and this, this whole master bedroom addition. You could plant a different kind of hedge, you could plant a tree. They could also regrow that tree that was cut down on their property. Can you go to the next slide, please? This is a view from, we were all here yesterday at this pool, from the other appellant, and there, right in there is the master bedroom, our, our addition right in there. Next one, please. So here's where we were yesterday, looking over, and those are the story poles. These, these aren't computer-generated lines. These are story poles at exact dimensions that were certified here. So this is our, this is the main house, and this is the addition. And right here is going to come into question some windows. Leave, leave it here for a second. Like the review board said, this is not a blocked view. Look at this, the city, the islands, the ocean, the mesa. This, this is, this is a very generous addition this neighbor, my client is coming in with. We're not going there. This, here's this rubber tree, which would be this big if it wasn't cut down. Also, the hedge was cut down. This was this big when, when I first came up to the Morrisons, and it's been cut down since then, and that would block the windows. Those windows, that would block the windows. From the second floor, as you saw yesterday, nothing was blocked. Let's go to the next one. This is from, this is the house that we were standing at, right there. That photo was taken from right here. Next, next photo, please. Now, if, now, this is absurd, so we didn't bring this in, but when the Morrisons came and we look at the site, you know, 30-foot height limit is there. This would be if we added a second, raised the ceilings in the living room, and then added an eight-foot ceiling bedroom, that would be here, and the windows would be sitting right here, looking back at us. If you look at the model, you know, I don't want to bring in a building like that to the review board in this situation. It would be, have to be downtown somewhere where it's not blocking views. So we didn't do it, but that's, that's an example with, in a model form of, of going with something over on the other side of the building in their view corridor, and we just didn't want to go that direction. Let's see. Go to the next one. This is from below. If, if we did the same thing, the other neighbors, I'm sure, below would also think they're being loom, you know, it's looming over their properties, too. So, those are, those were just, I wanted to see what it would look like at 30 feet, 27, that's 27 and a half feet, actually, and that, there it is. So, if you go, go to the Good Neighbor Guidelines, we did this. I mean, this, this is right out of the book. We could have made this drawing with our project. We're not doing that. We're not staying in the center. We're moving it over, and we're down low. If we went back to, to that, the story pole elevation, this is it. We're going right to the Good Neighbor Guidelines. In fact, you can see the harbor there. It's, it's almost just like the same spot. Next. So back, so this is the, this is the approved north elevation, that it came out of the approved conditions, that the windows have translucent glass in this condition. We know the neighbors don't like these windows. They've told us, they think this is a picture window, picture windows, they've been called. So, this next, let me see, this next slide, let's go to the next slide, yes. Now, I want to point out that the review committee, the single-family design review committee has not seen this, so I hesitate showing you these, but this is the next thing we would be taking into them. This is less, so we're proposing less glass area, 27.5 to 25 square feet of glass, instead of, as a compromise here. We're, we're proposing shrinking this window that's in the closet, it used to be this big. Instead of having this so-called picture window, we're putting up at five foot six, two clear story windows, and these will be translucent glass. Go to, can you go to the next one? Now, I'm sorry, can you go back one? Now, on this one, we want to keep clear glass, because we stand there, right where it's going to be, and this is what we see, right out there. So, it's not, we're not seeing anybody. We have a rubber tree, it's an evergreen tree, it's always going to be like that, a bougainvillea behind it. Next, please. This is from, this would be standing, now with these clear story windows, this would be standing, you know, on a stool, looking out of, now, there'd be translucent glass here. Our, our window would be right here. If they just raise this hedge, we're all done, and that doesn't block their view. Can you go to the next? And this is what I mean. Here's the hedge. If they just water it, fertilize it, get it back to where it was, and even higher, there will be no privacy views, privacy problems at all, and they'll still have the same view right over, over our ridge here. So, that's the simplest solution, and, and we've, we're going through a lot of this, and we've thought about all this. We've gone through this, we've suggested it, and we're still here, we've still got appealed, but a couple of hedges, we're out of here. I mean, this is, this project fits in and is a better part of the neighborhood, and, and the neighborhood is better off for our project. So to conclude, and to hand it off to my clients, we're not ruining the neighborhood, we're not invading on people's privacy, we're not blocking views, we're adding to the charm of the neighborhood, as other projects we've done, we're adding to the value of the neighborhood, and we are being good neighbors. My clients are coming here from Colorado, they've got family here. They are being very good neighbors, and we're coming in a well-thought, thought-out modest proposal for, for your consideration. Thank you.
You're at 8 minutes, 46 seconds left.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Jane Morrison, and I am the co-owner with my husband Craig of the property in question located at 1912 Mission Ridge Road. For the past 30 years, we have visited family in Santa Barbara, and have grown to love this city. So when it came time to retire, there was no question as to where we wanted to hang our final hat. After four years of searching, we found this property with spectacular views, but a house virtually unchanged since it was built in 1963, that needed major work. We hired Jeff Shelton to create a house of superior design and materials that would be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. We hoped making an investment in a major remodel of an outdated, unimproved 60s ranch, and replacing it with a house designed by an award-winning architect would raise the property values and please the neighbors. We developed a well-thought-out design that implemented the design guidelines wherever possible. We proposed a modest addition, located above the recessed garage slab to minimize the height, and sited it over the west side of the house. This location would take advantage of the existing vegetative screening and would have a minimizing impact on the views. Individually, we visited with all the abutting neighbors to discuss the project, and left a letter with our contact information for any comments, good or bad. We were never contacted by any neighbor requesting a meeting to discuss their concerns. Naively, we assumed that since we had not been contacted, that the project was supported by a majority of the neighborhood. It was quite a shock when we discovered that a negative campaign against the project had been organized, using inaccurate representations. No, we are not developers. Final, circulating petitions and hostile letters, and even hosting a "confirm our values" party. I'm not sure what that means, but to us, it did not sound friendly, welcoming, or supportive of our project. We were also notified by the first attorney not to communicate directly with his clients or request a meeting to discuss their concerns. Sadly, if one-tenth of this time had been spent meeting with us instead of excluding us, misinformation and unfounded assumptions could have been explained and/or corrected, possibly eliminating the need to meet with you today. At the one and only meeting arranged by a third party last week, six days before this hearing, and attended by only two neighbors, we discovered that in the past nine weeks, meetings had been occurring, just not with us. We were informed that a proposal to move the addition to the east side of our house had met favorable approval. Is it a viable solution to substitute a modest addition that is already partially screened and located at the edge of the view corridor behind us for a much larger mass that would be five feet higher, have no vegetative screening, and sit it in the center of this view, view corridor? Is this not a direct violation to the preservation of the values that are at the heart of the Good Neighbor Design Guidelines and that the opposition is so vehemently trying to protect? How can a campaign be waged on a platform of preserving views and privacy while the solution offered ignores these values entirely? Has anyone considered the repercussions on future development if this alternative is built? Do we really want to set this kind of precedent? Finally, we sincerely believe that specific privacy issues raised by the neighbors could be resolved by simply allowing the existing vegetation to grow. It is troubling that our, excuse me, that our before and after photographs show these elements have recently been severely pruned, the timing coinciding with the site visit made by the Single Family Design Review Board. Why would you remove the vegetative screening that is providing you your privacy? This conundrum leaves us baffled and confused. What we are not confused about is our desire to become residents of Santa Barbara. As we have loved this town for many years, we feel privileged to have the opportunity to call this beautiful city home, and cannot wait to remodel a house we can all be proud of. Thank you for your time.
Okay, you're at 3 minutes and 17 seconds.
Okay, I won't be able to do it all, but my name is Craig Morrison. This picture you've already seen, could I have the pointer, please? I just wanted to point out, how do you do this? Go back one. Over here is the only area we're talking about where the windows are. This pole is the bottom of the roof, and we're going from here to here with windows in this area. That hedge only has to grow a few feet in order to cover that whole space. Go to the next slide. Right here's before and after the hedge was cut. You can see, after the hedge was cut, there's more of this window that you can see, whereas here, before the hedge was cut, it's much higher. If we were to grow this hedge this high, which is where it was before, we wouldn't see the neighbors on the first, the first level. And we're putting in the frosted glass so that we won't be able to see their upper-story window either. Next slide. This is the tree that I'm talking about, and it's been mentioned, okay? Right here is the bathroom window. It's 150 feet away from our addition, okay? So is this pool deck over here. You can only see a certain portion of the people on the pool deck because of this structure here. here and this chimney. Go to the next slide. This is after the tree's cut back. There's an awning here, and now you can see these two windows. It is possible to grow this tree back, hide this window, take those kind of awnings, put them right in front of here, and block our view completely. Also, this hedge, which is Euphoria, or Eugenia, will grow two feet per year, and it is only, like, 13, 12 feet. At 14 feet, we stood there with a measure, and we measured from here to here. If that grows to 14 feet, it will cover that window as well as all these, and that hedge will grow to 14 feet, okay? It grows two feet per year. This is how all of the guidelines pan out, okay? We've made a lot of compromises, and I'm probably going to run out of time, but the bulk size and scale is 500 square feet, the visual distance between neighbors is 125 The deck is facing toward the front of the property. We've removed the occupied aspect of the side balcony. We've staggered windows diagonally. We have, you can go to the next one, yeah. We're using opaque glass in all of the, in all the windows facing the neighbors behind us. We're keeping existing vegetation, and using it to provide privacy. We're using landscaping to screen living areas. We reduced the height of the structure. We located the higher portion of the addition out of the neighbors' primary view corridor. All these are compromises that we've made as a result of the Good Neighbor Guidelines, and those are the sections that it's associated with. With these compromises, we feel we've addressed and solved all the privacy issues, and minimized the view impacts. We are trying to be good neighbors, but how many compromises do we need to make? Thank you.
Okay, you don't have any time left. Thank you very much. Okay, any questions from council? Ms. Murillo?
Thank you. Can someone explain what it means to move the windows diagonally? Or...
Mr. Sheldon, if you want to come up and answer that? Whomever.
Hi, Ms. Murillo.
At the mic you can, yes.
The Good Neighbor Guidelines talk about windows not being directly in front of each other, so if they're facing each other from one property to the other, that's a direct line of sight. And the guidelines specifically says to try to stagger the windows and put them off diagonally. So in other words, if I have a window here, and it's off diagonally over here, that's okay, that's recommended. But if I have a window here, and I put another one right in front of me, that is a direct line of sight. So the guidelines are saying stagger and put the windows diagonally. Is that clear?
Yeah, thank you. And so, Mr. Limon, the Single Family Design Board was okay with the window placement, obviously?
Well, I think, Councilwoman Murillo, there will be a need to have them look at the proposed changes to the windows that are now being suggested. So there were concerns about the window materials. So I think there's a proposal now to make them smaller, and also keep them opaque. So that could be part of the final approval decision when it returns back, if you so choose to, you know, grant the, or deny the appeal.
Madam Mayor, is this the time to ask about the balcony?
Ask any questions you want. We have public comment, and we have a 6 o'clock item, so...
Okay, okay. So Mr. Sheldon is making a pitch to add back the balcony, but I've seen them sort of, they're not, people are out there, it's a, it's like a design feature, like a, so that would have to go back to the SFB?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What is the setback of the rear, what's the space to the rear property line on this project? I couldn't read it on any of your documents. You can do that while perhaps others are asking questions.
Mr. Hotchkiss, why don't you ask your question while they're looking that?
Well, it's also Mr. Sheldon, so he's otherwise occupied right now.
26 feet.
And then, Madam Mayor, so what is, is it 25 feet is the, is that the required setback, or what is the rear setback?
No, that would be 15 feet, Councilwoman White.
The required setback is 15 feet.
That's correct, side and rear.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Mr. Sheldon, the depth of the balcony you would like to restore is, what, two, three feet?
Well, I had it typically three feet, but it could be two feet, it could be something you could put plants on and reach out and water them.
All right, so that's kind of what you're proposing, is not a place where you walk, but a place where you put plants and water?
Yeah, seldom do people go out on the balconies we do. They're mainly just $10,000 towards architecture, but they...
Kind of bolt-on balcony, isn't it?
It's a bolt-on balcony, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I understand, thank you.
Okay, let's go to public comment. We'll start with Janine Daniel, to be followed by Tiffany Dore. You have two minutes, so you're at the podium.
Good afternoon, I'm Janine Daniel. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I live on Mira Vista Avenue, which is one street below Mission Ridge. I grew up in Santa Barbara, and I've lived in an old planca at Edward's Home for the last 15 years. When we bought that house, we bought it for the view specifically. I am surprised that this project has even got to this point, because the view that I bought, I would not like to have it include a higher roof in any case. And listening to this hearing, Mr. Sheldon, who is quite popular in our community, and other people have commented about, "Let's just grow the hedge." I also happen to sit on the board of the Santa Barbara Firefighters Alliance. The issue with vegetation, trees with certain canopies, et cetera, is a great concern on the Riviera. And I think that is an issue that we need to evaluate. We can't just keep planting trees and growing hedges. We need to find other alternatives. And I believe that this project needs to go back, and it needs to be reevaluated. With regard to the balcony, Mr. Sheldon has built a house at the end of our street from Mr. and Mrs. Kovalik. They have those bolted-on balconies. They're good friends of mine, and I frequently go out onto their balcony to enjoy the view. So I'm requesting, as a neighbor, not on the street, but as part of this Riviera community, that you think about all of those issues before you let this project go further. Thank you.
Tiffany Dore will be followed by Patrick McKenna.
Hi, thank you. I live on the Riviera, and I really appreciate the integrity of the Riviera, and I'm here just to speak on behalf of everyone that's wearing a red ribbon. The home that's proposed right now, it's beautiful, no one will question Mr. Sheldon's work. But the home that is under consideration was built in 1961. The homes proposing them were built in the 20s, and they were historical homes, built by world-renowned architects. And we need to preserve the privacy of those homes. The Good Neighbor policy should be looked at. If you're seeing a lot of red ribbons out there, it means that there's a lot of people that are opposed to the project, and it needs to be looked at further. As far as growing up the hedges, we live in a high-fire zone. I don't want to encourage hedges to be grown any higher in my neighborhood. It's not an easy neighborhood to get out of. A long time ago, when the Riviera was being developed, there were CCNRs to protect views. Where have those CCNRs gone? Why have they now been ignored? It's a question that I think we should all look at and take into consideration. And when I went to the homes and saw the story poles, which were only up for a couple of days, I really wish they had remained up a little bit longer for more people to see. I actually saw a lot of the white buildings of the city disappear from those poles. I think the project needs to be looked at further, and have a conscious consideration for all of its neighbors around them.
Patrick McKenna will be followed by Ken Saxon.
Mayor, council members, my name is Patrick McKenna, and my wife Diana Wolf and I have owned for 30 years the property that adjoins the northwest section of the Morrison property. After the story poles were erected, it became obvious that the drawings did not show the shocking size and bulk of the project in the neighborhood setting. It became apparent that in addition to having views of our pool area, there would also be a direct line of sight to our backyard, where we barbecue and entertain. When the issue of the Brudico's bathroom and pool privacy was raised at the board hearing, it was suggested that they grow taller trees or hedges. However, when their pool was built, we agreed to hire than legal fences, and in return, the pool area plantings were to be kept to below the poolhouse roof level. When I spoke at the design board hearing, I raised three points. One about our pool area, two about historical hedge heights that I felt were being misrepresented, and the fact that a very similar addition 200 feet to the west of this one was unable to be completed. I was then asked, after my presentation, if I lived in a two-story house. I do, but nothing in my comments had anything to do with the view from my home. Later in that meeting, it was said that people who live in two-story houses are like dogs in a manger, and also, if you buy a two-story house on a hillside, you should expect people to block your view. I do not agree with these statements, and in my mind, they indicate a definite bias that comes into play with this project. Therefore, I would ask that this appeal be upheld, and that the project be referred, if necessary, back to a group that would look at all the aspects of the project with fresh eyes. Thank you.
Ken Saxon will be followed by Robert Fulmer.
Madam Mayor, council members, it's an honor to address the City Council for the first time. My family and I are thrilled to be relatively new residents of the Riviera. I'm sure that the last thing you all want to do is focus on neighbor disputes. As a Santa Barbara Middle School Board member, I've seen up close how challenging that is for all of you. I know you're aware of how hard the school worked to seek win-win solutions with its neighbors, and I was proud to be in attendance at the school ribbon-cutting to hear Councilwoman Murillo note with pleasure the presence of more than one formerly aggrieved neighbor, and comment that she wished everyone would work as hard to find a middle ground. In the case of the Morrison project, they bought a house that already has wonderful views, and they're proposing improvements that substantially diminish their neighbors. In particular, our next-door neighbors, the Bacon family, are having a big chunk of their privacy and views wiped out, in a house that has stood for close to a century. What's missing here is empathy. I appreciate how the city's Good Neighbor Guidelines encourage empathy by asking us all how we would feel if a neighbor proposed something similar, and to incorporate those concerns into our design. I'm sure that if a neighbor proposed to impact the Morrison's home in such a dramatic way, they would be angry, and justifiably so. I would hope that you would send this decision back to the Design Review Board. There must be a way to redesign this project in a way that accommodates neighbors who've lived there for many years. In Santa Barbara, we have to do better than this, and on the iconic Riviera, where many homes will change hands in the coming years, we must do better than this. Thank you for your attention.
Robert Fulmer will be followed by Trevor Martinson, Pat Fulmer, and then the final speaker will be Randy Mudge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Bob Fulmer. I've lived on the Riviera for 15 years, and typically, I'm the most enthusiastically positive person about Santa Barbara in a way that only I think someone who either grew up behind the Iron Curtain or in North Alabama could be. It's a wonderful community, we're happy to be a part of it. And I'm disappointed today in sort of both the tenor and tone of the disagreements that have come before you. It's an unproductive way, in my opinion, for you to spend your time. I had been concerned, first of all, I'm probably the one person here who wrote a letter initially in support of the project. I was pleased when the Morrison's came to show us the drawings and the sketch of what they wanted to do. It represented typical good work that Jeff Sheldon does, but it did not show the house in context with the environment. When I saw the story boards, I had a very different impression. And after hearing about the engagement of attorneys, and disagreements, and deception, et cetera, I think on March 4th, I wrote a letter suggesting, no, it wasn't March 4th, it was, well, it was February 18th, to all the parties involved, and said, "Look, this is really silly. Why don't all of you get together, have a negotiated, a third-party representative, facilitate a meeting, and see if you can't work this out?" It would save money. In fact, I think I'm going to do something George Bernard Shaw used to do, who said, "I quote myself, because it makes things so much more interesting." I'm going to read from this letter. "I suggest that you consider having some informal third-party negotiation to see if there's a better way to mediate the disagreement. Finding an acceptable middle ground would be better in the long run for everyone. If the existing conflict continues on its current trajectory, the result would be a slower, more costly project, with considerable residual ill will all around." Now, my belief is you have the opportunity...
Wind up, please.
...to come to us a resolution that moves us ahead. How about that?
Your time's up.
Oh, wow.
Two minutes, go by fast.
I have so much more good stuff to say, but thank you for here.
We got the point. Thank you very much, Mr. Fulmer. Trevor Martinson?
I think Shaw also said, "I always take a journal with me when I sit on the train. Always good to have something interesting to read."
Madam Mayor, I would request, before I start, that staff put up the applicant's roof plan and section, please. Thank you. I'm Trevor Martinson, architect, and as some of you know, I also deal in forensic issues in court. Staff and the Single Family Design Board Chair, Fred Sweeney, and members apparently did not observe the incorrect slope contour elevation shown by the applicant's architect. And how do you review a project with inaccurate information? Are we missing something here? Yes, we're missing 200 feet. How can anybody adjacent to this project find out where they are in the way of visual sightlines, their elevations? We were 200 feet off here, and I'm told that all architects do this. No, we all deal with existing contour elevations. This project did not. My attachment in my letter to you, as you may recall yesterday, clearly shows there are options to review by the Single Family Design Board and the applicant. And this site can accommodate several different redesigns that will meet the applicant's needs and not require a second story to achieve it. And what I want to point out here is this particular issue right here, showing this existing wall, this is an incorrect section. This wall is by the pool area, and I, as an architect, looked at this when there was water. This grade does not exist. The grade is right here and goes down at about a 30-degree angle, and water comes through this footing and runs down the hill to the adjacent person. Now, I think that this is important to understand, that we need to have some accurate drawings, and make sure that we have our words in order here, as far as this goes. Thank you very much.
Pat Fulmer? We have your letter, did you want to... Yep. If you want to say anything to... Well, you should have done that before, so, that's okay, but we have your letter. Would you like to say anything? And then Randy Mudge.
One of the beautiful properties that Jeff Sheldon built is on San Carlos.
If you can bring the mic down, so we can...
Oh, sorry. It's on San Carlos. When we were visiting neighbors to talk about this issue, we walked into the house right behind it, and looked out their window. Their window shows a wall of stucco, white stucco. Their view was totally and completely lost. And that's happened to a few people in the neighborhood, because I think a lot of times they don't want to fight the issue, they're shy to do this, or whatever, they don't want to speak up. But a lot of people have really suffered financially as a result of this. A project that increases the value of one property simultaneously can decrease the value of others, and that is happening in our neighborhood. So I wish that there were a better policy that really has some teeth to it in terms of good neighbors, because I think that we can all pay it forward by helping each other with view and privacy issues. And the essence of community is thinking beyond short-term benefits. We all profit by respecting the other's perspective. I wish there was more of a review on this issue. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mudge?
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Randy Mudge. I'm a landscape architect and was originally hired by the Bacon's to advise them on the merits of the project in front of them. First, I'd like to give a shout-out to Jaime Lamone, one of the hardest-working guys in the city. My real issue here is with the process itself, and where it went awry that I noticed from the very beginning was at the first Design Review Board meeting when Mr. Sweeney took Roger Bacon's eight- or nine-page letter and summarized it as, "This is a private view issue." And from the get-go, the process was tainted. Now, really, the bottom line here is what you've all heard is privacy, privacy, privacy. And the Single Family Design Guidelines all speak to that. Clearly, that has not been addressed by the board. As far as view issues, that has been given—not given the import that is shown in the Single Family Design Guidelines. If you read the guidelines, views are mentioned many, many times. In fact, in the introduction, in the second paragraph, views are mentioned as of primary importance. I've got four pages here of notes that specifically mention views. So I hope that in future deliberations, you will take that into account, and also that the Single Family Design Board gets a refresher course on these guidelines. I was there at the beginning when these were written. I reviewed them at least five times. My name is on the inside cover of the book. So I think I know what I'm talking about. And also, the fact that they are guidelines and are very subjective has come back to haunt us. I was the only member of the ABR that voted that they should be rules and not guidelines, and this is specifically why, because it is too much of a subjective process.
Thank you. And then Tom Jennings will be the final speaker.
Can we show pictures?
Of course.
Oh.
There's a—if staff could probably help—yeah, Gwen, if you could help, there's an overhead that you can show the picture.
Put that one first.
There you go. Okay, go ahead.
This is a view on my deck. I live down on Mission Ridge, right across from the driveway. And then the other picture is after Jeff added his addition—or his—this is the house he rags about. What I—I've been here 30 years now in this house, and the Riviera is going downhill to me. The more we're adding to it—let's put another house up. Let's put another 500 square feet over here. The Riviera is not like it was when I moved there. And I'd like to see a lot of this stopped, basically. I live in 1,700 square feet, and we're quite happy. There's two of us, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The appellant, you have four minutes and six seconds. You don't need it, but—I mean, you can have it. You don't have to use it, but you're welcome to it if you need it.
We'd like to use it. Chris Price is going to start off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Just two things, very quick. I believe it was Councilman Hotchkiss raised the question about a deed restriction that was brought up, questioned to Mr. Sweeney. I raised that issue because the property to the south of the Morrisons—we found the existence of a deed restriction which prohibits two-story construction. We looked at the title history, the deed history. That does not exist. That prohibition does not exist on the Morrison property, so we can just move on with that and put that one to bed. But more importantly, I just wanted to—the accuracy of our photographs, our mock-ups here, our Photoshop exercise was brought into question. I just wanted to walk through that real quickly. We hired the services of Warner Group Architects to do this for us. These were taken from his plans and photographs I took of the story poles. The red line you see here is actually the story pole line, and I'll show you the unretouched photo in a minute. That's another mock-up that you didn't see yet. That's the view from the Morrisons' front step. That's the view, again, from a photograph. The red line is the story pole line from their living room. That is the unretouched photo you saw earlier. You'll see the story poles there. Again, from their master bedroom, you'll see the story poles there. And then here, you have—see the roof pitch? I don't have my pointer, but just behind the chimney, you can see the existing roof pitch. Again, there is the other photo. So that's all I want to do. I'm speaking rapidly, so Miss Basham has some time. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to summarize quickly. It's interesting to us that Mr. Sheldon has come today with some suggestions of his own for how this plan could actually be improved. While we don't necessarily agree that those are the improvements that are required, it does suggest that this is a project that really wasn't finished when it was at the Single Family Design Board, and it really belongs back there for more design work. We have said to you today, and we think the facts show, that there was a certain abuse of discretion in this process. We have raised issues of neighborhood compatibility. Mr. Sheldon has said to you, "Well, we could have built it 30 feet," and he's shown a lot of lines as to what the worst case would have been, but I would submit to you that that 30-feet permissibility standard has nothing to do with whatever would have been approved by you or anyone else, because you really need to be looking at it as a compatibility standard, and 30 feet by anybody's imagination would not be compatible. The privacy issue, Mr. Sheldon has told you, it could be solved if our clients would just plant their vegetation higher, grow it taller. Solve the problem that his client is creating for the neighbors. That's not the answer. The answer is, if you're going to create the problem, show how you're going to solve it yourself. Our third point about views, we see an illustration that shows you a view corridor as if nobody has peripheral vision or ever turns their head. Now, you know, the Bacon's right now have a panoramic view, and with all due respect to the corridor that was drawn, in fact, the proposed addition is within the view that the Bacon's have right now. Finally, the meeting that was held, and Ms. Morrison, you know, spoke at length about what didn't happen in this process. Our clients would submit to you that in that meeting, not a single concession was offered despite efforts to work at resolving these issues before coming here on appeal. So, you know, it takes two to tango. There was no tango. And finally, just to reiterate the point, after all is said and done, this really does belong back to the Single Family Design Board for all the reasons we've raised here today, as well as those Mr. Sheldon has raised with you, and we would ask that you consider that result. Thank you.
Okay. It's to the council and for those who are here about a golf discussion. That will happen, but it won't happen at 6:00. It'll probably take a little longer, because we do have a closed session after this. So I would say at a minimum—well, we'll see how long this one goes, but we'll probably need, what, 20 minutes for the closed session? So you're welcome to stay, but just know that upfront. Okay, so, Ms. Murillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate what's been said today and the design work and the neighbors' concerns. I'm persuaded to deny the appeal, even though the Bacon's would be better off with nothing built there, but there's a right on the part of the Morrisons to add something, and they are playing by the rules. They went through the process, and I have second-story additions in my neighborhood, and if they're allowed and they follow the process, that's just how it goes. And my views are blocked, and so I hate to disappoint people out there, but I believe I'm following the rules that are laid out here. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I was in college, I lived on the Riviera, and fortunately, I lived low enough that I absolutely did not block anybody's view. There was no opportunity for that. But one of the issues on the Riviera is with the steepness of the slope and the closeness of some of the lots, even though the lots often are large, there are always going to be issues about privacy and views. I want to step back a little bit and say, if people are concerned about how the Single Family Design Board operates and whether your concerns are being taken seriously, I, as the council liaison to that board, take those issues very seriously, and I will do whatever I can to make sure that those sort of issues are addressed, because I want to make sure that when people come before the Single Family Design Board, they feel like all of their concerns are being heard. That's really, really important, and we need to go out of our way to make sure that we listen, because—and I know that this is something that happens with design boards. They hear hundreds of these, and they get used to things, and sometimes they go through things a little too quickly for people who have not been through this process before. So I can promise you, I will work with the Single Family Design Board members to make sure that they take these issues very seriously. Mr. Mudge said that views are a primary concern, and I agree with him on that. The reason that those have not been turned from guidelines into rules is because that would create some major zoning issues for us. Public views are preserved. We've had plenty of appeals on that as well. Private views are not sacrosanct, and that's—I really understand for people on the Riviera, that's a big issue, and it's unfortunate, but we cannot proscribe people from building things that may inconvenience their neighbors. We can do everything we can to make sure that there isn't an invasion of privacy, and we can do everything we can to make sure that most of the view is preserved. But for instance, with this project, if you ignore the large thing that was dropped on top of it there, the main ridge line is coming up two feet. The part of the house that is going to two stories, that's being built on the lowest part of the existing structure. There really isn't any way to add a second story that could be any smaller and any less obtrusive than the one that's being proposed here. And it's true that on that side, it is less of a problem for the neighbors, I believe, at least as far as I could tell from our visit yesterday, than it would be if it were over on the other side. The other issue that I see here is some of these houses have been here for almost a century. People are used to what they're used to, and they have come over time to make accommodations with their neighbors, and I hope eventually we'll come to some accommodations here. But for instance, when we were out looking at the property at 1900 Mission Ridge Road, and we were back there in the pool, I could look up at—I believe it's 1929 East Las Tunas Road—and see an entire balcony across the entire south-facing part of the house and windows across the entire south-facing part of the house. Now, that's an invasion of privacy. Anyone up there can look down directly into the entire pool area of 1900 Mission Ridge Road.
I'm sorry, it's to the council. It's—I know, it's to the council.
Sir, you know, I'm not trying to contradict you. All I'm saying is I was standing in the pool area at 1900, and I could clearly see the windows of the house above me. Now, is that a privacy issue? I guess people have become accommodated to that. I believe that this is much less of an intrusive presence in the neighborhood than some of the things that already exist there. I believe that this is about as discreet an addition as could possibly be made to this house. The other thing I would like to say about this is, when we walked around the neighborhood, we saw a lot of incredibly beautiful homes. So the house there at 1900, that's a George Washington Smith house. The Bacon's house, that's a 1924 house by an architect whose name I've forgotten, but it's a beautiful house. You've got a lot of wonderful architecture up there, and here you have a tract home, and I'm not down on tract homes, but I think the Sheldon replacement of this home will add to the value of that neighborhood. It will be a much more distinctive and much more interesting house than what's there. I hope—I believe—that all of the people in this room, all of the Riviera residents in this room care deeply about their neighborhood, obviously, or you wouldn't be here today. I hope that you can work something out. And what I would like to propose, I think that some of the things that Mr. Sheldon here proposed today, for instance, opaque windows on that north-facing elevator—I mean, yes, north-facing elevation up the hill, that should go a long way to solving whatever privacy issues the Bacon's feel that they have. I would suggest that we deny the appeal, but we send this back to the Single Family Design Board with the direction to work in particular on that issue, replacing those clear windows with opaque windows, making them smaller, as Mr. Sheldon suggested today. I think that will address one of the major privacy concerns in this project. So that is the direction that I would suggest.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, I appreciate the intelligence and passion of this conversation today. I don't appreciate, of course, any of the vituperativeness that comes out and the challenge of integrity. There was a bit of that in this conversation, but most of it really was informed and focused and obviously very protective of your quality of life. As one who has participated as a planning commissioner for many years, I've gotten to watch our amazing architects of this community attempt to fit projects into an existing landscape, and that was obviously the challenge here today. And I had the privilege of visiting a couple of your homes yesterday and seeing around me the work that each person is doing on their homes, her—is-or-her home, to make these really beautiful additions to this area. And so I can see that any invasion in here is disruptive. It's going to be a mess to have a project right in the midst. And this is an interior lot. This is a flag lot, and it comes in right in the middle of a beautiful little enclave. I do think that Mr. Sheldon's use of the topography in terms of stepping this second floor addition down is—and also not being aggressive in terms of the height of each floor—it works for me in this situation. The setbacks—I thought that—I asked one question about that. This property, again, is constrained in some ways because of its—the driveway coming up, and the setback is 25 feet from the rear, and it could be—and 15 feet is the minimum. Imagine this structure, you know, 10 feet closer to the northerly neighbor. And it's 50 feet from the westerly neighbor, whose structure is built virtually—it looks like it's near the property line, or it's very close. So this last property, the last one in, has the struggle of dealing with a little bit of the leftovers, and I think that this was as artfully done as could be managed in this situation. So I do hope that when this project—and I also support Mr. Francisco's idea of sending this back, as you know, Mr.—obviously, we can't be dealing—trying to be a Design Review Board here, which I look at the basic concepts and then refer back to our design teams and design review teams to go over them. So the windows—the thought that came to my mind on the—Mr. Sheldon was arguing for the faux balcony, as it's called. Is there something that can go there that would be more reassuring, i.e. a planter box or some such structure that's just—I can imagine now there's going to be a sense of mistrust or, you know, people hesitancy to allow much more, but is there something, some relief that could happen there that would accomplish what Mr. Sheldon was speaking to? So—and then there will be the landscape that will come in after that and fill in the necessary pieces, and I appreciate the fire hazard is definitely an issue, so it needs to be strategically placed and not too much. But I know that the Design Review Process has made this a better project, and I appreciate everybody's passionate and, as I say, informed participation.
Hart?
Well, I agree with my colleagues, and, you know, if we're looking through the staff report, if folks have had a chance to look at the specific findings that we're charged with making, there are seven neighborhood preservation with making, there are seven neighborhood preservation findings and two Hillside Design District findings, and the staff language here, you know, for the, for the neighborhood preservation findings, consistency in appearance, compatibility, quality architecture and materials, trees, health, safety and welfare, good neighbor guidelines, public views, and then the Hillside Design District findings, natural topography protection and building scale. I think from the testimony from the appellants and the public that we've heard today, the really, the only issue that is even in dispute is compliance with the Good Neighbor Guidelines, and I think ultimately that is a subjective call. You know, I think that there were people who, to do this on a daily basis on the Single Family Design Board, who weighed all of these issues and came to the conclusion that this was an appropriate project in this location, and all the things that my colleagues, I think, have said was, was my judgment as well, standing on the site, you know, there's, there's a lot of distance between these homes. There's a much more distance than all of the appeals, I think, that we've had since I've been on the council, probably by a factor of, I mean, I think honestly it might be 10 times as far away as some of the homes that we have seen before on appeal. So I just, relatively speaking, from, from this sit, this, this seat here, I can agree with the staff's recommendation to make these findings.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, as we walked around those properties and looked at the neighborhood properties and looked at the subject property, I was thinking, the problems we're talking about are relatively minor compared to a lot of things we've seen, and I, I have to say that looking at the property with the pool just to the west, and beautiful George Washington Smith architecture, then it seems to me like Mr. Shelton has tried to replicate that feel and that look on the outside of the subject property, and I thought, I think he did it relatively well. In terms of view corridors and setbacks, I think the setbacks are generous. I think that the view corridor was preserved to the level that was practical to do so. I don't know what else you could do without completely diminishing the, the remodel of the new house, and I think that house is on a property that really deserves and begs to be redeveloped. I mean, it's been there like somebody says, '61 or whatever it was, so it's, I think it's, it's an appropriate thing. I don't like the idea of using planted solutions to try to solve problems. I think that the woman that spoke to the, you know, fire hazards and views and, you know, our fire trucks being able to get around the Riviera is really important and important to consider, so I, I don't think that's a solution. It seems to me that Mr. Shelton was almost suggesting we go back to the SFB just to perhaps do some of these solutions. It seemed rather cooperative, and it seemed like a reach out to the neighbors. So I agree with my colleagues and Mr. Francisco's suggestion that we do deny the appeal, but we do recommend that this go back to the, the Single Family Design Review Board for another bite at the apple.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna try to elicit a little sympathy. I don't think I'm gonna win here, but all of my neighbors are facing me, as, and, as well as several colleagues. When I took this job, Artie Bloom said, "Well, enjoy it while you can, because half your friends are not gonna be your friends anymore," and I'm afraid that's gonna be the case here. I do support Dale's motion. I would like to say that I did give weight to preservation of a traditional, classic old home and the reduction admitted of some of their views. I think honestly that you weakened your argument by saying the review intrusion was substantial. I don't find it so. I, it's there, it's, it, it, there is some, but not a lot, and I think that you, the beauty and situation of your house, I'm talking to the Bacon's now, remains. I know you're disappointed, but I'm impressed that I think the project has been reduced to try to accommodate neighbor concerns. I think it would be good if we could go back and maybe do a little bit more, Jeff. Yes, insofar as Mr. Brudico was concerned, I guess it was in your home that you had the get-together and ask people to sign? With your vigor and persuasiveness, I can't imagine anybody getting out of your living room without agreeing, even if they didn't want to later. And that's not to detract from you, but it's to, you could think of it as an offhand compliment, backhanded compliment, but in any case, I, I think that the appeal should be denied. And there, you're right, the neighbors who said, "We're, we're gonna see these things again on the Riviera," I completely agree. There's another house for sale about three doors down to the west. I'm sure that's gonna be a scrape, and there'll be a fight over that one, so this won't be the last time that Mission Ridge comes before us. Thank you all. I'm sure many of you are disappointed, but I appreciate your patience and the, your coaching arguments.
I also want to thank everyone who showed up and spoke. It's always, I can imagine the anxiety when there's neighbor, a neighbor who have a disagreement, and it gets to this point, that's not easy, so I hope moving forward that there can be some reconciliation going on. What I'm hearing from my colleagues is a desire to deny the appeal but give direction for the final design review about the windows and about using opaque windows and making them smaller, which I think is doable, we've done that before. I, so I, and I hope that that comes to some kind of suitable arrangement with everyone involved. I actually have a little different take, and I've been going honestly back and forth. I really thought it'd be almost an easier decision for me to make. I'm a, I really appreciate the architects' work all over the city. I think it's actually a beautifully designed house. I'm looking also at the findings, and I'm gonna read what it says about the Good Neighbor Guidelines. "The project generally complies with the Good Neighbor Guidelines regarding privacy, landscaping, noise and lighting. The choice and placement of windows facing the neighbors, the landscaping provided, elimination of balcony and selection of lighting are consistent with the direction of the Good Neighbor Guidelines." And I agree with my colleagues when we say they're guidelines and they're subjective, and I guess that's why I'm feeling a little different than my colleagues on this one. I guess my subjective view of the saying is that it could be better, and I think, and to make that finding is very difficult for me to do so. So while I'll be in the minority of this, and I really hope that the motion that goes through will solve the issues that I think have been presented by a lot of the neighbors, I'm not gonna support the motion, but with all due hope that it will get to a good spot in the end. So with that, we do need someone, Mr. Francisco, since you brought up the issue.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Excuse me for interrupting. If I might, before you get a motion, Mr. Vincent and I were conferring about the procedural box you're in and how you should frame the motion. I'd like to ask Mr. Vincent to give you some advice on that.
Mr. Vincent.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you have two different options. I mean, the, this project will go back to the Single Family Design Board no matter what. You have two options with respect to this particular appeal. You can deny the appeal, and in that case, the project would go back for final approval, for an action consistent with the, the, your denial of the approval, and any specific conditions that you choose to add to that action. The other option is that the council could send the project back to the Single Family Design Board without action on this appeal. You know, as you would not deny the appeal, you wouldn't uphold the appeal, your action would be to send the, the project back to Single Family Design Board for another action on the, the project design approval. That, however, would-
Be appealable, wouldn't it?
Would be, be appealable with the current standard that you have today. The final approval is, would have a different standard of review. In that case, the, the review standard, if it comes back to the city council, is whether or not the final approval from the Single Family Design Board was consistent with the approval at project design approval. So there, those are the distinctions.
Okay, thank you. So someone like to take a stab at the motion? Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, may I ask, Mr. Vincent, so I would like to give the Morrisons the most assurances as possible. Which motion would, would do that, to deny the appeal officially, right?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, to deny the appeal would change the standard of approval. It would, it would change the, the action, that would put this action, it would be, it would approve the Single Family Design Board action, and it would just continue on to the process for consistency with what you've seen today, what, and with any conditions you might add.
I think the answer is yes to your question. Right? Okay.
The difficulty was really in the manner in which you, you asked the question. I'm trying to, to be even-handed in my response. The, the simplest answer is, the, the best action for the Morrisons is for you to deny the appeal.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and as I understand it, and certainly correct me if I'm mistaken, Mr. Vincent, that with the denial of the appeal, the council can ask the SFB to study the windows on the north-
Madam Mayor-
Portion of the, of the house, to maximize neighborhood compatibility or, or some such thing.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember White, I would actually recommend if, if council members wish to have specific directions taken by the SFB, in other words, reduce the size of the window, only use opaque glass or something like that, that would be a good direction, that would be something for the SFB can, can really work with it, to just send it back and have them study it or look at it more, those kinds of things. The SFB will do that anyway as it moves towards final approval, and without specific direction from the council in having kind of a more objective standard for the SFB, SFB to act upon, there's no real understanding as to, they can study it, but it won't change, it may not necessarily change anything.
Do you want to make a motion?
I would be glad to make a motion, Madam Mayor, to, that, that the council deny the appeal and that the, I'm open to ideas about what specific-
I see Mr. Cullen wanting to say something.
Just that, as Mr. Vincent said, a condition requiring some reasonably bounded level of review by the SFB would be helpful, and given that you're going to deny the appeal and given that the appellants are well represented by council, I'd like to, a chance to amplify on the findings a little bit, so we'd want it to come back for confirmation of the findings by council.
At another meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
So the findings would come back to council on consent, for example? We would vote on that, and then it would go back to SFB for final design?
Precisely.
Right, okay. So, did you make a motion, or are you-
I, I made a motion for denial of the, of the appeal.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Francisco.
I would like to amend that motion to add some conditions to look at primarily the privacy issues on the, on the north side facing the Bacon's and the west side facing 1900. And a recommendation, a strong recommendation, that the Single Family Design Board look at opaque glass for the north elevation, and look at some modification to this balcony idea, anything that we can do to enhance the privacy of the neighbors at 1900 Mission Ridge.
Do you want to add?
I just am looking at our attorney and seeing whether that gets through their, their sense of that being specific.
That fair play.
Let me, let me take the bullet on that. Yeah, I think that's fine. I would want to clarify the difference between opaque and translucent.
Translucent, absolutely. Translucent.
Well, and there are multiple windows. There are two that are proposed to be translucent and one that's proposed to be clear.
Translucent lets light through, but not-
Someone want to ask the architect a question to get the answer?
Mr. Shelton, can you tell us what translucent means, please?
I'm trying to deal with-
Yeah, translucent's the glass we're looking for. It's, it's lights, light comes through, but you can't see through it. Opaque, no light comes through.
Fine, okay. Translucent is what I meant, of course.
All right.
That's why we're not-
Since that got through legal muster, I'm glad to add that to my motion, Madam-
And I agree, and call the question.
Okay, do we have, we have some lights on. Mr. Hart, did you want to add anything? Okay, any other questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, so that's six one. Okay, thank you very much. We have a closed session. I'll ask to read it in just a minute. If you're here for golf, we'll probably, we will start around 6:45. We apologize for the delay.
Do we need to have the closed session?
I, do we need to have, do we need to have, we're gonna have the closed session? Yeah, if you could read the closed session.
Conference with labor negotiator.
Okay, we hope not to take that long, but it'll probably be about 20 minutes, half an hour. Thank you. Here. Okay, and I, is, I'm gonna call for public comment for an item not on the agenda, and I see, is it Ms. Mason? Did you want to speak on the golf course, or did you want to speak on something else, on the golf course? Okay. So anyone here, I just want to make sure all the speaker slips are on the golf course, or is it something, something separate?
Something separate.
Okay, if you can come on up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Karen Van Hoek, Las Pecitas Tennis Group. "As you know, the Las Pecitas tennis facility was leased from the city to Ealing's Park for a dollar a year, ostensibly as a budget reduction strategy eliminating 11,000 per year annual maintenance costs. However, between 2012 and 2015, Parks and Recreation budget actually increased by over $3 million, a 24% increase. It certainly doesn't appear that the Las Pecitas transfer had much effect on the budget. It is looking very much like the city gave Las Pecitas to Ealing's Park Foundation as a gift, so Ealing's can improve their revenues. Ealing's has a private academy running the facility with whom they split the profits, and give their donors something at which to throw their money. After Ealing's attempt to build a 14,000-square-foot wedding venue was nixed by neighbors, Ealing's is now raising funds for a fitness studio and cafe proposed for this small, six-court tennis site, sitting mostly empty at this time. Who else besides Ealing Park gets lucrative property at a lease of a dollar a year from the city? Is there any other organization or individual with such a deal? Public servants such as yourselves should be protecting the public interests, including the parks that so many enjoy. Return Las Pecitas to the public. It will barely make a dent in the budget, and I'm sure Ealing's donors can find more needy causes." Thank you very much.
Thank you, and David Niles, too. You wanted to speak a public comment?
Mine is, excuse me, thank you for the meeting this evening and allowing us to have public comment. Mine is concerning the golf course, but I'll go ahead and speak anyways. Whichever way you decide, this evening, the only significant consequence of privatizing golf course maintenance would be the disruption to the lives of the park maintenance.
Are you talking about the golf course, or are you talking about, so if you're talking about the golf course, you have to wait till we have the public hearing on the golf course? So this is public comment on items not on the agenda?
I didn't raise my hand. You called my name.
No, I, I, I was asking if you're here for public comment, because you clicked on public comment, not the item on the agenda. That's why-
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
That's why I called your name. Okay, so I will call you when we get to that point. All right, so I'll close the general public comment, and we'll move on to item number nine.
Golf Course Financial Sustainability Proposal.
Okay, Ms. Rapp.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, thank you very much. I know it's already been a long day for you, so we will try to move through our information at a pretty quick pace. I do first want to introduce the staff and a couple of guests that we have with us, so that you know who's here and you have the resource available. I'm Nancy Rapp, the Parks and Recreation Director. With me presenting is Mark Sewell, our Business Analyst for the Parks and Recreation Department. Simone Herrera is our Golf Superintendent. And then also Gene Krikorian, who was the consultant, you've seen him before at your December meeting. He worked with us to develop the evaluation report on the golf course, pro forma advisors. And then also a gentleman who we have worked with on related to municipal golf issues came up for the meeting tonight. Craig Kessler is the Director of Governmental Affairs with the Southern California Golf Association. So I just wanted you to know that we had Gene available and Craig, if you had questions related in general to golf, that you thought they could be helpful. So just a quick recap, I don't think we have to go through a lot, but we're here because we're seeing a gradual decline in play at the golf course, which is a national trend, and then also an over-expansion of golf courses. And it's important to note that even with that, we are still one of the busiest local golf courses. It is a golf enterprise operation, meaning that it does not receive any general fund monies, and our expenses are outpacing our revenues, which is our general challenge. Our fee levels are restricted by a very competitive, competitive golf market, and the golf reserves have been below budget since 2008 and potentially could be depleted within one to two years. And this- And this slide does just show you the change in golf over the years from 1982 to 2014. And you can see just there are different things that came into play, but overall decline, the play is declining. I will say that we have been relatively stable since 2010. So we kind of go up a little bit, go down a little bit. And just to recap, our discussions on the golf course to date, we have brought this issue forward in our annual budget presentations to both the Golf Advisory Committee, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and yourself. We have given monthly updates to the G A C Golf Advisory Committee. And then you can see we've been at the Finance Committee several times, the Park and Recreation Commission, and this is our second visit to the City Council. At the December 9th meeting, you directed staff to return to the Finance Committee with information on options to refinance the golf course debt, opportunities to improve golf course marketing, and any opportunities for further savings in golf maintenance in the current model. So we met with the Finance Committee on January 27th and in addition to what you requested us to take to them, we gave updated financial projections, which we will also provide again tonight. And the decision from the Finance Committee was a two-one vote, a recommendation that council support the debt refinancing, enhanced marketing, and continue to monitor the performance and revisit contract maintenance as needed. So, we are here tonight and I'm going to have Mr. Sewell do the numbers presentation and then I'll come back at the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Rapp. Mark Sewell, Business Analyst, Parks and Recreation. Pleasure to present to you again tonight. So I thought I'd take the opportunity to show you a chart that we've previously seen many times and then update it with where we think the current fiscal year is likely to end for golf rounds. And you can see to Nancy's point earlier that it's going to be roughly around that 60,000 round mark, but is unfortunately a decline versus fiscal year 14. Okay? And to then just take up some of the key stats from that projected performance, where we are after eight months of the year, so this is information from July 1 up to the end of February 2015, is we are seeing that we are 4.4% down in our greens fees, 7.8% down in our total revenue, and our rounds are actually 6.1% down. And then what we're expecting to happen between now and the end of the fiscal year is that we're going to improve the position somewhat. We feel that greens fees may actually just nip ahead of FY14. Total revenue is still going to be depressed and we think that total rounds are going to end the year at 1.7% down. And the key reason why we have an element of confidence with regards to that in FY15 is that it was the last two months of FY14 where we really saw the impact of the drought and the measures we took at the golf course in reducing the irrigation to meet the requirements that were of us to sort of demonstrate. And we felt that that put a lot of golfers off at that time, who could have played many other courses who weren't going through the same things at that time. And so by looking at what the play was in the previous year and adding those extra rounds that we hope we'll get back this year, we think that that's an achievable aim. Couple of things will help us to do that. One is we've had a price increase which went through in January 1 this year, which doesn't seem to be impacting on play volumes too too much. And the other thing importantly with regards to the drought is that the recycled water plant is due to be online in this summer. And even before that, we are now using water from the Valverde well to irrigate on the recycled areas of the golf course. And it's worth just reminding that on a typical year, about 90% of the irrigation at the golf course is through the recycled water line. So, you know, if we can continue to keep the golf course looking green, and it looks very green at the moment, we will not be using potable water to make that happen this fiscal year. Okay? And so then here is the kind of position in terms of the reserve balance, and this is, you can think about this as like the bank balance, how much money do I have? And so we're projecting at the end of this year, we're changing nothing at all, just the current operation, the current debt, everything is the same. We are expecting that we will end FY15 with $312,000 in our bank account. Now, that number is larger than what you would have seen previously and that's due to a restatement finance made with regards to our opening reserves. And it doesn't really change the decision before us and the issues that we face. It just gives us a little bit more in our starting balance. And you can see that on the three scenarios that we've been using consistently through these presentations of a 3% decline in rounds, a flat round or a 1% growth in round, which we think is fair given the last few years, it's not a pretty picture in terms of where the money is going to actually then go negative and we're going to have to look elsewhere for some funding. Opportunities to enhance the golf course marketing was one of the things we took from our council meeting in December, and we have been doing a number of things there. Just a little background, in the past and currently to some extent, the golf course has used print, radio, TV, internet, email blast, and more recently, a bit more social media to try and engage with golfers. The decisions made about where to invest marketing funds has been taken by staff in consultation with the concessionaires at the golf course and often with the G A C who are avid golfers and tend to know what's out there. In more recent years, I'm told, we have been more dynamic in regards to our marketing activities. The other part of the challenge we accepted in the council meeting was our level of funding in comparison to industry standards. Industry standard is about 3% of green fee revenue. Typically, if you average up the marketing spend over the last 10 years, municipal golf course has been spending about 1%. So we've taken steps to rectify that. We're proposing as part of our budget to increase our marketing funding up to $50,000 per year. We're actually proposing as well to this fiscal year, try and get a start on that to see if we can get some things in place that will seed and then hopefully give us some upside a little bit this year and then more so into fiscal year 16. Our assumptions in our budget, without going too deep into the budget, is that we expect and hope that the revenue will rebound to at least the same investment in marketing in the first year. And just a guidance on that, if that was to come back purely in rounds, it would be a 3% increase in rounds off of the projected FY15 number. So what are we doing? Well, I've been working with, on a strategic marketing plan with a golf marketing firm, and they've been providing some best, some guidance on best practice and some costing options in terms of how we want to promote the golf course. We will then obviously have the funding, hopefully, to actually make that happen. And then the other key stream that we've been working on is a new point-of-sale and T-sheet system for the golf course, which will basically enhance our interface with the customer, make it easier for them to book our rounds, make it easier for us to analyze and understand consumer behavior, and then target promotions accordingly. Opportunities for additional savings in the current maintenance model, they're somewhat limited, and I thought I'd put the pie chart up for you to just remind you of our cost structure. So this is the amended budget for fiscal year 15 that we're currently in. More than half of those costs are salary and benefits, and then you have allocated costs of 7%. Supplies will be things like chemicals and fertilizers and the like. Then you have your water at 12%, capital at 4, and then debt cost at 13. Staff's view really is that there isn't a great deal of fat to go at in that pie in terms of trimming down those maintenance costs.
Madam Mayor, thank you, Mr. Sewell. So this, the 54% salaries, that's not just the maintenance workers that we're focused on. It's also, doesn't part of your salary and Ms. Rapp's come out of golf? I mean, can you help me with that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Marie, I can answer that. Yes, the 54% here does reflect the costs associated with the golf fund. So within that, directly costed to the golf fund are all the maintenance staff, and then there are allocations of administrative staff which are against the golf fund. So in these numbers and in that 54%, you have half of my position, you have 20% of the Parks and Recreation Director, and you have 5% of the Marketing Coordinator for Parks and Recreation.
Can we see a breakdown of that sometime?
Yes, those numbers are, the maintenance itself, direct maintenance costs are about $950,000 in FY15. Okay?
Thank you.
And the total is like, is about 1.1 million. So it's 90% of that cost is maintenance.
Very good, thank you.
Excuse me, when you say maintenance, do you mean salaries?
Maintenance salaries, yes.
No, the maintenance and salaries or salaries? When you said maintenance, you said 950?
When I say maintenance, it's the 950,000. That is the cost of the salaries for maintenance employees only at the golf course.
Thank you.
So what's that maintenance staffing made up of? Well, it's a small workforce. It's a seven-day-a-week operation, and there have been a number of reductions over the last six years due to fiscal challenges. It's made up of 11 full-time or permanent part-time positions, which is then 10.3 FTE, and we then top that up with some hourly staff. We also enjoy the opportunity to give some youth, you know, the chance to come and work out of the golf course, which is funded separately. We've taken the decision for our planning for budget FY16 to reduce one of those positions, which is actually a 0.5 FTE from the golf course and have them full-time into the Parks Department. It benefits us from a supervisory and maintenance position. And we'll, for that small change, we're likely to be able to use hourly to backfill those hours lost on the golf course.
So just a quick note on that so that you understand why we're doing that. Several years ago, when we were going through all the budget reductions and the golf course was struggling, we had proposed in our budget to eliminate one grounds maintenance worker position. Over the budget process, we were able to work out so that Parks would absorb 50% of that position. We reworked the golf budget for 50% so that we could save this employee's job. So Parks, with their budget at this time, will use hourly savings and absorb the full position because, as Mr. Sewell said, it's a little difficult to have an employee working half-time in each division and not really having a clear line of supervision. Luckily, because of who he is, it works great. Everybody loves this employee. So, but we think it's time to do that. So that would be the change.
So against that backdrop, we feel that there's a limited opportunity to cover additional positions in a similar manner. Hourly staff have a 1,000 annual limit on their hours, which would mean they could either work full-time for six months or half-time for 12 months. It would be an increased workload and an increased span of control for our superintendent. But we will continue to monitor each case by case as an opportunity arises. We do contract out a number of our services at the golf course already. They include tree work, utility work, general construction. So our staff, we have a maintenance, are not doing every single piece of maintenance that is out on the golf course as it stands. And yeah, we feel there's a limited opportunity for these reductions without negatively impacting on course, and then that brings, of course, the quality and the revenue line into risk. So therefore, what we have looked at with the direction is the debt refinancing proposal. Here's the update on the debt. Now, this number, 1.16 million, is what the debt will be at the end of fiscal year 15 that we are currently in. So that would be the amount subject to any refinancing proposal, made up of three main parts. One is the Certificate of Participation, which is a half a million dollar balance. The general fund loan of half a million, which we are currently not paying down any principal on, just paying an interest payment each year. And then the fleet loan repayment, which has a balance of $170,000. So the plan here would be to consolidate all three of those loans into one consolidated loan with the general fund at 3% interest over 20 years. And this table here that you can see shows us what our current debt payments are between fiscal years 16 and 18 of $262,000. What the debt payments would be between 2019 and '22 of $185,000. And then, of course, that's replaced with a fixed $78,000 for 20 years. So in the first few years, there's a significant cash flow saving, but then there are 14 future years of payments. Just one final note there, although this would be a refinanced loan with the general fund, the general fund would then still have a liability to pay down that debt on the existing relationship.
Mr. Hachkiss?
If I may ask, so that, that sort of is a short-term solution to, overall, how much does that increase our loan by?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hachkiss, the loan itself isn't increased in terms of its total dollar amount, but the interest burden would increase by just over $40,000 as a result of--
How much?
$40,000, just over $40,000 would be the increased interest burden from refinancing these loans.
Okay, so the total cost of the loan will only be $40,000 greater?
Correct, in real dollars being spent. And the reason for that is, one of the things is extending the life of the loan, but secondly, there are some benefits because the 3% consolidated loan actually has a lower interest rate than two of the loans that are currently being paid.
Mr. White?
Thank you. Yeah, that isn't quite clear to me yet. So we're lowering the interest rate on two loans, is that right?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember White, the proposal here would be to consolidate all three loans into one--
I understand. But the two of them have a higher interest rate now than--
Yes.
--it would be proposed.
Yes.
And how about the third loan?
That's at 3% currently.
Okay, so then one stays the same, two go to, two are dropped. And then, but you were saying that the payments would go up.
Yes.
What you're substituting, what you're saying is that these big payments would not be required and so it would be substituted with, not that any of these are small, but anyway--
Yes.
--then the 78 six would go forward for 20 years.
Correct. And so basically, what that, what that means is there would be some savings between now and FY '22 in real cash terms of payments going out, but because the extension of the loan for 20 years, there'd be the interest burden for someone lending that money to the business for a longer time period, which would then, in real dollar terms, equate to more dollars being paid back. It'd be like paying your minimum payment on the credit card.
I hear you.
But again, just $40,000 more.
That's the impact, correct.
Why 3%? Why not 2.5%? Or, I mean, what was the rationale behind 3%?
That was the recommendation of the Finance Director.
Okay. Okay, and what's our, in our investment portfolio, what we get back from LEAF? LEAF? Right. It's been a while since I've been on Finance Committee. Mr. Samario?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, our current LEAF, or not LEAF, our current yield on our investments is somewhere around 1.5%. We stuck with 3% because we felt like over a 20-year period, we, interest rates will go up. We used to be somewhere around the 5% or 6% yield in our investments. We're in a historically low interest rate environment, so we felt 3% was a good sort of average.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so the next slide I want to show you is on a similar basis to the other red and green slide you've seen, which then projects the impact of refinancing the debt on the arrangements we've just talked about. And again, looks at the round growth on the three scenarios we have. And so you can see that it helps in the initial years. It staves off the reserves going negative on every scenario. However, it doesn't solve the whole problem in the 3% decline or a flat volume. And what I would just add to that is on the 1% growth version, reserves are hanging around the $200,000 mark, which would at that point probably be about a third of the policy reserves that we're required to hold.
Mr. Francisco?
Mr. Sewell, right now, what should the policy reserves be at the current budget?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Francisco, current reserves are expected to be about $600,000, within $5,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then here is the same slide we showed you, I showed you earlier in terms of the non-refinancing of the debt. So if I toggle between, you can kind of see that it does improve the situation in the short term, but of course, doesn't get us to the point where we need to be at reserve policy levels, or indeed, we still become insolvent in some of the future years on those growth scenarios. So, in summary, I'll hand back to Ms. Rapp.
So just a quick recap for you. Rounds in revenue are down at this point this year, but we're expecting to look a little better by the end of the year, kind of glass half-full. But with that, we still anticipate that we will use about $64,000 of our reserves. Enhanced marketing, everything that we've heard from all of the communications that we've had, meetings that we've been to, the things that we talked about in terms of expanding our marketing should have a good payout for us, especially the new software and the marketing potential with that. So we are expecting that we will at least, at a minimum, cover our cost to bringing up the marketing. Unfortunately, we just don't see a lot of opportunities for additional savings for maintenance. And I do want to emphasize, I would find it very difficult to support backfilling vacant positions with hourly-- positions with hourly staff. I think it's, I think it's unfair to the golf superintendent and to the small workforce. And so I really want to, I need to tell you that I do feel strongly about that because I, that could be a very enticing, let's just leave the positions vacant for a while and see what happens. But it really takes a toll on a small workforce. And so without doing that, we will continue to look at those vacant positions very carefully, but it's not the be-all answer. And the golf reserves, as you heard, we couldn't believe the good news. Hey, we got almost $100,000 when the reserves were restated. So that helps us, but it still will leave us, we're projecting in at least 50% of our policy reserves. So we just talked about refinancing the debt. The big unknown is what will happen with the golf trend. It's kind of glass half-full, glass half-empty. So we have been reasonably stable, but it has gone up and it has gone down. There are a lot of things in play that we don't know how they're going to affect us. I just, I just read the article in the Washington Post that somebody referred me to that had a fairly negative trend, negative take on the future of golf. Then you pick up something else and people are hoping that it's going to stabilize and have moderate growth. Locally, we have a lot of competition, and right now, nobody's talking about closing or selling or anything else. So we have to assume we will continue to have that local competition. So if the financial picture doesn't improve, the risk potentially to the general fund is anywhere from $40,000 to a half million or more. In the out-years, they're the out-years. So I did want to bring up and just make sure, because we did talk about this at the Finance Committee, it came up in the conversation, golf maintenance related to the concession agreements. So as we've said to you, our current concession agreements terminate at the end of June in 2016, so we need new agreements in place for July 1st. Those new contracts would likely commit the city to a five-year commitment. And if we were to keep the status quo and go out and, and do the two new concession agreements, which we can do, it just means that the city has lost the opportunity, and it may not be something that you, that matters at this point, but to consolidate the three functions under one operator. So that opportunity would be lost until the other concession agreements had run their term. Maintenance contracting, because I've been asked about this, we're including it as well, could be revisited in one to three years, if you want to kind of see how things go. But again, you, you have reduced opportunity to capitalize on any pending retirements. And we have been holding back, and we've been watching the golf staff. Most of the golf staff have been with us for 15, 20, 30, 35 years. They are good, good people, but eight of 11 of those staff will have, will have either retired or be eligible to retire by June of 2016. That's a very unusual situation when you look at workforces in any one division or department. So we've talked about if, in fact, there was a decision to go to contract maintenance, that we would make every effort to, to place golf staff into the city organization and in, in other jobs. So it just means that the cost for doing that, if we have to fill a vacancy and it's a young professional just starting their career, it means they'll be with the city a longer time. Or conversely, if somebody is going to retire, they may say, "I'm not ready to retire yet," but they might be ready in, you know, two, three, five years. So it's just a fact that we just wanted to share with you. So the Finance Committee, as I said when I started, in a two vote, two-one vote, recommended that City Council support the enhanced marketing, support the debt refinance proposal, and monitor the golf performance and revisit contracting out of maintenance as needed. So staff are here to recommend that council approve a proposal for the general fund to refinance $1,169,651 of golf fund debt at 3% interest over 20 years. Two, confirm prior council direction to continue with the same golf course operating model using city employee maintenance. And three, direct staff to enhance marketing efforts and proceed with securing pro-shop and restaurant concession agreements, which would be in place on July 1st, 2016. So we are happy to answer any questions that you have. Quite a few of you have asked us for additional information, so we have tried to bring some of that with us if you have questions. So with that, we're happy to make ourselves available.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question about the, about the state of the buildings on-site. Can you, I know that you had mentioned that the general fund had funded some work there. Could you describe the, basically, where do we stand with the buildings and grounds as far as, not the course itself, but the grounds as to its state of maintenance?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember White, the, the building itself is in a reasonable condition in terms of the, the pro-shop and the areas that the general public would tend to see as they visit. However, we do have more concerns with regards to the maintenance areas and some of the areas that perhaps the golfers don't see every day, which is captured within our capital planning to, to address those over the next few years as part of our six-year plan. With regards to the, the main building, as it were, we're still paying down the debt for the, the renovation of that building from many, many years ago. That's part of the debt. I'm afraid I don't know the answer.
I don't know either, and I'm thinking it was late 80s. Yeah, no, it was really quite a while.
Late 80s. Yeah, late 80s.
So 20, 25 years ago.
Yes.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question about marketing. I wanted to know what Visit Santa Barbara does for the golf course. And Mr. Casey, is it 1.2 million we give to Visit Santa Barbara every year? Can we wedge in there that we want them to promote our golf course, please?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Murillo, any help towards helping us to market our golf courses greatly appreciated. Only three weeks ago, I had a meeting with one of the representatives from Visit Santa Barbara, asking for options and opportunities to better market the golf course. It's part of the plan, part of the strategy, to appeal to more of our tourists, to make us one of the first places that people will look at when they're thinking about playing golf in this town.
Good, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Mr. Hachkis?
If we could go back one slide where you had your recommendations about, okay. On number two there, if we didn't have, uh, operating model using city employee maintenance, but we used contract maintenance, what would the savings be a year?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hachkis, we presented in our December meeting some of the, the variables in terms of the different operating models. And it's fair to say that although some of the projections have changed for where we think the rounds are going to go, we're still fairly confident that the saving in terms of labor from current status quo to a contract maintenance would be within the realm of $200,000 per annum.
Uh, $200,000 annually?
Correct.
That's the savings or the cost of the full, the full cost?
That would be the saving.
That would be the savings. $200,000 savings.
Correct.
With same level of rounds and staffing.
Correct.
Okay.
And have we projected using those figures what that looks like going out in the years?
Councilmember Hachkis, yes, we have. Would you like me to show the slide? Okay. So what you'll see up there on the slide is a, a chart with four lines. You might just think there's three lines, but there are four. You can see that the red line, well, all the lines start to, to move away from each other in fiscal year '16 because that would be the year that any change were likely to be made. And you can see the red line is our current refinance model. This graph assumes no change in rounds, by the way. You start getting a three-dimensional graph, which doesn't work. So this, this assumption here is we have flat play on the budget '16 number. And you can see that we trickle along below our reserve level, and we go negative in FY '20 on the red line. And then you can see the management agreement is the strongest fiscal case whereby we would be saving just over $400,000 each year. Now, this line is there, and that's the management agreement on the assumption that living wage would not apply to that agreement. And then what you see with regards to the two blue lines is where the management agreement does have the living wage applied, and then the maintenance contract, again, which would have living wage applied. So there's the delta between the, the scenarios.
Why would we think the living wage ordinance would not apply?
From the previous conversation, we presented that. I think the, the feeling that we got from council through that discussion is the living wage applies. But this information we drew from Mr. Krikorian's report, and that's why we're including it so that it's there.
Okay, so just to be clear, that, that we're looking at the, the middle line there?
Yes.
Okay.
And so really, the, it shows the benefit to the management agreement and the maintenance contract is about the same because it's all about the maintenance.
Great. And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, was I interrupting?
No, no, you're, you're still asking, go ahead.
But the savings is substantial on that double blue line there, right? Is that the $400,000 or is that the $200,000?
That's the $200,000.
$200,000, okay.
Remind me again what the full golf budget is. It's about 2 million?
Correct, 2.1 million.
2.1, okay. Any other questions? Okay, so I'm going to open it up to public comment. We have two minutes here at the podium, and we'll start with Tom Widrow, to be followed by Gretchen Ostergren.
Madam Mayor, I think someone was going to seed me some time. Is that okay?
Who, and what's your name? Oh, you're seeding, okay, so you have up to four minutes?
If Bobby was, yeah, that'd be great.
I did see your slip, go ahead.
Thanks. Madam Mayor, Council, first of all, I just want to compliment staff, Nancy Rapp and company for putting together what is a comprehensive review of this. Certainly had a lot of relevant detail. I guess my question, what comes up is why does staff come up with the recommendation that they do? And I hope you'll continue the discussion and ask, because I, I guess it doesn't make sense to me. If the exposure is $40,000, up to half a million dollars, that's a substantial amount of money. And so I'm just wondering, is it just staff has a sense that they feel that this is a better or somehow a more constructive resolution? And I just didn't hear the substance behind that recommendation. Years ago, I've played golf at the municipal golf course, and I love it. Before I had four kids, I actually shot bogey golf. My wife will tell you. My friend Brian actually will never let me forget that he shot a hole-in-one on number 16. So I have a lot of fond memories out there of playing golf at Muni. It's a great place, it's run extremely well, and we should all be proud of it. But the question is not whether or not it's a great golf course. Santa Barbara City Watch would recommend that with the various fiscal constraints that you face as a council and that we face as a city, that you have, every dollar counts here. And this is in small potatoes. You have road maintenance, you have public safety, fire, a lot of different obligations that are very relevant to you. And if you sit there and, and continue to go forward, even with optimistic projections of a slight rate in growth of golf, you're missing an opportunity, I think as staff correctly pointed out, number one, to potentially matriculate current staff into other positions. I understand it can be absorbed within the city apparatus, and that's a good thing. So they're not going to lose their income. Some will retire. And also, you're missing an opportunity to renegotiate contracts, too, with the outstanding vendors over there at the city, Mulligan's Cafe, and then Chris Talarico's operation as Director of Golf. They do a great job. So tonight is actually emblematic, I think, of each and every one of you to consider, how do you husband the city's resources? How do you prioritize those resources? And do you miss a big opportunity? I think the one organization that might stand to lose is, is SEIU, the union. They do have 11 positions, and I understand that it's in their best interest to keep those union positions. I get that. But the question is, isn't the greater good more of a concern to you as a council? Isn't this a more constructive approach, is to aggressively grab this, turn it over to someone who can operate it efficiently and effectively and ensure that we all have access to affordable golf at the same quality that we've enjoyed all these years, when the city has run it and when we had more people playing golf? Thank you for your time.
I have a question for Mr. Widrow, please. I, you know, you mentioned SEIU, and I, I kind of know who they are and who they represent. Can you tell us a little bit more about City Watch? And you mentioned it like, "we" at City Watch. Who, who is "we"? Just for our edification tonight?
For your edification?
I'd be grateful.
Fair enough. And you've treated me very fairly, Councilwoman Murillo. Thanks for having me to your office earlier. City Watch is a group of, I'm sure you'll know some of the individuals who are, can't participate in meetings, so residents. I, I know I'm, I'm a hard-working guy and I'm a dad, and until I agreed to do this, I couldn't come down here and, and talk to you as, as representatives. So I think advocacy groups, we're an advocacy group. You think of COLAB, maybe at the county, whether you, whatever you think of COLAB, they're there to do their job and advocate for business, labor, and agriculture. I think, I tried to explain to you, we look at some big issues like Highway 101 widening, bigger issues like what's going on on the street here in Santa Barbara, and then also fiscal solvency and wise, wise decision-making when it comes to finances. And I think there's, you know, we have a group, it's growing, it's small-ish, but growing. Does that help?
Okay, yeah, it does. I mean, you have me thinking about COLAB and that they're for labor, so I, I wonder if they're partners with SEIU.
Well, if anyone was going to lose their job, though, I would, you know, there'd be a much more difficult decision to make. I was just saying that, that if they are going to be absorbed into, into the city apparatus as according to Nancy's report, which then we'd obviously have a moral consideration about maintaining those jobs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gretchen Ostergren will be followed by Maureen Mason.
Madam Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak with you tonight. I have been a golfer at Muni for many, many years, and I'm on the golf advisory committee. I don't come here representing them. I just say that just for your edification, that it's one of the many things that I do to support the golf course. Anyway, I think the, the question that I keep wrestling with is what is the most fiscally responsible thing to do? And I know that, I mean, we are so blessed to have Simone at the golf course, working with us now after the closure of Ocean Meadows. But even having said that, you know, I just don't know how we can keep affording to put more money into labor if it's going to bankrupt the course. And, you know, I've always been somebody that pays my bills on time, I don't borrow money, you know, from Peter to pay Paul. And to me, you know, trying to refund or trying to restructure the debt and add even more years to it by adding more interest makes no sense to me. That, to me, is like putting a Band-Aid on a gaping wound. And I just think that, that it's important that we do things that are more fiscally responsible for the city and for the golf course. So I am not in favor of refinancing the loan, and I am in favor of jobbing out maintenance.
Thank you. Maureen Mason will be followed by Leslie Wiscombe.
Good evening, City Council. It's Masson, by the way.
Oh, Masson, sorry.
My name is Maureen Masson, and I've been playing Muni for 53 years, is a treasurer My name is Maureen Masson, and I've been playing Muni for 53 years, is a treasure, and it's enjoyed by golfers and tourist golfers. It is my hope that the council will remember that they represent all of the people of Santa Barbara, not just separate entities, and the future of our beautiful Santa Barbara golf course should not be a political one. Thank you very much.
Leslie Wiscombe will be followed by Jess, I think it's Sevis, and then Tony Vasallo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Leslie Wiscombe. I'm chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I'm also the commission's liaison to the Golf Advisory Committee. And I do enjoy an occasional round at Muni. At the commission's November 2014 regular meeting, we received a report from staff on the status of the Muni golf course, and this presentation was similar to the one that you heard in December. The commissioners emphasized three objectives. First, that it's the city's responsibility to keep this resource available to the public; and two, that the council's actions should result in a sustainable model that protects this asset for present and future generations. And for anyone that thinks golf is a dying sport, I urge them to review the growth in the youth programs at the golf course over the past few years. The numbers are really, really impressive. And finally, that the solution selected should be one where the city retains a majority of control in order to respond to local conditions and industry trends, to help foster youth, senior, and women's and men's play, and to better market our course to the golfing public. Therefore, staff's recommendations, number one, two, and three, as outlined in the golf course sustainability proposal, meets the commission's objectives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now I'm relooking at this, I don't know if it's a Sevis or Hughes or something, but it's Jeff. If you can tell me what your last name is, because I can't read it, that would be great. And then Tony Vasallo.
Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Hughes.
Hughes, thank you.
Thank you. I've been playing the Muni for a long time now, and I kind of love the golf course. I've been there for, since 1959, just right after it opened. I believe that if we go to a maintenance program that's not what exists now, that I see no incentive for those people to do the job that the people are doing now do. So I'm in favor of keeping the maintenance as it is, and hopefully that'll work out for you all. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Tony Vasallo will be followed by Bebe Longstreet.
Madam Mayor and City Council members, first of all, I'm not a golfer, but I love golf courses because of the open space that they provide for a community, especially one that's fully built out like ours is. And a couple of things I will say, it may have already been dealt with in previous meetings, I'm not sure, but I did have an interesting conversation with my stepson, who is a landscape architect, and maybe I can put a couple of thoughts on the table that might help, might help save our golf course. I'm in favor of saving the golf course, but I'd like to see it continue as it always has, and it should pay for itself without any subsidies whatsoever, and hate to see the beautiful green space lost, plus the recreational aspects of golf. Just looking at the charts and listening to some of the other speakers, it's pretty obvious, and the writing is on the wall, you've got to cut labor costs by 50% or more if you're going to, unless you're going to go broke by 2017. So I think that's the first key, is to move to contracting for labor and cut your labor costs down as much as you possibly can and get the best people doing the labor that you can. But that's just one important component. It's not about the existing staff, because I know they're good, it's about sound fiscal decision-making. And as others have pointed out, you've got a great opportunity right now with a staff that's either reaching or has already reached retirement age to make such a transition and get the golf course on a fiscal responsible timeline that'll ensure its continuity over time.
Need to wind up, please. Thank you.
But there's a couple of other, may I mention two other points?
You're beyond your time, so if you want to mention a half a sentence?
Two quick points.
No, one, one quick point.
Okay, I'll combine them into two.
No.
Number one is golf courses around the country are facing similar problems. Take your marketing program and convert the game to a 12-hole game instead of 18. Offer people like myself, who has bad back, I'm not a golfer, but I would play, if I could go and play a round of three or six holes. Have a three, six, nine, and 12-hole approach, and you'll raise your revenues and reduce your labor costs and hope it helps.
Bebe Longstreet will be followed by David Niles.
Bebe Longstreet, I'm on the Parks and Recreation Commission, but I am speaking for myself tonight. Our main goal has to be to keep the golf course open and affordable to the residents of Santa Barbara. This is our community asset. The golf course also needs to continue to be an enterprise fund. It is a very specialized operation, and the trends we see happening at our golf course are following national trends in golf, so we're not looking at just a local problem. I've been on the commission a long time, and I have a fear. Having sat through Franceschi House, where we made a recommendation that was probably the most fiscally responsible and met the needs at the time, it got political, and we ended up in kind of a quagmire, where we had to save the house, and here we are, how many years later, 10, 12 years later, looking at the same problems but with less resources to do it. And so I want this decision to be what's best for the golf course, best for our residents and the community. The golf course needs to remain sustainable. It has to be able to meet those capital needs. You were asking about those tonight. And, you know, when we look at the fact that we haven't yet paid off the clubhouse that probably will need to be replaced before it's paid off, we really need to do some deep planning on this. I also have a fear that if we use a model where we're using general fund to support the golf course, that the time will come around when things aren't as flush as they are right now, and we don't have great TOT, and that that money will come out of Parks and Recreation budget, and we'll see it cuts again to our community, to our neighborhood parks, and to other resources. So I really do support the golf course remaining an enterprise fund and being able to physically support itself. Thank you.
David Niles will be followed by Cynthia Gwenna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. The two first points I'd like, a couple of points I'd like to raise immediately would be, why don't we lower the rate to 1%? That'd save a lot of money. And where does the big savings come from of the $400,000? My guess is goes from middle-class workers to low-class workers. So it's not just the money that the city pays, but it's the money the city gets back. So if you have middle-class workers supporting the local economy, the city benefits. If you have a lower-class worker with less ability to support the city's economy, then you don't get that benefit. So with that said, the only significant consequence of privatizing the golf maintenance would be the disruption of the lives of the park maintenance workers. I urge the City Council to preserve these committed and experienced employees and to support a living wage for those working hard to maintain our city parks. And if the time comes where we need to negotiate a living wage or a different wage, and we are actually losing money, why can't we do that at that time? Why do we need to do that now? False choices like these being proposed to City Council are not going to solve our budgetary problems. Your creative leadership is our best hope, or raising taxes, or both, probably raising taxes. The budget reduction strategy of privatizing Las Pecitas Public Park did not reduce Parks and Recreation budget or its administrative cost by $1. Instead, it did the opposite, and their budget and their costs have grown into millions of dollars in just a few years, while the public has been hurt. If there are no funds available to get things accomplished, then why do we need so much administration and why at such a high cost? The loss of the redevelopment agency contributions obviously hurt the city's budget, and when facing tough financial decisions, the city should offer lower salaries and benefits for the currently high-paying administrative positions. The people targeted by this proposal are the people doing the hard, physical work required to maintain our parks.
Need to wind up, please.
If the city wants to reduce its budget, it should renegotiate the higher-paying administrative salaries and benefits. Even if we choose to privatize the golf maintenance and terminate or reassign these employees, this will not balance the city's budget. Balancing the city's budget on the back of a few public park maintenance workers is a false choice, and I urge the City Council to seek a more equitable and creative solution to this challenge. Thank you very much.
Cynthia Gwenna will be followed by Bonnie Raisen.
Madam Mayor and members of council, my name is Cynthia Gwenna, and I represent SEIU Local 620. We support the staff recommendation, which includes continuing using city employees and maintenance staff. The staff has, the management staff has recommended in its report that there's limited opportunity to reduce maintenance costs without negative impact, although it may look like cost-cutting with the maintenance staff would be a solution. It's actually short-sighted. The quality of the course is also to be taken into account. If maintenance suffers, it's very expensive to repair, to repair the damage to the course that could be done by someone, contractor, that you do not control. Over your own employees, you have control and supervision and training and control of the workforce and the quality of their work. If it's contracted out to a contractor, you lose that. And there's also a tendency to enter into a bait-and-switch, where they give you a low rate to begin with, then once you've dismantled your ability to perform those services, those rates will go up. We've seen that again and again, and while the rates are going up, there can be a degradation of quality. So we urge you not to take the risk of dismantling your ability to perform the maintenance duties in-house. And in addition, we are not certain that employees would be reassigned. There's no guarantee of that. There would be an effort, but that's as much as we've heard. So we would urge you to follow the staff recommendation, which has been very carefully studied and researched and is a solid recommendation to you. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Hotchkiss, did you have a question?
What question, if I could?
Ms. Gwenna.
Thank you. If you had more confidence, or absolute confidence, that existing SEIU members could be laterally transferred, or if they chose to retire, would you be more favorable, favorably disposed to this?
No, we feel that contracting out is very short-sighted, that we will end up with, it will end up with damage to the golf course and damage to the quality of the services that are being performed there now. We believe it's short-sighted.
Okay, money-saving but short-sighted. Thank you.
Bonnie Raisen will be followed by Joe Ushon.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Raisen, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm confused. I have great confidence that if this were to be contracted out, that there would be bids and there would be wise selection. I have tremendous confidence in the intelligence and the ability of this city council, were this to be contracted out, that the right people would be selected. That's number one, and I've heard, most of what I've heard tonight is what I would concur with regarding the advantages of contracting out. I shudder when I hear the word "general fund" being, I mean, even a little bit that could go into, guess what I'm going to say, maintenance and infrastructure. I mean, even, I don't know, you know, when we pay for studies to decide on street signs, well, I mean, this could, that much money could probably pay for several studies. I think what I'm saying is, is that I think it's time to try what looks like a natural segue for this council, and that is to contract out the maintenance of the golf course. I've been here all my life. That golf course is wonderful. I don't play golf, but I have family members who do beside the point. It is part and parcel of that Las Pecitas section of town and the San Roque area. So I would urge you to consider carefully maintaining it in a prudent, fiscally responsible way, that is, to contract it out. Thank you.
Joe Ushon will be followed by Craig Kessler, then Clay Cole, Marilyn Freeman, and then Patricia Watkins will be the final speaker.
Aye. I might have missed it in the earlier discussions, but it seems to me that one of the most obvious solutions would be one of the simplest, and that is simply to raise the greens fees. It seems like a perfect application of Occam's razor, remember Earl Occam? Who said that you pick the solution that's the simplest and that is based on the least amount of problematic assumptions, and that can be fixed most easily if it doesn't work out. The conventional thinking is that if you raise prices, you're going to lose customers, but that certainly is not a universal proposition, and I can testify in personal experience that it's not. I've heard that raising the prices has been tried before, and play went down, but that was hardly a controlled experiment. It could have been, I don't know what coincided with it, maybe the drainage construction, the reconstruction of the greens, but I think it's worth another experiment. Nobody I've ever asked said that they would play elsewhere if they encountered a $3. Well, my simple arithmetic was that adding $3 per round would close the annual deficit. Simplistic arithmetic, but I think it's fairly sound. As I said, I've never met anybody that said that they would take their golf clubs and put them in the trunk and drive elsewhere to play on another golf course if Muni raised their prices by $3. I've heard it's in a competitive environment, but in this competitive environment, Muni kills the competition dead in its tracks. You would have to drive 30 miles outside, near downtown Santa Barbara, to find a competitive golf course, and you'd spend more than $3 in gas to get there. People tolerate price increases. I don't see why golf should be immune. I would hope that you'd consider this further, including if you'd study the satisfaction level of players on contracted maintenance golf courses, I think you'd be surprised what you find out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Craig Kessler.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Craig Kessler with the Southern California Golf Association. Literally, the issues that have been raised by the council and by the speakers and by the presentation gives me two hours of material, but in the two minutes that I have, I'd like to share with you the following. Mark Sewell will actually be at our offices Thursday with a number of his counterparts in the municipal golf industry, and there there will be a large contingent from the County of Los Angeles, which is the largest golf system in the United States, and the City of Los Angeles, which is the third-largest. They are diametrically opposed in the way in which they operate their systems. One is a public-employee-delivered system, and the other is entirely contracted out. For those of you who play golf and recognize perhaps Torrey Pines as a great tour site and a U.S. Open site, it's operated, it's run entirely with public employees. My point is that we at the SCGA have wonderful relationships with contracted systems, with public-employee systems. It is not, for you, you have some decisions to make about finances and ultimately the character of the system that you want, and a lot of this decision is not financial. It is about values and what you regard as important. But what I want to indicate is that all of this, as you move forward, and it does look like you'll be moving forward in some way, if not tonight, in the very near future, there are good examples and good ways to run public-employee-unionized systems. There are bad ways. There are good ways to contract out while retaining control, and there are bad ways. And we can write chat, I'm not going to mention any while television cameras are going or on the record. They're members of ours as well. But the dispositive point always isn't just some of the simple points that have been raised here this evening. A lot of it's about complication, and when it gets down to the subject of where the golf industry has been, where it is, and where it may be going, I could have four hours of material on that. But I can see that I'm about to be plugged with a button, but I thank you for the time.
We have a question from Mr. Hart for you.
Well, I think, you know, as Ms. Rapp said at the very beginning of the presentation tonight, this is a glass-half-full, glass-half-empty question, and so I don't think there's anybody more appropriately positioned to answer that question about golf. What is... What is your sense about the future of golf?
Ah, okay.
In two minutes.
All right. I'll give you my elevator speech on the status of golf. Golf enjoyed unprecedented growth for nearly 60 years, from the end of World War II through 2004. We went through recessions, wars, impeachments of presidents, gas lines, all kinds of things. And you can tell by my hair, I lived through much of it. And every year, there were more golf courses in the United States of America on December 31st than January 1st. That is a market that needed correction. Like a lot of industries, we got a little bit exuberant. We got a little full of ourselves. We thought we were brilliant. We were not. We were the beneficiary of a lot of good fortune and some circumstances, and particularly economic ones, that no longer exist. And that's, that's an even bigger topic. So, as that correction went to hit in, there was the explosion of 2008, which was, which we were led into by the real estate industry. And those who are familiar with the golf industry understand that too many golf courses in America, and particularly in the Southwest, got built to sell real estate. When the real estate was sold, what we were left with was not particularly a good business model or a tenable golf operation. So, we had a market needing correction, and then we have, and we had a bubble that popped. As you can see from the numbers here, that has largely stabilized. So, I wanted, in answering the question, I wanted to put it in a full context that what, the numbers don't lie, but they don't always tell the full story. And those numbers don't tell the full story. So, what we're seeing is a rebirth or a little bit of regeneration. And the good thing about it is people like me, or people like Jean Cricorian and others who have worked in the industry for a long time, now we're not so full of ourselves and recognize that we were the beneficiaries, that a lot of businesses in America were beneficiaries, where a certain long-term 40, 50-year equilibrium that by and large has been shot. I don't know whether that'll come back. That I can't predict for you. But I can say that the golf industry has retrenched. It's sore, and it's a lot leaner, meaner, and we're a whole lot smarter. So, I'm optimistic despite some of those numbers. And I hope I answered the question. I know I didn't do it in less than two minutes.
That's all right, but Mr. Hotchkiss has another question for you.
I do. Thank you. Yeah, you've been really enlightening. Thank you. Of municipal courses in California or larger area, if you have it, are they predominantly public employees or contracted out, do you know?
More of them are contracted out than public employees. However, that's a trend that's slightly begun to reverse. There was a period of time in the 80s and 90s when there was almost a rush to privatize golf courses. In part, that's because, this won't come as a surprise to you or city council, businesses love winners. They don't always like things quite as much when they're losing. And I think that explains a lot. There's still more on the, on the model of contracting out, but that has flattened out. And again, like I've said, there are examples of really good systems in both models. The details matter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clay Cole.
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Mayor and council members. The preceding speaker was certainly very knowledgeable, and I'm glad to hear that the industry is much leaner and meaner, but I didn't see that in the numbers for this particular golf course. So, I'm here today as a 15-year property owner in town to urge you to vote to use private contractors rather than city workers to maintain the greens at the golf course. Taking this step is by far and away the best way to reverse the golf course's serious and protracted operating deficits and restore the entity's badly eroded financial condition. Stopgap measures, including refinancing and new marketing initiatives as presented here this evening, will not restore the golf course to long-term viability. As, at a presentation to the Riviera Association last year, city staffers reported that Santa Barbara currently has an unfunded backlog of infrastructure projects in excess of $400 million, encompassing a broad range of critical needs. Santa Barbara and its city council face incredibly serious challenges that have resulted, due to short, I'm sorry, incredibly serious challenges to the city's welfare and financial flexibility due to short-sighted decisions that have resulted in mushrooming transfers of city funds to CalPERS. This in turn has contributed to the shortfall in funding needed for infrastructure projects. The citizens of Santa Barbara need and deserve competent stewardship of taxpayer, taxpayer resources entrusted to this governing council. There is a salient need for pragmatic action by the council to right-size expenditures and to avoid looking to the taxpayer directly or indirectly to solve pressing budgetary shortfalls. Viewing taxpayer resources as, in effect, a piggy bank to be tapped to satisfy SEIU demands is unacceptable. This applies equally to the continued wasting of the hard dollar cash reserves in the golf course and the inefficient use of general funds to refinance the golf course debt in the face of what are staggering unfunded infrastructure projects.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and for your service. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Marilyn Freeman.
Hello. I'm not sure I have a lot new to add at this point of the evening. It's been going on for quite a long time, but I'm Marilyn Freeman. I am a golfer at the Santa Barbara Golf Club. I'm also this year's and last year's president of the EWGA, Executive Women's Golf Association, that we play at Muni as our home course. But I'm here speaking mostly for myself. And I agree that golf industry is going down. I also agree or believe that as prices of golf goes up, the number of golfers are gonna shop other places, and they're gonna go wherever they get the best course for the most affordable price. I think that in the 90s, on that slide, when we were at our heyday, Muni offered an affordable golf alternative to the community. I believe today, it is priced competitively. I think that's about the best you can say. I think that it would be, if you wanna retain that competitiveness that you have, you've gotta keep your costs competitive, and that's where these labor costs come in. If you don't have competitive labor with the people that you're competing against, your costs are gonna rise. Your number of rounds will continue to drop. So, with that said, I would encourage you to look at contracting or privatizing that labor. Thank you.
And the final speaker will be Patricia Watkins.
Hi. I'd like to say hello to the mayor and city council. I hadn't really planned to be here, but I'm here, so, and I'm just for my, talking for myself. I agree that interest in golf is really not waning. It may have waned in the past, but I don't think it's going to have a big downturn. I think a lot of the waning in some past years is because of the recession. And if we eventually come out of that, I think that the golfing will continue to go up, especially there seems to be a lot of tournaments and TV watchers and young children and lessons and all that. I would like to see the golf course, if possible, sustain itself. Perhaps it would be a choice like you raise $3 a round plus contract out the maintenance. I, really, since I'm a Libra, it's hard to decide, you know, there's good points and bad points on both sides. So, it might be nice to try raising the prices and contracting out the maintenance when the opportunity comes up. The refinancing does sound nice. They've done a lot of homework, but 20 years is a long time. And my mom, who just passed last year at 99, I mean, she hardly spent a penny on anything. So, I'm always for physical responsibility. So, you know, I, if you can do something and, and keep it and cut costs, I'm always for that. I think that as the economy corrects itself, we may get more visitors. It would be nice to keep the golf course for our city and for the visitors. I just can't decide which way to go, so, good luck.
There's a great way to end the public comment. Thank you very much. Okay, so, it's to the council. We'll start with Mr. Hart.
Well, I think that is the perfect way to start. The folks made a lot of good comments. Staff's done a lot of hard work. Council's talked about this a long time. As Ms. Rapp said, this is, I think, ultimately, a question of whether we're optimistic about the number of rounds increasing in the future or pessimistic. And I'm optimistic. I think that we are at the bottom of a trend, and I think that there is reason to be optimistic about increasing rounds of golf. I think there's, frankly, I think there's some real pressures on some of the private operations in the region that may result, you know, and the fact of the matter remains that the municipal golf course is the most successful golf course in Santa Barbara County. And it has always been that way, and it still is. It is the most popular golf course. This, there's no question that, as far as this council member's concerned, we're gonna retain that community asset for the community at an affordable price because that's the purpose of this golf course, and that's what it's done for its entire history. And so, the only question is about what's the best way to steward this resource? Not talking about changing it, its use, not talking about closing it. This is not a drastic financial situation, as somebody said. This is, this is a modest challenge, and it is a modest challenge for a very short period of time in the historical period that this golf course has operated successfully, very, very successfully. And so, I think that the solution to it is, the wisest solution to that problem is using Occam's razor to be very surgical about it. And I think that the staff recommendation, these three recommendations, is exactly that solution. It provides us the breathing space that we need to see if golf is going to recover, that we get the rounds increasing. And if that is the case, then all those charts turn green, and we don't have a problem. And we don't need to, to change something that's incredibly successful. So, I will move the staff recommendation.
All right. Okay, that was fast. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I Googled the terms "golf" and "decline" this morning, and there's page after page after page of articles on that topic. It seems to be in vogue right now. And I think that there are a lot of historical forces that have caused a sudden slowdown and even a decline in golfing, and they may not last. I hope they don't. And it's a combination of overbuilding golf courses. There seems to be less interest, at least currently, in the 18- to 34-year-old crowd in taking up golf. That could change too. What will not change, I'm quite certain, is that Muni, if it survives financially, will continue to be popular and played at in Santa Barbara for decades to come. I have absolutely no doubt about that. If we take care of that resource, it will still be a treasure for this city 30 years from now. So, the question really is, how do we do that? The golf course is an enterprise fund. It is self-supporting. It has been self-supporting since the day it opened, and it needs to continue to be self-supporting. Mr. Hart believes that it has minor economic problems. I say, if it's at 50% of reserves and going down, it has serious economic problems. And we have an economic solution in front of us that is so obvious that if we were not confronting the difficult question of what do we do with city workers, there wouldn't be a person in this room who wouldn't say, here's the solution. Some people say that private contracting for the greens maintenance will save us $200,000 a year. Some people say it will save us $425,000 a year. Whichever figure is right, that significant difference will put the golf course in the black for good, barring a catastrophic decline in play. But we have to be serious about the trends in play. We've seen it flat over the last few years. It's stopped declining. Maybe that flat will continue. Maybe it will go up again. What we're seeing right now, this year, is a continued decline in play. We need to be careful stewards of our city's resources, and we have an opportunity now that is unique. As staff has told us, the 11, or is it 12, full-time employees that we have, eight of those employees are at or near retirement age. If we transition to private contracting now, we will find positions in this city for any one of those employees who wants to remain with the city of Santa Barbara. We can do this in the most fair possible way for our current employees. And this is not, by the way, about the kind of work that those employees are doing. They're doing a great job, according to everyone I talk to. It's about the costs. We cannot continue to pay twice as much for greens maintenance as any other golf course in the area. It will go out of business. Because this council, I hope, will never support using general fund money to keep an enterprise fund afloat. So, we really only have one choice. If we look at this rationally, and if we put aside for a moment the problem that some people have with the idea of replacing a city workforce with a private workforce, there's really only one solution to this problem that works economically. And if we choose that solution, this is what'll happen. The golf course will immediately start trending into the black. We'll start building up our reserves. We'll have the ability, over the long run, to do the physical improvements that the golf course needs to become even better than it is today. We will control, as good managers, the quality of the work that those private contractors do. The city does that every day. Every day, every day that city council meets, we approve contracts, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in contracts for private companies to do the work that the city needs done. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind, and as the gentleman said there, golf courses can be run well with public employees. They can be run well with private employees. We are in a situation where private employees are the only financial solution that will allow us to preserve the golf course and keep it as a functional enterprise fund. And I want people to think about something else. We're not only talking about the 11 workers on the greens maintenance crew. There are other people working at the golf course. There are other people whose livelihoods depend on the continued economic health of Muni. There's 30 people working for the pro shop. There's 30 people working for the restaurant. So, we have a lot of people in this town whose jobs depend on a flourishing golf course. We, as a city council, have the ability to make sure, not to take chances, not to guess, not to see what happens, but to make sure that the golf course continues economically vital, so that it can continue to serve the people of this community as it has since the 1950s. That's what we wanna do. That's what we should do, and we should move forward with private contracting for the greens maintenance.
Mr. White. I'm gonna ask you not to clap because we wanna hear what everyone has to say, and we already have a disagreement on council, so we wanna make sure we, you know, focus and listen to everyone. Thank you. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, looking at the golf course from my perspective, there have been a number of comments tonight made about our infrastructure, and as those who are familiar faces here know, this has been a primary concern of mine of trying to mobilize our community around tending to this wonderful inheritance of ours. And the golf course is one of those inheritances. It's, as I understand it, it comes out of the World War II and military lands that then we inherited. And now, we're doing a wonderful job of taking care of it. Yet, we look at these funding trends as we do. We have some catastrophic ones in our city, such as our streets budget. But this one is, it's a boat with a serious leak. And it worries me, and it certainly, we, the city lost a golf course in the Great Depression, had a golf course, but couldn't, couldn't take care of it. And we don't want that to happen again. And I think we have a commitment, and we do have a unanimous commitment here, that there isn't a repurposing program that's even being considered here. How do we go forward? And, as I asked the question of Ms. Rapp, which I wasn't quite aware of, even the wonderful buildings that we have out there have gotten their remodel 25 years ago, and we're still, still not paying that off. Well, picture that in your own home. 25 years ago, did you do the bathrooms? Did you do the kitchen? ago, did you do the bathrooms? Did you do the kitchen? Obviously, high-use areas. So I, with, you know, a real, with a heavy heart, I do support going to a contract system for the golf course. Most other courses in small, we heard the gentleman, and I really did appreciate that sort of snapshot perspective of golf. You live golf, and you live the business of golf, and you did a great job of compressing a picture into a small time. But the smaller communities, the smaller jurisdictions that have golf, are privileged enough to have a golf course, it's more of a python to deal with. And it's not like the city of Los Angeles where, you know, a few million here, a few million there, just can disappear. It's a big deal to have hundreds of thousands of dollars, in this case of this jurisdiction, leaking. So I also see contracting as a reversible process. This is something where, like, I've been asking questions about what, are there ways to do it halfway? Are there ways to sub out portions of the work and keep more of it in the employ of our city? And I do, my policy base keeps, would keep this course in city control, not taking the whole show and subbing it out, which is one of the options, which I know is available to this city as these other contracts come up. Yes, the whole course and all the businesses could be looked at as a single unit. And I do think that the city ought to maintain direct control over it. But subbing out the work. I think also that, but I think that the contracts should be on the basis, and this is going to be a little harder, I think, for some of my conservative colleagues to swallow, it should be on a living wage basis. That would be the trade-off that I would ask, that we, not ask, that's what I would support making today. And I expect this will be a close vote. I look at this, this change, I look at the leak, and I've seen, heard Mr. Niles, I think, say, goodness, look at what's happened to the park department budget in the last few years. We've managed to restore some of the losses there, some of the really bad things happening to our parks. We've been managed, we've managed to be able to caulk those leaks. We still, as we watch the drought, just take out our trees. We need to, we're investing more in our trees. We need to invest more. That's the kind of thing that I see this net loss, this leak, if we stop this one, we can go around and we can fix some of the others. And I know, I think Ms. Reisen mentioned that, too. We can do, use that money to do other things in our general fund that are so desperately needed. So we have the flexibility of restarting this in the future. I, whatever the cycles of life are and of golf as a portion of life, I, of course, hope that we have a resurgence of rounds there, that we, that $3 in greens fee maybe just disappear in the future if the likes of Glen Annie goes out of business, which then, perhaps even then, going back to employees is revisited. So as I say, reluctantly, I support going to the contract modality, and it would be with the, with the living wage caveat.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, seeing my friend, Mr. Nahas, out there, I don't think he's ready to admit this Glen Annie's going out of business anytime soon. You know, we have a, our primary job, as I see it, is to provide these amenities and to provide services. And as an agency, we're really good culturally with our employees. We treat them really well. But our primary job is not that. Our primary job is not as an employment agency. Our primary job is provide the taxpayers with what they expect to have: amenities, services, protection. And when we get lost in the weeds, we contract out all the time. We do, within every department, we have subcontracts. We contract out attorney services. We contract a lot of things out. And this turns into an argument about, you know, wages and jobs and whatnot, which is important, but it's really not our role. Our role is to make sure that this community has that golf course because it's really important to a lot of people. It provides a ton of kid programs and services. My kids both went through the Russ Morrison program. It was fabulous. It was a great thing. We're struggling right now, as are all golf courses across the nation. And I don't know if it relates to it, but the stock market just dumped 332 points today. Maybe the recession really isn't over. I don't know. But we have to consider all things. I don't think we're going to market our way out of a national trend. Adding more marketing money to something that's going on all over the country doesn't necessarily reverse it all by itself. At one point in time, we were talking about RFP, I mean, not for just maintenance of the greens, but for the entire operation. And I know we do that in other parts of the city. I don't know if it's really applicable in this case, and it certainly wouldn't be like an Ealing saying, it'd be where somebody else operated, and we get a monthly rent check. And you have an amazing facility with a golf, a restaurant, and a pro shop that may be really attractive to some operator. I don't know if that's even the realm of possibility. It certainly doesn't seem to be what we're discussing tonight. But we have to look at all those options if we're going to maintain this benefit for our citizens, which they deserve to have. So I'm going to wait to see how this motion works out. But I certainly want to, you know, retain that we, our primary job is to, is to provide all these folks out here with what they expect to see out there, which is a golf course that's usable, that's affordable, provides the kids services that it does. And for some reason, I've got a buddy of mine, that old college buddy, who lives right across the street from Puni. And he belongs to Mr. Nahas' monthly programs out there. So somehow, there's something that you're doing at Glen Annie that we're not doing at Muni, and he plays out there every day. So I don't know what the answer is. I don't know how the structure of the business works. But I know there's other ways we can look at this.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask Councilmember White and Councilmember Rouse to reconsider. It's very drastic to change the way that we hire and employ people out at the golf course. This is, it would be a huge change. And we heard Leslie Wiskom say that the youth program is growing. We saw the chart that shows things are flat or getting better. So it's stabilized here. And if we, here's some very prudent recommendations to give it a little bit more time. I saw the marketing budget was at 23,000 or 25,000, and you've doubled that, and it's at 50 now. Even 50,000 a year isn't that much for marketing. You've got to give that a chance to work. And we can revisit it later, whether to raise the greens fees, or Mr. Fasolo had some ideas about doing something different with the course. We already contract out the tree maintenance and plumbing. And the restaurant is a private business, and so is the golf shop. So we are saving money there. And really, the reality to me about the golf course is that it is a hybrid. How many acres is it out there? Anybody? It's a giant public park. It's a, it's a giant public open space, which is a resource for our city. And it employs, city employees who know how to take care of the greens. Where's that fellow in the back there? You play there. And, and so it, 90? Thank you. And, and it's a specialized skill to take care of a golf course. And do you think if we privatize, they're going to hire someone off the street to start mowing the lawn? And that's not quite the same thing, is it? And Mr. Sewell, how do we quantify someone who gets paid, let's just say, the SEIU person gets paid 20 an hour, and then we're going to hire somebody that gets paid, gets paid 10 an hour? So that's a whole loss of economy, as Mr. Niles was referring to. We are responsible for economic development and supporting the working class in our, in our city. And so I just see this as going down a path, a slippery slope, a race to the bottom. We are not Walmart. And here we have just a very prudent suggestions to hang on a little bit longer, give a chance for the marketing to go through, and really face the reality that, that the golf course is a general fund function. It's a, it's a public park. So I'd like to really please Councilmember White and Councilmember Rouse, please give that some thought, because that's a really giant step, when we've bought a little bit of time with the refinancing and some other very creative solutions. I care about the employees at Mulligan's and the golf, and the golf shop as well. And those are the, those are the end of my notes. But I really, I really just plead that we give it a little bit more time. It's, it's really a drastic step. Thank you.
Mr. Hachkis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Councilperson Mario's going to have to ask me to reconsider, too. And to, to, to parse your words, Mr. Hart, Occam's razor is the simplest solution is the best. And the fewer assumptions you make, the more effective you are liable to be. Ms. Mario made a lot of assumptions about who's going to be hired and what the cost is going to be. One thing we don't have to assume is the projection of expenses and the necessity of being penny-wise out at the golf course so that all of you who are players can continue to do so, and we can improve things there. This is a win-win situation. And I agree with Mr. Hart, Mr. White, that if this doesn't work in three years, we should, or whatever it is, a certain period of time, we would relook at it. But right now, the right solution is facing us very squarely, and we ought to take it. I don't think it's a giant step because we take all these other duties and privatize them and contract them out. We ought to do that here particularly. And I wouldn't recommend this if it weren't true, that we can take the employees who have worked long and hard out there and put them someplace where they will be happy. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm only hearing disagreement on number two in terms of the recommendations. I haven't heard any kind of concern about one or three at this point. And so my guess is when the, when the vote's made of the motion, if the motion passes, it passes. But if it fails, perhaps we can take one and three separately and then deal with the contracting as a separate motion, just so we can have that direction. For me, I guess, I look at what's, what's the role of the city? I mean, and a lot of people on both sides of the contracting out issue said a lot of correct things I also agree with. We, the city contracts out all the time. I go back to, well, what's, what's the core purpose, or what is the core services that we provide and why? The city's not in retail. That's not our, that's not our purview. We don't do retail, and we don't do restaurants. So the Mulligan's and the pro shop, that makes sense to me, that that should be contracted out. But we do do park maintenance all over the city. 50-plus, 58? 58? 54? 58. 59 parks and a golf course, right? 60? Or 59, including the golf course? See, I was 58. I was right. Okay, 58 and a golf course. And, and so what does that, what value does that bring in terms of keeping that park consistent of having city employees do park maintenance? I think there is a consistency, consistency issue there. I think there's a quality of service there. There's a customer service. The other thought that came to my mind is the golf course is an enterprise fund. And I agree it should stay as an enterprise fund. I don't believe at this point, and I don't think it's necessary at this point, even consider a general fund subsidy. I don't, that's not what's being asked today, and I wouldn't support that today, anyway. But similar to downtown parking. Downtown parking is also a enterprise fund. We have city employees doing the work of downtown parking. Are we suggesting that we contract downtown parking out? I would say, we would probably say no to that because of what we hear is the huge benefit of the customer service that we have for downtown parking. And that we wouldn't have control over in the same way if we were to contract that out. So I see some parallels there. And so for me, it's, I understand and appreciate the timing of this decision, but I'm not there yet. So we'll see where this vote goes. But certainly, items number one and three, I don't, I'm fine with. And I just had the question of the 3%, but that seems to make sense over time, the way the rationale came about. So we do have a motion on the floor for the recommendation, as you see up on the screen. And I have a feeling we might need, Mr. White, did you have your?
One more, I have a question.
Yeah, we'll probably do a roll call, since it's going to be.
And that is, on the employees, I, I am operating out of the assumption that all of the employees that are there that wish that they will be able, be able to work under city guidelines, under city policy for their, the remainder of their careers, as, obviously barring misbehavior and all that kind of thing. But that's, that is, I'd appreciate a statement to that effect from staff.
Ms. Rapp?
That's what is being proposed in.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember White, that has been how staff has always approached it from the beginning of the discussion under the previous city administrator, and it continues to this day. We've already had discussions with human resources. So we, we, it is our plan.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is the council, the recommendation's up on the screen, and why don't we do a roll call?
Councilmember Francisco.
No.
Hart.
Yes.
Hachkis.
No.
Mario.
Yes.
Rouse.
No.
White.
No.
Mayor Schneider.
Yes. So that fails three, four. So is there another motion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Francisco.
I would like to make a motion identical to what you see there, except for number two, and direct staff to pursue contracting for private maintenance, for the greens maintenance.
Would you be willing to take out one and three? Because I think you have a 7-0 vote there, and then we can do a two separately. Would you be willing to do that?
You're, you're absolutely willing. I'll withdraw my motion. You can make a motion of your own.
Okay. I'll make a motion for items one and three on the recommendation list. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, any comment? And Mr. White?
No.
Okay, your light's on. Okay. So why don't we make a roll call for that, too?
Councilmember Francisco.
Aye.
Hart.
Yes.
Hachkis.
Yes.
Mario.
Yes.
Rouse.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mayor Schneider.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Francisco, would you like to make another motion?
I would like to make another motion.
Okay, go right ahead.
With regards to item number two, I would like to direct staff to pursue contracting for private greens maintenance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, may I ask a question, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. White and then Ms. Mario.
I, as I had mentioned, I can support this with a living wage caveat.
With Mr. White's proviso.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mario.
I'm sorry, did the seconder say living wage is okay?
Mr. Rouse.
Oh, sorry, second. If we're going to have people manage the golf course, I don't want to hamstring them and how they're going to run it.
Well, let's, let's make, Mr. Kaland isn't the living wage ordinance apply here? I mean, this is a moot point, if it does.
It's very slightly ambiguous. So I think it's up to the council to interpret based on its understanding of legislative history. The ordinance defines city service contractor, but excludes from that definition, city contractors that provide recreation services to the public. One could interpret that broadly, so that a greenskeeper was part of the machine providing recreation services to the public and would therefore be excluded from living wage. Or you can interpret it more narrowly. What I've understood from the oral history is that it was meant to apply to people directly providing recreation services to city customers, as it were, so that the narrower interpretation would apply and the living wage ordinance would apply.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Francisco.
The reason that I'm supporting this is I agree with, with Mr. Kaland that there's some ambiguity in there about whether the living wage actually applies here. And I have my own serious doubts about the purposes of the living wage. However, my purpose here tonight is to make sure that the golf course survives as an enterprise fund and survives on its own two feet. $200,000 a year in savings will solve that problem. That's what we're here to do. And that's why I would argue that my change to the motion to include Mr. White's desire to have the living wage specified as part of this is a good, is a good one. And I would appreciate the support.
Okay, the seconder? Mr. Rouse, you seconded the motion, I believe. Mr. Rouse, you seconded the motion, I believe.
No, you did.
You're good with that? Okay. Mr. Hart?
Well, since we're making speeches here at the end, as a matter of fact, $100,000 worth of additional revenue from an increased marketing program and the reduction in the debt service costs would also put the golf course on stable financial footing. So, this isn't a choice about which, whether we're going to have the golf course on stable financial footing or not, it's a question of how we're going to treat, how are we going to pay people to work for the city or not, and how much they're going to get paid. That's essentially what this is. I think the person from the Golf Association said it perfectly, this is a question about values.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I have a question, if I may?
Sure.
Well, how, how will this play out? When, when will the details of contracting out take place? Will you go back to the Finance Committee? What's the timeframe?
It sounds like it's July 2016, right?
I think there's some labor contracts in place already with the, with the employees, or how does that work? How does that play into it?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, we ask that council come to a decision on the direction by this June so that we could begin that process. We knew it would take a certain amount of time, no matter what the decision was. So, as to what the process is and how long it takes, I don't have that worked out, other than we know that we'll be looking, depending on the direction, at what our options are and what the timeline is for coming back.
Well, can you, can we wait to make this decision until April or May, when you know what it would look like, a living wage, you know, compared to what, what's in place now, and, and which employees will be affected?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, the numbers that you have been presented include the living wage. So, that, that's what that number is. In terms of the employees, I, you know, that, we will start talking with them and looking at what those alternatives are, and those will be personal decisions for them. As I've said, some have been talking about retiring, and we have already been through the developing process of the FY '16 budget, looking at, okay, so if there is a decision to do contracting, are there opportunities here? So we are having, we've had some of those discussions.
The, the soonest any contracting would happen would be July 1, 2016.
Yes. What we would expect in the timeline to allow the, the transition of contractors, what we've been recommended to allow is at least to have all the contracts in place, and then you have that period of time for the transition, so the golf course is not impacted. So, if I remember my schedule right, it would be that we would come to council with a contract, most likely sometime next spring.
Spring 2016?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Casey?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, can I just clarify with council as well? We'd like to bring back, if this motion passes to council, the approach to the concession agreements. I, I think our initial thought is having three separate concession agreements might not be the best way to go, so we just want to be upfront that we'd like to look at some flexibility and bring it back some options.
You might have a mixed vote when that comes, just to let you know. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, let's have a roll call, please. Councilmember Francisco?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Hachkis?
Aye.
Mario?
No.
Rouse?
Aye.
Schneider? No. That passes for three. Okay. Anything else from staff?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you all for being here. It was a good discussion, to be continued, and we are adjourned, but before we do, I do want to adjourn in memory of Daniel Corrigan, who was a city firefighter who very tragically died last week. There will be a memorial service for him 2:00 PM Friday in the Rotunda at the Doubletree, and he is already very much missed, and we are adjourned.